Mr. President, we're still holding on for Mr. Ming. Just give us a second. Yes, Mr. President, we are good. You may continue, sir.
Can I approach the full, full of the order?
Yes, Mr. President. Full call for Council workshop session, September 2020, at 6:30 PM. Councilman Abdalaziz.
Present.
Councilwoman Khan. Councilwoman Davla.
Present.
Councilman Jackson. Councilwoman Mims.
Here.
Councilman Velez.
Present, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President.
Here, Madam, here, Madam Clerk.
And for the record, the third ward is vacant. Mr. President, you may continue.
If you please, read the statement of lines.
Yes, Mr. President. Amendment of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Law, 2020 to 2021, meeting date, September 1st, 2020, time, 6:30 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting was compiled and disseminated in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law in the following manner. One, the annual notice of regular meetings and workshop sessions of municipal council was compiled from the year 2020 to 2021, and are about July 1, 2020. A schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of municipal council for the year 2020 to 2021 was duly transmitted on or about July 1, 2020, to the New Jersey Herald News, The Record, The Arabic Voice, The Italian Voice, the State County Pulse, Dominican News, Piscatare International, El Especial, The Patterson Press, The City Post News, Tap into Patterson, in addition to any other publication duly requesting such notices. Three, the schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of municipal council for the year 2020 to 2021 was permanently posted in the lobby of City Hall, first floor, in the place reserved for the announcements of schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of municipal council for the year 2020 to 2021 was duly filed with the municipal clerk. Five, a copy of the schedule of regular meetings of municipal council was mailed to any person who requested and paid the fee authorized by the Open Public Records Act. Mr. President and Honorable Councilmember, at this time, um, I'll just continue. Anyone who wishes to participate in the public portion, there's little changes here compared to what we had in the past. They will still dial 973-321-1579, and they would enter code, the code number is 8326, and they would press star 1 to listen to the meeting, press star 2 to leave a recorded comment, and press star 3 to be added to the speaker list. I'll just repeat that again. For the public portion, dial 973-321-1579, enter code number 8326, press star 1 to listen to the meeting, press star 2 to leave a recorded comment, and press star 3 to be added to the speaker list for the public portion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Councilwoman Velez.
Council, uh, before we move on with the meeting, uh, is, is, I just want to bring clarification in that star 2, uh, when they say that, uh, leave a recorded message. That recorded message is, has a time limit, or, or the person's going to be there five minutes leaving a message? I want to make sure that it don't happen, then they say that we cut them off.
Is Ryan around, Madam Clerk?
Yes, uh, yes, Mr. President. I'll get, have Ryan to come over. Um, I do believe Ryan will be handling that portion. If they wish not to be live on the public portion, or they cannot wait, that they can leave their comment. That's my understanding. So let me get Ryan to explain that in detail.
Yeah, basically, who's going to time the message? That's the thing. We have a public meeting, uh, portion at only three minutes. So who's going to manage those three minutes? If they're going to leave a recording.
So, so, so Councilman Velez, the same way that the Madam Clerk have been monitoring managing those three minutes, it would be their responsibility to make sure that a timer is set for the three minutes.
I know. For the recording too?
Mr. President, Ryan is here now. He's, he's explaining.
Okay, so for the recording, there is a, a time limit on the recording for three minutes inside of the system, the public portion system. Anybody that calls in for the public, and that enters the public queue, um, as Council President previously stated, will manage it the same way, where, um, uh, City Clerk will, um, start the timer. Once a timer kicks off, then we'll disconnect the, the caller.
Correct. It's good to put in the record because we avoid people saying we got disconnected. They don't want to, you know, and they don't, we don't manage that. So is the time limit is already there. Uh, do notice, uh, that is not us, is the system was created that way. Thank you, Council President.
Right, thank you. Do we have a motion at this time for the payment of bills?
Sure. Thank you, uh, Council President. I'll make the motion. Um, there are two separate, uh, motions, so I'll do the first payment of bills, and then the second motion will be for the payment of bills for COVID. The first motion is for payment of bills totaling $9,636,719.58. There are waste management payments. There's no payments to the county or to the school board.
Do we have a second?
Discussion.
Councilman Velez.
Uh, through the chair, uh, Madam BA, do you receive the email regarding, uh, irregularity regarding the garbage collection? That I recall to request an investment?
Uh, yes, Councilman, I did. I was copied on that, along with you, and I, we already are on it. We, the, um, purchasing agent was not included, so I forwarded it to him and the director, and they are already setting up a meeting for early next week, um, because this is completely unacceptable. So yes, we're, we're already addressing the issue.
Through the chair, um, through the chair to, uh, Madam BA, can I, if possible, uh, can I be attending that meeting even if, if it's possible? I want her, I want to be participant, to listen, to orientate what is going on with, uh, with my, my, with my colleagues regarding that situation? As a chair, as a Chair DPW.
Okay. Councilman Velez, do you request that item to be discussed, uh, in the DPW?
No, because, uh, uh, because it's a, it's a critical situation. I find out today, and, um, and everybody found out today. So if they're going to make the arrangement to meet, I want them to invite me, or at least give me the permission to be in that meeting if we're going to discuss this item with them. And I want to put it on the record, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, yes, Councilman, we will, um, I will get back to you, but I don't think that should be a problem.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, uh, President, sorry.
So, I don't recall who seconded. Was it Councilman Abdalaziz or Gilman?
Gilman. Councilman Gilman.
The move by Councilwoman Mims, seconded by, uh, Councilman Gilman. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. President, shortly after I made the announcement for the payment of bills, I just want to put something in the record before, um, Councilwoman Mims go to the COVID payment of bills, please, sir. Okay, roll call and payment of bills, the amount of $9,636,719.58. Councilman Abdalaziz.
Yes.
Councilman Chahrdi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Khan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Davla.
No.
Councilman Jackson. Councilwoman Mims.
Yes.
Councilman Velez.
My vote is yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The vote is five in favor, two against, one absent. Let the record reflect, the third ward is vacant, therefore the payment of bills, the amount of $9,636,719.58 is hereby adopted. Mr. President, before I continue, um, just for the record, Councilman Chahrdi, when I did the roll call, I skipped over his name, so just for the record, he's present at the workshop session. I just skipped over his name. I'm sorry. Just to put that on the record, that he was present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Councilwoman Mims, you want to continue with the other thing, uh, other thing of bills? You're, you're muted, uh.
Thank you, Council President. Second payment of bills is for our COVID payments. Uh, the information, the invoice is attached, uh, in the total of $23,655. I make the motion, Council President.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second for the COVID payment of bills?
Council President, I don't have, I don't have that email with, I didn't get it in my packet, and I don't have that COVID payment.
It's on the end of the payment of bills, um, Councilwoman Davla. If you scroll down to the end.
Yeah, we have the image from the last day. Be, before we continue with the motion, I want to make sure that this bills list gets to all the council members. This was not sent, uh, with the, with the total packet. It was sent via email. Um, so I want to make sure that
I got it, I got it on Friday, the email.
No, no, you got the email. Talk about, you didn't come with a packet together with the pack.
No, I didn't.
Um, um, Council President, it's fine, ma'am. Councilwoman, um, Davla, did you want us to email it to you now?
No, 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 I have it. What it is is
Oh, you have it, okay.
I looked at when I was scrolling down, and since they attached it, they did not indicate that the two payment of bills, so
Right, it was, it was not separated. Maybe that's why.
Yeah.
So you have it. I'm expecting for a second.
So if we don't have a second council member, we're going to have to remove it. And, uh, okay. So, move by Councilwoman Mims, second by Councilman Abdalaziz.
Discussion.
Okay, Councilman, um, okay, thank you.
Uh, uh, through the chair, uh, not through the chair, uh, who's the chair of finance now?
I am.
Okay. Mr. Chair, that's, uh, Council President, as I recorded, uh, today, not recorded, I conversation I had with you today regarding the partitions that are in our city, uh, regarding the, the partition in the every office. Some people are receiving Volkswagen, other people are receiving Lamborghini, and, uh, and to, you know, to just let her know that nobody is getting the same level of quality of protection in our city. I was looking into this bill, okay? Uh, first of all, it started with a company, and the company in the past was, uh, Benny Glass. Uh, um, Benny Glass in, um, in the sixth ward, right? It was doing, it was doing this Plexiglas around. Now we have a company, uh, with, uh, Nextwave, uh, that their main function is graphic and printing source, uh, from 229 Marsha Street. I don't know what is a COVID sneeze guard. If we talking about COVID sneeze guard, I don't know what they talk, what is that? Uh, I see if it, um, it says City Clerk in one bill and staff purchasing, and it says recycling, City Clerk, uh, Department of Health, is, and it has different division. In my concern, if I add all this, it's going to go over $40,000, okay? Now, why we not having a purchase, a, how you call it, um, a, uh,
RFP.
RFP in this process? First of all, if I go with the bill that say Nextwave Blue Totographic Printing Sources, uh, unless they put in a big face printed in everybody's desk that would hold the sneeze of the people, and that's part of the printing, or is a, hold on, Councilman Abdalaziz, or is the compartment that are in the, uh, on the every office, a cubicle or desk of the city? And I need an explanation because I never saw this, uh, technology before COVID-19 sneeze guards. And, uh, if they could tell me, what is that? If it's what I see in every division here, I had a, I visit a, a division in the city of Patterson, and let me tell you something. Some people are getting Volkswagen, and other people are getting Lamborghini. Are we all across the board? Are the across the board have the same protection for every city employee? Or this has to get into a bottom investigation? Who's getting benefit on this? Because the employee needs safety in every place that they go in the city. Can I get an explanation?
Councilman Velez, you, you, you know, you made, you already made your point. Just so you know, don't, don't get offended when a council member asks for the floor. They just want to be next after you finish.
Okay.
So, yeah, Councilman Abdalaziz raised his hand, and Councilwoman Davila also did. So they're not trying to interrupt you, they just want to, they want to speak before you, you know, you finish. Uh, you want to give Councilman Velez, a, a, Madam BA, or, uh, DPW Director, a response to the inquiry pertaining to that item on the bills list? Just briefly, please.
You want me to go, BA?
Go ahead, Velez.
Um, these are two companies that are used as, um, that's putting up the, uh, the Plexiglas. Sneeze guards are considered the Plexiglas that you see in the council chambers all over the, um, all over the city. Um, each director has contacted our office and requested what they wanted in their office. Um, what you see in their offices is what they requested. Um, and that's basically it. We're going to be, we're going to try to do the, um, the real glass in, in, in the council chambers, as, you know, some council members want it. But, uh, for, for right now, that's, it was done on emergencies, I believe, right, um, BA? So that's the reason why we did it in, in with these two companies. First it was Benny's Glass, and then we had another Mandarin, um, uh, Nextwave. Nextwave does
That's very, that's very full, very full.
She's muted. Um,
Plexiglas itself.
Thank you very much. Councilman Abdalaziz?
All right, all right, pass me. Okay, it's a $23,000 purchase. So it's not $40,000, it doesn't need, it's a $23,000 purchase. Um, if you add all of them up, that first PO is the total of all the purchase orders, and it equals $23,000.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Davila?
All right, so I was actually just going to just add something, and that is that, you know, i- i- we can see that we're spending money, okay, uh, for the safety, uh, of our city employees. We're having a rollout plan that the BA sent to all of us, and the fact that the city's going to be opening up, my recommendation is also that we, as a council, also start meeting in our council chambers.
Fully noted.
Council President.
Councilman Velez.
Uh, let me clarify, I've been following this, uh, uh, purchase order since COVID-19 payment bills have been out there, and they've been put in this compartment way back of this bill. And I said, if you add it all, it goes over $40,000. So, and, and I mentioned, and, and, and I know he, uh, the Councilman addressed it that is this bill. I know, I'm not saying this bill is $23,000, but if you add it all from the beginning, it's more than $40,000. And the other thing is, and the other thing is, uh, Director Billy Rodriguez, I, I want to address something to you. Uh, when I visit this office is because the concern of the employees. I don't think an employee is going to say, I just want two wires hanging up from the ceiling, and just a, less than a Plexiglas, like a cover. It's not even Plexiglas, so weak that I don't think if they sneeze, it's going to hold it. If you, if, if, I, if you want, if you want, hold on, Director, if you want, I could address it with you offline, and, and direct where I saw it, and where they don't feel comfortable. I'm not going to expose the names of the employees. I just went there to visit the area to make sure everybody gets a Lamborghini when they ask for something to protect themselves.
Trying to give everybody Lamborghinis, um, um, Councilman Velez, but the, uh, it's, when we talk to the departments, we, we install them how they asked it to be installed.
I, I understand, I understand that you asking for what they're asking to install, but you also, the director, can suggest something better, uh, you know, just so you know.
Some, I, I probably know what he's talking about, uh, that was the only way to install it. You know, some, some people don't want, some people don't want the, the, the glass driven to the desk, um.
No, no, they, they have it, uh, you know, I, I've seen them done, but that, that's besides the point, uh. Councilman Velez, the administration stated that they had to get it up, you know, they had to get those, uh, Plexiglas as soon as possible for the employee's safety. Uh, and we're going to leave it at that right now.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, can we do the roll call?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call in the payment of bills, COVID-19, in the amount of $23,655. Councilman Abdalaziz.
Yes.
Councilman Chahrdi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Khan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Davla.
Yes.
Councilman Jackson. Councilwoman Mims.
Yes.
Councilman Velez.
Even I don't agree with the way they, they working with the Plexiglas, but I had to vote for payment of bills, so my vote is yes.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor, one absent. Let the record reflect that the third ward is vacant, therefore payment of bill for COVID-19, the amount of $23,655 is hereby adopted.
Uh, Madam Clerk, at, at this time, I want to discuss, uh, number 25.
Number 25.
Do we have, uh, Police Director, or any representative from the Police Department? Has any questions pertaining to this grant?
Okay. Community Revolution 2020 Office of Community Oriented, Oriented Policing Service. That's Police Department.
Sure. Also known as the cops, yes.
Yeah. Anyone there?
Is, uh, Director around?
Council President.
Sure, uh, before we continue, Councilwoman Davila, do you want to, um, yeah, I noticed you have the feature here, raising your hand. Do you want to speak? I think you're on mute. It was, that was previously all right. All right.
Council, just, Council President, just so, so you're aware, um, you can go on there, and you can, so if you didn't look at it, that's when I kind of like did one of those numbers, but
Thank you.
So i- it's going to be a little difficult, though, with a lot of people on, because if you don't know who put, raised their hand first, so we're probably going to have to continue doing the meeting this way.
Yeah, I, I, I think I'll see it on the right-hand side, but let, let's continue. See how it goes, and, you know, we'll make the changes necessary.
Okay.
Thank you.
As a president.
It's, uh, I guess, I guess we don't have any representatives from the Police Department?
Uh, Council, Council President, this is Kathy Campenella from the Director's office. I'm here, President, representing Director Spiezio.
Oh, perfect, okay. So, Madam Clerk, can you read number 25, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Number 25, read, um, for the Police Department, Resolution Authorizing Participation in the 2020 Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, Cops Hiring and Recovery Grant Program.
Okay.
Don't move. You got to, no, actually, no, we're going to discuss it, right?
Discussion, we have a discussion.
Okay, so
Any questions? Councilwoman Davila?
Yeah, actually, if he could just quickly give a, a, a quick synopsis of what this, uh, resolution, um, entails.
Sure, Councilwoman Davila. Uh, this is Kathy Campenella, how are you this evening? The, uh, the grant application was for 10 police officers that will be fully funded, that salary and benefits for a period of three years, uh, beginning when we start drawing down, probably sometime in September, if one of the classes hired. Uh, the total amount of the award that was granted to us for, for salary and benefits for that three-year period is $1,886,0048, with no matching funds, uh, required by the city. We always put a caveat in our application that if there is a match requirement, and usually there are, it's usually a 75-25 split, but we always indicate in our grant application, there is a mechanism to ask for a waiver of that matching fund, which we always do as a distressed city. Uh, that waiver was granted, so we, uh, were awarded the full 1.8, 1.8 million dollars for the 10-year, uh, 10 positions over the three-year period.
Good.
Council, Council McCutten?
Thank you. Um, also, I just wanted to remind, uh, everyone with this grant, that, um, and I know that we're going to, once the three-year period is up, um, I think the only thing we have to do is keep them on. Is that correct?
That is correct, Councilwoman McCutten. You have a one-year retention period. So your, uh, the 10 extra officers that are over and above what you fund locally have to be retained for a one-year period thereafter. So when a grant is finished after 36 full months of funding, then the
We got to keep the 10 officers.
Correct, correct. We have, we have to absorb that number of officers, for that extra number of officers for one full year.
And, and, say we went through a situation where there was massive retirements like we did, or have, and, you know, retirements and attrition, or people that, you know, uh, disabilities and things of that nature. As long as we are showing that we are trying to actively recruit the 10 for that 12-month period, they will not bother us.
That, that is correct. Yes, the cops, the federal cops off the farm, just understands that police hiring is unique, that it usually takes months to hire police officers and train them, so that they understand that even though you're supposed to maintain a certain number, for us, with the 10 actual officers would be 419, uh, police officers, that that number is usually in a constant state of flux throughout the year. You lose a couple officers, an officer doesn't make it through the academy, you have a retirement. So that number, that total funding number from that one-year retention period, that full funding number really gets spread out over time, because people constantly leave. We have whole groups of people. As of, uh, today, matter of fact, uh, come February 1st, we have nine or 10 more officers that are slated for retirement. So as you can see, it's a, it's a constantly fluid number. It's not something that's fixed or static.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, Council McCutten, are you finished? Can't hear you. Um, Councilman?
Yes, I am finished. I'm sorry, I was on mute. I am, thank you.
Councilman Velez?
Uh, thank you. Can you hear me now? All right.
Yes, yes.
Uh, Kathy Campenella, and, uh, thank you for, for that synoxie, uh, uh, of this grant. This was pulled out of the, uh, August meeting, and, uh, we have it here again. Uh, I thought that we, we already deal with that. Uh, did this 10 officer are in the process of hiring, or they already got hired?
No, they're, they're
They're, they're
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Director. All right, who's going to?
Yeah, they, they are, and just so you know, Councilman, what's happening now is we have, because there's no academies because of COVID-19, what happened is
Thank, thank you, Director. Can you continue, Mike Campenella, uh, Captain?
Sure, 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 uh, Captain Velez. Yes, the Director, uh, I, my phone broke up a little bit, but I heard, there's a little bit of the gist of what he was saying. We had, uh, trouble with finding academies that are actually conducting classes.
Who, who muted, uh, uh, the Director?
Not me. I don't, I don't handle that.
Himself.
Himself.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm here, but that's okay. Don't worry about it. I, I, the captain is so well versed on this, he, he can explain it.
Thank you.
We're, we're using Ethics County. That's what I wanted to let you know. He, he can explain that.
So, so we get this grant every how many years, uh?
Uh, can I, can, can I, uh, finish my line?
You will, that, that's, I just have a question. Is this, 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 so
You know what? You get them, uh, Council President, you know what happens? We get them one year, and then the next year, sometimes you, you do get it, and then the next year, sometimes you don't get it. You know, it's like, almost like every other year. I, i- i- this year, we were very fortunate, you know, and we got it. The year before, we applied, we didn't get it. You know what I mean? It, it It, it's really a fluid situation, like I said, it, you know, they, it, they really base it on, ours is written about violent crime, reducing gun violence, and, you know, park and walk and community policing. So, because of building trust and all of those things, they like what they saw, and a lot of times, it's what goes into these grants and what you say you'll be doing, you know, with the officers, so.
Jerry, in, in the interest of time, this is a grant that we get once every two years.
Yeah, I would say.
Have they changed any of the grant guidelines or, or, or the usage of the grant?
No, not, not at all, um, you know, maybe there's topics, you know what I mean, just, the only thing that could be different is a topic, like, you know, write a summary on, uh, you know, how you're gonna build trust and legitimacy, or write a summary on how you're gonna reduce gun violence. You know, that's the only thing, as far as the, the matching funds, that's always the case, but we have been very successful with the captain in writing the grant, and because of our fiscal status in not having to make that matching side, so we get it straight up, which is great, that's probably why we get it every other year, and it worked out very well for us, you're welcome.
Uh, Cas.
Council, Council members, in the interest of time, this is a grant that we get often, we have seventy-six items on the agenda to discuss, that we could possibly discuss. Any questions that you have asked in the past that you? Is there any go without having this lengthy discussion on a grant?
Co- co- correct, uh, correct, Council President. It, it's, it's easy, and it's easy, and, uh, it's understandable, but when we are in a, in a, in a workshop that was never televised, and people out there are looking at our business, how we conduct business, and they talk about cop grant, and they talk about it's gonna only last three years, and et cetera, et cetera, for the benefit of the viewers out there, it's good to explain them, because they don't, they don't sit in us in the workshop. And, um, and the reason I, I do this question is because, right now, and the director said, we don't receive it for the past two years. Until two thousand sixteen, we receive it, the previous mayor, uh, mayor, uh, did academy with twenty-five individual. If it's every three years, it's gonna be due, what is the plan, we already in two thousand twenty? In two thousand eighteen, we got another grant, we got, uh, sixteen, twenty cops in that academy. Uh, what is the plan from three years from now when that is due? Now, we have this grant, that will be three years from now, and it will be in two thousand twenty-three that comes up, uh, due. We don't want it, we just wanna, wanna avoid, we wanna avoid, as a legislator responsible, that is good to hire with grants, but what the administration is gonna do when the grant is over, if they're gonna plan to budget the city or the taxpayer, or they're gonna go after more grants to support this, uh, this officer, but the last we wanna see is a hundred-twenty-five police officer lay off in the city, and the quality of life of the city goes down the drain. That's why, that's why I'm more concerned.
You have some valid points, Councilman Velez, but again, this is gonna be most likely, we're gonna have probably a discussion if it doesn't go on the consent agenda at the next, uh, regular meeting, and also, wasn't this also discussed in the Public Safety Committee?
Negative, uh, negative, because this was, uh, pulled out from the meeting.
It was, it was discussed, it was, it was, this, this item came off the August eleventh meeting, so the, so the public safety person. I mean, that's the one that you mean, uh, Councilman Velez.
Thank you very much.
That was the public safety meeting that you did not make, when you did come in, you would finish already. So, and you know what's gonna happen, and I'm trying to say that, we know in the next ten, three years, it's gonna be ten police officers that are gonna retire, they're gonna retire, there's no if, ands, or buts about it. Even if another two years from now, we're gonna have ten officers that's gonna retire, so they're gonna go into our, our budget, because the retirees are gone, and we still gotta replace them, we still short police officers. So, it's not like if we gotta budget it, because they're gonna be already coming in, because our retirees are going out.
Thank you, thank you, Council.
Council President, consent or non-consent, I think it was wrong from there.
This is gonna be, uh, non-consent. Uh, Madam Clerk, uh, when you put that one in non-consent, and could we do first reading ordinances? I wanna let, I wanna let the public, uh, my colleagues know that we're gonna try to do the public portion around eight o'clock. So, I just wanted to.
What time, can you repeat the time, Mr. President?
Just try to do it approximately eight o'clock.
Okay.
Council President? Council President?
Councilman Velez, could you, uh, raise your hand, yes, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I, I just wanna, for the benefit of all of us, you know, we are the legislative body of this city. If we're gonna start answering the question ourselves, I could answer the question to you, but let the administration address the finance, the budget, and let them say, we are ready to do this, because we are, we, we, we get accustomed to answer for the administration. Let the administration say, we are ready for this plan, we are ready for pickup garbage, we are ready for the snow, don't let us, you know, it's like, we're not here to answer by the administration, we put the question and let the administrator answer it.
Fully noted, thank you. Uh, could we continue, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President, if I may, um, I know you had the Police Department on the line, there were three other items for them, would you wanna leave those for later? There were sixty-three, sixty-four, and sixty-five.
You know what, it's a good idea, Madam Clerk, let's.
Up to you, sir, so you really want me to continue with sixty-three?
Let's do sixty-three.
Okay, sixty-three, read Resolution Addressing Automated License Plate Recognition Cameras and Related Software. Authorizing Receipt of a ninety-day free trial period for ten cameras with no legal obligation to purchase. And that's the Police Department. Are they there?
Yeah, yes, that is, uh, that went before the, uh, Public Safety Committee, just for the other members of the council, so you know what that is. It's a state contract vendor, and we will get ten, uh, automatic license plate readers and infrared cameras, so that we could strategically put them throughout the city, you know, at choke points, God forbid there's a shooting, a homicide, anything like that. It will help us with what's going on, real-time, and it'll also connect into the statewide system. So, if we knew that a car, uh, did a shooting, we would know if it went on the parkway, we would know it's in, you know, uh, Irvington, New Jersey right now, all the different plate readers will tie together with this. They're giving us a shot at it, uh, for ninety days for free, and then we will get a price after we see how it works. So, they were willing to give us the ten for free, and this is what we were talking to you about, that technology when we met with you, uh, you know, to discuss, you know, the, 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 uh, violence. So, I think it's a good thing, there's no cost to it, there's no loss to it, we don't have any, you know, any real, uh, issues for us. They're taking it on, they're installing it, and our guys will be able to go on instantaneously and see what plate came by at two-thirty if there was a shooting, and where that plate is now.
Uh, I think your sound is really bad, so let's try to, with the respect, uh, Director, let's try to keep the comments, uh, you know, short, because.
Sure.
We're getting static.
Sure. Uh, okay, got it.
Councilman Jackson wants to speak, hold on a minute.
I think he has to mute himself. He's good now, thanks for that.
Councilman Jackson? Councilman Jackson?
Uh, thank you, Council President, so first, um, I, I, I guess not having any difficulties because I'm familiar with the platform, but I have to say that, I think, as.
Uh, gonna have to reconnect.
I'm moving, yeah, I can't hear him.
The signal is bad. Ryan, could you try to get in touch with Councilman Jackson, so see how you could get him, uh? Well, let's, let's continue, any, anyone else wants to speak regarding, uh, any questions regarding item sixty-three? Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, um, no, this is, uh, I think this is more as a trial basis to see how it could work out. Um, I know, um, when, in the Public Safety meeting, they had suggested, um, to us in the, uh, committee meeting, um, about um, getting a list of really the hot areas that they need to go into.
Yes.
So.
Yeah.
And that's, and, and we're saying to all our council colleagues, you know, if you can submit some hot areas, because we only gonna do, we only gonna have ten, and then we're gonna see how it's gonna work out, I think this is an excellent idea for them to do this for us, um, because you know we need the cameras, so. I mean, it can go on consent, because there's no obligation to us for ninety days.
So, none of my council colleagues have any issue pertaining to this going on consent, Madam Clerk, we'll put it on consent.
Yes, sir, number sixty-three, consent, correct. Sixty-four, Mr. President?
Thank you, thank you.
Um, should I continue with sixty-four?
Uh, yes.
Resolution Authorizing a Shared Service Agreement with the Borough of Paramus Police Department for the use of their pistol range for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. That's the police.
Director, can you give a, a brief, uh?
Yes, that is, uh, and it, that is a continuation of a multi-year contract that we've been with the Borough of Paramus that we entered in two years ago. They have an indoor range, and because of our range being flooded and, you know, the, the issues we have with it not operating, so Paramus has been the one we've been using, because it's indoors, it's close, we can put people in day or night, and do the day shooting, night shooting, and weather doesn't matter, winter, you know, spring, summer, fall, thank you.
Thank you. So, consent, Madam Clerk, number sixty-five, if, um.
Sixty-four, consent, and sixty-five. Resolution Autorizing, this is the Police Department, authorizing an award of contract to Research Foundation of HUNY, OBO, John J. College for consultant services to assist the Coalition for Opiate Response and Assessment with Problem Analysis and Program Evaluation for the Police Department, is RFP number twenty-two-one-dash-eleven.
Consent?
Councilman for sixty-five?
Yes, consent.
Okay.
Now, Madam Clerk, let's go to, uh.
First reading, okay. First one, and for first reading ordinance is item number four is an ordinance establishing a no-stopping or standing zone, and this is on Twenty-Eighth Avenue. This is between Railroad Avenue and Straight Street.
Councilman Velez and Councilman Adelis. You can unmute yourself, Councilman Velez.
No, I can't, because every time I say the hose is muting, so I can't.
No, but, but when I called the name, I clicked, asking you to unmute yourself, that's how it works, the system works.
No, I had the camera off, so even was looking, I was looking for the bar that says to.
We're discussing, um, first reading order.
I know, um, I was gonna say, uh, the Director of Police, is he still here?
He might be.
He's still there.
Yes, I'm still here, yes, I am.
All right, uh, uh, we finished the items of public safety?
Yes.
Yeah.
All, all right, uh, Mr. Director, and, uh, and I was trying to, uh, call your attention, but, uh, with this new system that we have now is a problem. Um, I just wanna, I just wanna, as Director, um, as you know, um, I followed the instruction of my Council President to discuss on items in the, in the committee meeting. Uh, public safety, uh, it was not a one that, um, I came certified, so you will receive a memorandum uh, through, through the, uh.
Answer it.
Through the public, through the public, hold on, through the public.
We're discussing first reading ordinance number four.
I know, but let me, let me tell Council President, because you, you.
Yeah, I, I, I think that I need to talk to Farrah Irving, because I think we have a little bit of an issue, um, and I'll.
I never, I never say it should be in the.
All right, Council members, at this moment, we're discussing item number four. We should not be discussing anything else right now, we're discussing first reading ordinance number four, could we continue, Madam Clerk, please?
Yes, sir, um, are we okay with item number four to be played?
No, Councilman Adelis wants to say so.
First, right, first reading?
That, thank you, Council President, I'm gonna discuss item number four, which is, uh, establishing no-stopping or no-standing. Um, I guess the Police Director left, uh, do we have Captain Caponella, or, my question is, uh, no-stopping, no-standing, what does our Police Department do to enforce this? Uh, the Director stepped out.
All right, I, I'll put that, that NBA, I'll bring that up, because there's many no-stopping, no-standings around the entire city that gets no enforcement, so we could put them up all we want, we could pass them all we want. Um, and believe me, when I'm talking about no-stopping, no-standing, we have blocks that have twenty, thirty, forty cars, and it's no-stopping, no-standing, and then I'm told that we can enforce that. So, I just wanna make sure, I, I, I'm in support of this, I'm clearly in support of this, but if, if we're being told we can't enforce it, then just, you know, explain to me why, thank you.
Councilman Velez, I do acknowledge you, just hold on a minute, there, uh, Council members and everyone in this meeting, there's a feature also. Councilwoman Davila used it previously, and Councilman Jackson also, which is, it will show a little hand by your name when you request the floor. But, but you can also raise your hand, Councilman Velez, just like you did, I just noticed you, so I'm gonna let you speak at this time. Go ahead, Councilman Velez, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you, Council President, um, we've discussed the number four. Um, you will receive the memorandum that I was requesting. Um, number four, and, and those that sit in DPW Committee, uh, the Councilman of the sixth ward that had refused, refused to go to the meeting, because it's at twelve-thirty, or twelve, if he was being attending that meeting, uh, the explanation was, uh, clear enough. All the items that went through committee, um, public committee, uh, public safety, uh, public DPW Committee was discussed, and it was, um, addressed, the enforcement, that's one of the questions that I asked the Director of DPW. Um, I think, um, um, and also Councilman Jackson was present, that we are here to to laws, and to do ordinance, and resolution, and make the accountable the administration, that is a police job, they. I spoke to the owner of the, of the individual, or the individual requesting the, um, the, uh, the no-stopping or standing, and actually, it's not, it's not, it's, you know, he, see, see, let me, let me, let me say this, uh, Council. But if, if, if number four, if they read it right, you know, if they say no-stopping or standing in a, in a intersection, and they suppose by law, don't stop and stand, or park, or park it overnight, because it's under the train trestle. So.
Councilman Velez, I think, I think we need to, listen, we need to respect one another. Uh, from what I understood, Council, and, and he could speak for himself in a minute, he's requesting the, the, the floor, but he's asking, we have a lot of laws in, in, in place, he's asking how is it gonna be enforced, you know, you put up a sign, it's gonna continue to feed. How is it gonna be enforced, is the question, um.
And, 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 and we, and we discussed that in committee, and once again, uh, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna create a debate, everything that comes through the, uh, DPW or whatever, that's another thing, but everybody knows it's getting forced to police, everybody knows.
Those same things, uh, Councilman Velez.
What was that?
This is workshop, we also discuss things in workshop.
So, uh, so now it's reversible, when he speak, it's good to discuss, so I don't know how it works.
What I'm saying is, sometimes we, you know, we can say whatever we want when we're speaking, but we gotta stay on topic.
So, you're telling me, Council President, you just suspected me, because you're telling me I'm not on topic, everything I'm gonna say that is not on topic on you?
Councilman Velez, uh, listen, duly noted, Councilwoman Davila, do you, are you requesting the floor also? Please, proceed.
I, I was, actually, I. This is gonna work the way the little, either we all follow, that everyone puts in, you know, when they want. This is gonna work the way the little, either we all follow that everyone puts in, you know, when they wanna speak on the side, but where the participants is, or because it just seems as though when we wanna make a point, we're not gonna be able to.
This is new, this is new to all of us, uh, Councilwoman. Uh, I agree, but if it's so important, you know, I apologize if I didn't notice your hand going up before Councilman Adelis. You know, duly noted, though, I, I'd be more vigilant going forward.
So, so Councilman, I mean, Council President, I know that you said, you know, we have seventy-six items, and they're first reading ordinances, and we all got our packets this weekend and went over them. Um, maybe if you can ask the council if anyone has any problems with any of their, the first reading, so then that way we could just move on to, to second. The, I, I only have, and I have a question when we get to number ten. So I'm fine with moving forward, you know, with the rest of the items in, in first reading, except I do wanna discuss number ten real quick.
Mr. President, define me. Number four, I have the request of Councilman Abdelaziz and Councilman Velez. So I put that request in, so we can get a response before next week. About enforcing, if we adopt this ordinance, and if there will, what will be in play for the enforcement? I do have the... A number.
So Councilman Adelis, and then, uh, Councilwoman Velez.
As Council President, I, I, I say to myself, don't get dragged in, don't get dragged in, and then... I don't know why my name's brought up. There's an item. I'm saying that there's other areas in the city that have no-stopping or no-standing. I don't know what the fifth ward councilman is talking about. All I ask is the police department to enhance enforcement of this item and the other no-stopping or standing. There's no need to be... And let him, he wants to talk and get the... I apologize, Council President, I will probably email my questions, so I don't get roped in on this. But once again, what I reiterated, not about questioning this, I understand that. When I've questioned other no-stopping or standing areas, and the police have told me it's hard for us to give a ticket there. That's what they told me, so I wanna go on the record, and I want them to enforce. That's all I'm asking. I don't know where the council from the fifth ward brings up, but I, I'm gonna go back and promise myself, don't engage, so I'm gonna mute myself and take myself.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mims.
Um, Council President, and this is probably to, uh, the director of DPW. Um, I made a request, um, I emailed a request as it relates to the items. Items four all the way through ten, there are no traffic studies attached to these items. I made the request, and we still don't have them. Um, I think it will be, um, it, it will be wise that we have traffic studies as well as pictures of what is being requested, but that is not attached to any of these items. So I'm just putting it on the floor, because I made the request, um, via email, and I still don't see that it's been received.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Madam Clerk, um...
Of that request, I, I do, I take care of it. Yes, sir. So four. Yes, Mr. President, go ahead, sir.
No, continue, continue, Madam Clerk.
So number four, okay, it's okay for first reading, that's all right?
Yes.
Number four, so number five is, um, pretty much it said, um, ordinance for no-stopping or standing zone and grand street between Railroad Avenue and Crosby Place.
So Ma- Ma- Madam Clerk, I'm gonna take the recommendation from Councilwoman, uh, Davila. Uh, council members, you have gone through this agenda.
Yes.
You have items four through, but we already took care of four. You have items five through ten. If anyone have any concern with any of this, please raise your hand.
Councilwoman Davila for number ten, sir. She did say, yes.
We noted, so... Councilman Velez.
Okay.
Councilman Velez, you have to unmute yourself. I'm requesting that.
It's a new system, sorry.
Okay.
Um, eh, um, eh, I just wanna bring to attention that a lot of this stuff, uh, uh, ordinance or whatever, all that request, um, have been put into consideration to the director. I see a lot of this stuff that, uh, some of this ordinance has a map in the back where they're going to establish the loading zone. Um, and, and also in the past, they used to put the application, whoever was requesting the application. Whoever was requesting something through DPW, there's an application always was attached to it. So, uh, the process i- is that way. I don't think we need it, uh, unless, you know, unless Councilwoman wants a traffic study to put a commercial loading zone. But, um, I don't think a, a traffic study for a commercial loading zone uh, is suitable for this type of ordinance. But if she requested it, that make her a little bit more comfortable to vote an item, uh, due to notice. But, um, the, uh, the applications, uh, uh, self-explain, and, um, and they go through, uh, committee. So they're good to go for, for the first reading. Uh, number ten, I believe, has some question. I got the answer, Council. Uh, if, if it falls into me to answer you, I got the answer to...
So Councilman Velez, we're not at number ten yet.
Okay.
Madam Clerk is gonna read it into the record in a minute. So, Councilwoman Mims, I know you're requesting the floor.
Yes, so, um, Councilman Velez, I know the process, so you don't need to educate me on the process. The reason why I'm asking specifically is for number seven, right? So with any item that is going to shift the flow of traffic or make any changes, traffic study should be a part of this process. That's something that's been asked on this council for the last two, over two years I've been here, and before I got here, and it's something that should be a part. But the reason why I'm asking is for number seven, there, the, uh, the speed limit is twenty-five miles per hour. Our number seven is being changed to twenty. The reason why I'm asking, because I wanted to put on record, because I spoke to the engineer who has an issue with changing the, uh, speed limit to twenty, from twenty-five to twenty. So I would like to have all that I'm in rec, I'm writing, even if it's approved or not, we need to have the recommendations from our engineer attached to these items. So that as a council, we're making, when we vote, we're voting, um, responsibly, and we're making sure we're adhering to the people that are really the experts. So that's why I'm asking, and, and specifically for number seven, I wanna see the recommendation from the engineer, um, attached to this, and his recommendation from changing it. I'm not saying I'm against any of the items, but I'm just saying that is the administration's, um, that's their job, to make sure that that stuff is attached, especially for number seven, because it will cover us as a community and as a council. Thank you.
Duly noted. Before I let you speak, um, Director, I thought every, every item that got here in this, in this, um, agenda was recommended by the administration. It goes to committee, because it's presented from the administration to committee. Um, and then it gets here to workshop for us to consider. Discuss it, and then we'll decide on movement. And now, it is disturbing that someone will go through committee without the approval of the traffic engineer. So I wanna hear the Director, I wanna hear his take on this. Director?
I, item number seven, um, the traffic engineer's, uh, recommendation, recommendation was to keep it at twenty-five. Um, Councilman Velez had asked him to submit this resolution for twenty, for twenty miles an hour for council's consideration. But his, I, I explained to the traffic engineer, anytime his recommendation does not, or any recommendation does not meet what the, um, what his, um, recommendation should be, or the council wants to go against it, just to place that on there, that it's not his recommendation. The council could vote how they wanna vote, but this is not his, uh, recommendation to change it to twenty miles an hour.
So, so this was moved from the DPW committee?
Yes.
So how many members in the committee? We have three, correct?
Yes, three.
Out of the three, how many, how many? How many with, in it, was in agreement?
Uh, at that meeting, it was, uh, Councilman Velez and, and Councilman Mike Jackson was on the phone.
Okay, so there, two, two other members agree, okay. Uh, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Davila, I saw you earlier, you wanna speak?
Yes, uh, Council President, and I guess, you know, it was for ten, but I am gonna say something about, um, item number seven. So there are times that we've been given certain recommendations, but it has been the council's desire. And in this case, I think my only question would be the reason why the reduction to twenty. And I think if there is a substantial reason why, um, you know, we want to not go with the recommendation of our traffic engineer, uh, because in the past, just so you know, he didn't recommend certain stop signs in certain areas that we know that had numerous accidents, numerous, okay? So it doesn't mean that, you know, the... There's a recommendation, and, and, and we go by it, that's why we hired him, right?
Duly noted.
But, but there has been times that we've not taken his recommendation. And in this case, I just wanna know why the reduction to the twenty.
So do- duly noted, and, and Councilman Velez, I'll let you speak in a minute, Councilman Adelis is also on the floor. But, but I understand the council go act, we go act on doing certain things, but we can make it a, a, a practice of doing this, because I have put in a lot of requests for stop signs to be put at, in different locations, as, for the request of the residents, because of many concerns with speeding and everything else. Uh, you know, and they see this as a way to slow down the traffic. But we can't just take it upon ourselves without getting, you know, we can't make it a habit of doing this without getting the recommendation from our experts. Um, at least, we should have had the benefit, not just in committee, but is the traffic engineer here tonight? So I might have an issue with this, because if he's not here tonight to ask some of our concerns, uh, that's an issue. Councilman Adelis?
You, you could let Councilman Mike Jackson go first, if you want. I see his hands up also.
Yes, yes.
I want already.
Councilman Jackson?
Very good. Uh, I was wondering if, if I had to do jumping jacks or something like that to, uh, to get noticed. There's a number of different things that I'm taking issue with. One, there was a, 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 I found out today we're changing the system. Do we have an answer on when we're returning to the chambers? Because, you know, conducting business this way, obviously, is not what's, eh, uh, working its way out to be most beneficial for the, uh, community. That's the first thing. Secondly, I'm, I'm disheartened as I continue to hear all of the jargon and the, uh, the un, uh, unnecessary commentary back and forth. It is not the council's prerogative or necessity to take direction. If council doesn't take direction, it is here to take advice and consent, but it stops there. I mean, it's obvious that the traffic engineer doesn't of not implementing certain things. We also understand that enforcement across the board is at an all-time low. So when you talk about the fact that all throughout the community, there's speeding, there's non-compliance of, of, uh, of, uh, of stop signs, uh, whether the noise complaints, whether lording complaints, all kinds of infractions that are just not being enforced. You have zoning issues, where people are parking on non-paved surfaces, and particularly on Jean, at Jean, next to Jean's Liquor Store on Heldon Avenue, that's just one example. But the thing is, you know, the constituents, we look to the constituents. We don't work here for our own egos, we don't work here not to, you know, um, to, to take offense if someone's trying to, um, lend a, a, some insight on what their community, their constituents are providing. I had an accident that took place where a woman has stated clearly her grandchild was almost run over if she was out there riding her bike on the corner of Temple and North Ninth. She would have been killed. Her car was totaled, the Mercedes Benz was knocked on the curb. I asked and, and, and requested for it to be on this agenda as a, 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 an emergency item for a four-way stop to be placed on the corner of North Ninth and Temple Street. It's obvious the administration doesn't understand the, the fully, the, uh, the ramifications of not providing these safety measures. And it's not until, you know, one of, somebody here loses a family member, it's bad enough, we have family members that are, that are, uh, uh, being shot disproportionately. Resident of the first ward who has a family member was shot in the head this, uh, over the, the, the last week. So I'm wonder, I'm wondering when are we as a council gonna hold ourselves accountable to the community? And it's one thing to take direction, but so, several people here talk about without the approval. We don't need approval from anyone here, not the administration at all. The council is the final authority. The council determines what measures are to be put in place. Now, whether or not the administration chooses to adhere to them and/or enforce them is a whole nother issue. They're the ones who are supposed to be taking direction and/or getting permission from their professionals that he hired. But the council has this prerogative to make sure that the, the, the community's best interests are being kept in mind. And I'll continue later on, I wanna respect the two-minute factor. But Council President, please provide an answer for when we're going to return to the council chambers, because, you know, we, we have employees who are forced to come to work daily, who have yet to be paid the, the, the pay that they're due for the, um, the at-risk measures that, or that was put in place by the state government. And yet, council and multiple members of the administration wanna sit home in the comforts of their own home, while employees have to go to work.
Councilman Adelis?
Thank you, Council President, um, so, that's where, we have a lot of questions about this item, the process, and Councilman Jackson is absolutely right, the council has every right to vote up or down and make the decisions as a legislative body. But as a council person, I'd like to hear both sides of a story prior to, um, prior to making my decision, my vote. I would recommend removing this item for, for another workshop, and we can invite the traffic engineer, because I would like to see why he stated, uh, that he's against it. And secondly, you know, uh, Council President, I'm gonna put it to record, reflect one more time. I, I sat on DPW committee for two years, and we've had our meetings at, at five o'clock at night, when the chair was previously Councilman Bill McCoy. Um, I can't make the meetings at twelve o'clock. I will ask you if the chair is gonna continue doing this. Either you allow him to say to do it, or remove me from the committee, um, because I'm not gonna be part of a committee that's not inclusive, uh, to, to all the members' needs. I'm a chair of Health and Human Services, I reach out to all my committee members to see when it's good that everyone can be there. I can't do twelve o'clock, uh, so please, Council President, let the record reflect, you can remove me. The chair could accommodate the five o'clock, like the previous chair did for the past two years. But two members brought it to workshop, we have multiple members that have questions. Therefore, let the traffic engineer come to workshop, and I'll ask my questions in there. If, I think we should remove this item and move on, we have seventy-six items, thank you.
Thank you for going back on the topic, I know you probably needed to make that statement, but thank you very much, Councilman Adelis. Um, Madam, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
I also recommend that number seven, given that we don't have the traffic engineer here, um, I re, I, I, you know, I recommend removing number seven also.
Yes, sir, number seven. Okay, please, number seven.
Right?
Yes, I have all the requests.
Number ten, uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes, number ten, um, ordinance establishing a thirty-minute parking zone in East Twenty-second Street between Fifteenth Avenue and Park Ave.
Councilman Davila, then I let, Council Jackson is asking for the floor. Councilman Velez and Councilwoman Carter.
Okay, I, I, I think my, my, my question thirty-minute parking zone, if I'm not mistaken, there's like a store in the corner, on the park outside, there's a liquor store, what's the reasoning for the thirty-minute parking? So the DPW...
That question is for DPW?
DPW Director, I'd like the DPW Director to answer the reasoning for establishing thirty-minute parking zone on East Twenty-six, Twenty-second.
This was taken off, um, a few months ago, um, when it was first brought up. Uh, Councilman Velez worked this back up at committee, um, last week to put, put back on the agenda. There are two bodegas, one sits on Fifteenth Ave, one sits on Park Ave of East Twenty-second Street. Replacing this on the agenda at the committee.
But, uh, Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Davila.
I'm, I'm... Bodegas, there's a lot of bodegas throughout the entire city. So, you know, are we gonna do this and give this privilege to others? I'm trying to figure out, because they're not, they're far away from each other. You, we're talking about between Fifteenth Ave and Park Avenue. So, um, I don't know, I'm not sure that this is something that I would support. I, I don't see the reasoning for it. I, I, I don't, I don't know if any other council member feels like I do, but there's a bodega on one... I, I, I don't, I don't know if any other council member feels like I do, but there's a bodega on one corner. There's a liquor store on the park outside, but, and there's a, uh, on the 15th, yeah, 15th Ave, there's another bodega. There's, and then on the opposite side, I think there's like a mechanic shop or something?
Tire shop.
A tire shop, right? Okay. I don't know. That, that was my question. I just needed to know the reasoning for it. That's enough. I don't need to dwell on it anymore. Okay? I'm good, Council President. I, I, I think my question is not going to be answered, but, you know, we can move on.
You know, you know what I remember getting also in the past, uh, pictures of the area? Sometime, we need, we need to see that. What is that, uh, Director?
The pictures were submitted with the original, um, when originally came on, the pictures were, um, originally on there. Uh, it was resubmitted, probably wasn't put onto the resubmission, but, um, I'll make sure to get back on if they're, they're moved for.
Yeah, because it, it would be helpful for the discussion, uh, for the pictures to be attached. It would tell a whole different story, uh, and, and it would help us, you know? It, it would help the discussion basically.
Council, Council President?
Councilman Davila.
I think that, you know, I asked the director and there's no really valid reason for it.
Councilwoman, the, the reason was Councilman Velez asked it to be put back on. It was taken off, um, this item was actually put back on. Maybe Councilman Velez could, could act, um, answer your question why he, uh, asked to, uh, have it put back on the agenda.
So Councilman Jackson, you want to allow, because I, I, the order was you were going to speak next and then, uh, Councilman Velez. You want to allow him to speak now? Councilman Jackson?
You, uh, you never removed my hand raised from the, the previous, I, I didn't request the floor.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Councilman Velez?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I noticed that you removed the other item that was real, real crucial. Um, I got explanation for everything because I do my diligent work out here. Uh, Councilwoman Davila, uh, let me answer you your concerns. When this was in the meeting way back, um, I believe, uh, a month ago, I was the one that pulled it because I want to go in the field and question the applicant. The applicant of this, um, of, uh, 30 minutes, um, minutes of parking zone is, her name is Tatita Corazon. Tatita Corazon has a agency that, uh, in the middle of the block that, um, uh, but a multi-service, um, a multi-service office, Tatita Corazon, well-known for the, since 1974, she's been having her office there. Um, she requested the 30 minutes because she have a lot of individual seniors that comes to her office and they don't find parking in the area. And the service that she, um, surrendered to the community for the past more than 30 years in the same location, uh, knowing that it had been a lot of, uh, no parking around. So she submitted the application. I was the one that pulled it to get more information about where it was going to go. I had an interview with her. She explained why, uh, it's not going in the corner, it's going in front of her two, three, I think three properties that she have. And one of them is a business and, um, and is only to mainly serve, uh, the individuals that go into her office or those individuals that are not going to take more than 30 minutes park in the area to use it at the same time from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM from Monday to Friday. Um, I saw, I saw it was suitable for it because the amount of individuals that goes to her office and, uh, and to the individual that goes to the store and the other corner of the, of the, of the, um, businesses. Um, that's why I, I, after, uh, visiting the area, uh, I told the director to pull it back into the agenda for a vote. And, 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 um, in the council and, and, sorry, in the committee meeting, we have majority of, of the, of the members on it and we approve it to bring it back to a vote up and down. Uh, and that's what I want to say. And Council President? Council President, before you cut me off, all the items that was put in the first reading that depends on DPW contracts, resolutions or whatever was, uh, to already discuss in DPW with the presence of everybody involved, uh, and the majority was approved to put it in the regular meeting for a vote up and down, not for discussion. I just want to let you know this because I don't want to, I don't want to be, uh, rebutting everything that they do. This number seven was mainly
Councilman, ready?
I know, in the agenda because the seniors and the two schools that we have know that the traffic in 21st Avenue.
See, I don't, I don't mean to be rude, but we have a meeting. You know, if you wanted to discuss number seven, we could have discussed number seven before. Council members, please, could we stay on, stay on topic? Please. Councilman De La Cee?
Thank you, Council President. So to my council colleagues, there's a pattern here that I want to just reiterate with some of these items. The director says all these items come because the council brings it up. I agree with Councilwoman Davila. There has to be something that with substance and it gets explained, not just it came through here. And I understand why they want to have their meetings at 12 o'clock, everyone. Cause I would ask some of these questions in the committee meeting and, but now they want to stone cold me out of the committee meetings because these are the questions I would ask. This agency, this location, this location has all residential properties around it. So a person that wants to take an hour nap on the block, says let me take an hour nap, parks in front of their house, could get a ticket. There is no other businesses. When you see two-hour parkage, it's usually the business district, keep the businesses going. This is a primarily residential area. And these are usually easy items that would come. But right now I'm starting to see a pattern. Whatever the chair wants to put on the committee, because they don't have anyone asking questions on the committee and because I, I'm not there, Council, uh, President, please put someone else on. Councilwoman Kind, if she wants to be on the committee, Councilwoman Mims, Councilwoman Davila, please put them on. Because there has to be someone that's watching this committee so we don't have these discussions here. Councilwoman Davila is absolutely right. You give 130 minutes for just a business, we're going to have a thousand requests come for 30-minute parking sporadically around the city. And I'm seeing this pattern. I'm seeing this pattern, Council President. We have to see, if you look at all our items, 90% of them are in the Fifth Ward.
We want to pull it, Councilman.
90% are in the Fifth Ward out of all these DPW items.
I'm going to pull it, Councilman. Thank you. Going to pull this one out, Madam Clerk. I'll, I'll let Councilwoman, uh, Carr speak.
We're taking off number 10. Mr. President, you said off a number 10?
Respect to Councilwoman Carr. Let's see what she needs to add to this, uh, discussion and, and then we'll pull it.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Uh, yes, Councilwoman Carr.
I was just, um, I remember when this came on over a year ago and, um, that lady has been in business over there for quite some time now. And I, I realized that, I knew that, uh, Councilman Velez did pull it off, but that lady's been there for quite some time. Uh, and we have shops just popping up everywhere. So we got to really take a good look at giving out 30-minute parking for, for business. Cause you can have, we've got bodegas, you got, you got three and four bodegas in one block. So we would be like having 30 minutes. But I remember that lady's been there for quite some time now. And not to say her business probably has gotten good and it's, and I'm happy that her business has gotten good. But we just have to take a closer look at this. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. We'll pull it in, Madam Clerk.
Yes, number 10, we're taking off. So we're taking off seven and 10, right, Mr. President?
Right.
Okay. Um, is everything else okay for first reading? Number five, six, eight?
Yes.
And nine?
Uh, yes.
Mr. President, there are some more items on public works. There are 66 through 73 and we're getting close to the public portion at 8 o'clock. What would you like to proceed with?
Um, Madam Clerk, uh, how many speakers do we have so far?
I, let me check with Ryan and see what he has on this item. Okay, he's on his way here. One message so far and one person on the queue.
Okay, they still have a few more minutes, five more minutes. Could we do number, the administration, um, items of, Madam Clerk, number 13 and 14?
13 and 14, yes, sir. Number 13 reads, okay, this is administration. This is the award of contract with circular janitorial supplies for the purchase and delivery of janitorial supplies. Bid number 2107.
So that should go on consent. Any, any discussions in that 14 also, um?
14, consent?
No, just read number 14.
Okay. Foundation and the Community Foundation of New Jersey, accepting a grant for the City of Paris Financial Empowerment Center.
Councilman Jackson and Councilwoman Davila, Councilman Velez?
Council President, you know, I'm making every attempt to adhere to the policy, but when you removed my hand and not acknowledged me when I, I removed it, when you didn't, and then I put it up and you didn't acknowledge me when the press item was on. So now as we move forward, you'll say we'll stay on topic. Uh, I, I just want to make note of that, but, but, uh,
You go back to 13, uh, Council.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what exactly was meant by one day because, um, I don't join in the day. I only represent what's, what's in the best interest of the public. So for councilmen to make a reference that they don't want him in, uh, committee meetings so they can, listen, you know, um, one thing that I'm not going to negate is the fact that, you know, Councilman Velez does his, his due diligence within his board and it, and it has an understanding of what the requests are. He has every right, everybody has every right to vote, vote it up or down. The fact of the matter is we have negated or neglected to be responsible when it comes to the planning. So I know there's a lot of people that may not understand the difficulties that this business goes through. And I don't, I wouldn't say that she's seeing an uptick in business. She's probably struggling because the entire community has been inundated with no, with, with parking issues. Where we, there's no parking anyplace. So she's putting forward a request and by, you know, doing what we're doing, we're not taking a stab at Councilman Velez. We're taking a direct stab at the business owner who's taking it, who's putting in a request for it. Lastly, in relative to the comment of, you know, where they don't want to and how they are conspiring. You know, I'm not the one who, um, are lining up to issue and render 35-year tax abatements without considering the community's best interest. I take offense when any commentary, there's no committee that I sit on, no public, uh, meeting that I sit in where I don't act responsibly for the public's best interest. I don't, I don't do anything for political, uh, gains. I don't do any political favors for, you know, any entities that's within this, within the community. So I take offense when people take certain, um, positions and/or, please do me a favor, don't speak in generality. You know, call me by name and be, be, be very specific. In closing, I take solace with the fact that the public is watching and they see exactly what's happening. So as though this game and charade is being played out as a, a great deal of members of this council is acting on behalf of the administration on, on many different items, it's, it's very disturbing. It's dis- it's disrespectful for that, that type of commentary to be passed back and forth. And I think it's, it's, it's responsible. If councilman did his due diligence and, and for whatever reason, someone can't, uh, uh, come to the, uh, committee, then have the discussion, you know, uh, with him offline or go, go, go do the, the, uh, the investigation yourself at the business and find out what it's about. But just to take it off arbit- for whatever reason can't attend is, I think is being very irresponsible. If you want to vote it down, you don't want to support it, that's one thing. But to take it off when the councilman has done all the work that's necessary, he took it off himself to do the background work and then, you know, we, we, we take it off to disrespect him, is disrespectful to the process and to the public.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Do you have anything on 13, I would think, uh, Councilman Jackson?
I do not.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, 13 is consent and what was the, um, approval of 14?
We still have, uh, Councilman Velez wants to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Thank, thank you, Council President. Let me drink a little bit of water, please allow me a key. I changed water pH sign, uh, I, I don't want to choke. No, no, not really. I got a lot to give to my city and, uh, Bruce and the ground. Uh, 13 and 14, this is how, this is how diligent I am. If you notice, it says administration, but since when the administration could give a contract of DPW, right? That's supposed to go in the DPW agenda. I brought it up in a, in a meeting.
Councilman, can you have maybe, cause you're going to bring up a lot of issues probably with this. Could you allow, and I let you decide when to allow the BA to answer some of your questions?
No, no, because she don't know, she don't know, you don't, she don't know, uh, unless she has a crystal ball now that she going to know what the question I'm going to do. And now you interrupt me without me, without me, uh,
You just asked a question.
Yeah, but please let me finish, then I mute myself and sit back and listen to everything that he want to say because I don't want to be into you there, you say and this and that.
Continue.
All right, so I spotted that in the meeting and Councilman Jackson noticed it, okay? And they say why a, a janitorial supply that we had done it before in the DPW committee and it's a contract to serve the entire city, why the administration is coming as they sponsoring? Unless there's something behind that, okay? The second one, number 14, is also part of, uh, setting a grant for, uh, recreation and this and that, right? And it falls into, into, I let, hold on, hold on, okay, hold on. So, so this is what I'm saying. When I go over the agenda and once again, and, 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 and a people, and Council President, allow me to say this because it is good to throw jabs and then now allow me to answer back. Out of the deep, out of, out of this agenda, the DPW committee has 18 items out of the and five are in the Fifth Ward. And I inherit those five items from the previous committee meetings that was in place before I came in July. Last but not least, uh, fortunately I have to do my meetings at 12 noon. I discuss it with DPW Director, hold on, I discuss it with DPW Director beca- time. And they don't want to do overtime and they want to do the meetings during the day that they work and the hours that they work. If the councilman want incur in the overtime in that department, uh, I think he had to get another committee. But I am here to, uh, look into the city, don't fall in overtime and put in the employees in overtime in this committee meeting. Thank you, Council President.
Uh, Madam BA, before you continue, and they always accuse me of answering questions, but there's a lot of items actually that, that the purchasing agent, uh, should present to the council every year ahead of time. You analyze how much money you spent the year before and you go ahead, especially with state contracts, right? With state contracts. For example, food by paper all the time and supplies, we should present, the, the administration should present a resolution to the council for an amount not to exceed that expedite the process and everything else in the city. But I'll let you speak right now. This doesn't have to go to DPW, I don't think, but go ahead.
Council President, uh, yes, that is exactly right. And, and with all due respect, Councilman Velez, but your notes about both of these items are incorrect. The first one, it is a citywide contract. It is not just for DPW, public works is part of it, but as is the library, as is, you know, the police department, fire department, others who utilize this vendor for these supplies. So that is why it goes to the purchasing agent, comes to administration. Secondly, item number 14 is not recreation. This is for the Financial Empowerment Center. This is, um, and, and so the grant went through finance and our conversation is related to that. So it, it's not, you might be confused with the Taub Dobie League as a recreation piece, but that is not what this is. This is a different organization. Um, the Henry and Marilyn Taub Foundation is separate from the, the, the foundation that supports the Taub Dobie League.
Thank you, Madam BA. Uh, Madam Clerk, can we move these two items to consent?
Thank you, Mr. President. 13 is working, I do have.
At this time, Madam Clerk, are we ready to do the public portion?
Yes, Mr. President. The public portion is now open, um, and, um, Brian will put through our first speaker. Um, Mister President, if I may, I maybe just repeat what I said earlier.
Yes, uh, I live at one sixty-two, I went to pay my sewer bill, now I'm paying water bill when no one never came, out of eighteen years I've been here, no one never cleaned the sewer. Streets clean and come whenever they feel like it, yes, I got two tickets, I went out of town because I had a emergency, and I left a note on the car, so I got two tickets, and then I look at it today, the week before that, the week before that, they did not give out tickets, I don't understand. My two questions need to be answered, when you said it was a one-time payment, or whatever it is, paid back, now I went to pay my two bill, we just got it yesterday, and it is eighty-one thousand thirty-six cents, why am I paying for water bill, the water I'm using, I'm paying water bill already? Hello?
You, you'll get a response in, in a minute from the administration. Thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, next speaker?
Yes, Mister President, um, Ryan, can you, um, please put through the other speaker, please, thank you.
Yes, hello, my name is Kathy Flavings, and I live on East Thirty-Eighth Street, and I have a problem with, uh, people parking in my handicapped parking space from the bonfire, and some of them bring, uh, um, a placard with them for their car, so they can't be towed away, and I'm sitting outside all night long, until four, at three, four o'clock in the morning, until they come to leave, and I have a big problem with that, because number one, I can't walk so far, I walk with a cane most of the time, I have a ninety-seven year old mother inside, when I was out, when I was not attending to her, she fell and broke her hip because somebody parked in my handicap spot, and all they would do was ticket the car, but leave it there, I would like to find out how to have that changed, because if somebody could come all the way here from New York to park, and somebody's handicap parked, to go down to the bar, to get drunk, why would they not be towed away? It makes absolutely no sense when it says, uh, parking with other handicapped persons prohibited, my telephone number is nine zero eight three three seven two seven seven three, thank you.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Mister President, thank you, Mister President, there's no one else on the public portion, Ryan? There's no one else for the public portion.
Someone has to make, uh, who's Ryan's?
Uh, Mister President?
Who's watching?
Mister President, you trying? We have, we're trying to give them a couple more minutes, if anyone is recalling?
Sure, but just, just put it down, Madam Clerk, I don't know, I'm, I'm here in the meeting, someone is watching the meeting, either someone in your office, or maybe Ryan, um,
Going on the other side, James.
He stopped, he actually stopped right now. Well, you give more time, um, Madam Clerk.
Let's give the public a couple more, uh, let's give them about another, that we, when we open up, we had, we gave them like ten minutes, so give them another five minutes, if anyone, if there's no one else that called.
In the meantime, we could, you know, address some of those concerns, but I was gonna say before you speak, Councilwoman Mims, that it doesn't matter who you are, if you, if you park in someone parking, uh, handicap spot, you need to be towed, it could be the chief of police, it could be the mayor, it could be any of us, it doesn't matter who it is, uh, it needs to be towed, that's, and, and, you know, I, I wish that the director was here to give us an answer of why that happened, uh, but that should never happen. Councilwoman Mims, and Councilwoman Cotton, Councilman Jackson, I see the little hand up, I guess you want to, yes, so, Councilwoman Mims, uh, Councilman Jackson, then Councilwoman Cotton.
Yeah, just quickly, I just need the address of the first caller, because I couldn't hear the address.
That one was Thirty-Eighth Street, the previous one was?
Well, the second one was Thirty-Eighth, I don't know what the- I haven't Fleming, but first of all.
I'll get the other one for you, Councilman.
Okay, thank you.
First time, one for the first time payment, but still a bill, I'll take it.
Uh, Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, Miss Fleming lives on the corner of Ninth Avenue and Twenty-Eighth Street, um, but, you know, I, I understand there's a need or an urge by council members to rush this process along, I think the public endures long hours, and they listen to, you know, rambling by, by probably everyone, um, but, you know, I just want to encourage the, the public to not become disenfranchised, and I want to, uh, request, Council President, that the concerns of the public, when we have questions, they need to be addressed and answered right away, for multiple reasons, one, the public needs to understand that, that, that the administration and the members of the council have their best interests in mind, and their concerns in mind, two, often we just roll right through, and all of the issues that they have failed to be addressed, especially in this platform, it's one thing when we have, uh, you know, we're in the chambers, and we able to, the BA or whomever else to walk over and address the, the member of the public's concerns, but I personally just don't feel that we're rendering a service, the, the, the woman was talking about her, uh, her, her sewer bill, and having to pay double down, because the way she, it was perceived by her was that it was a one-time sewer assessment, obviously she didn't understand that it was a, an, an ongoing sewer fee that she was going to be paying, and when these issues, uh, arise, I think it would be prudent for us to allow the administration to give an answer, not only for the public's best interest, so that all the members of the public can hear what the answer is, and the council can hear it as well, to either confirm and or negate what the administration is pushing.
They, they, they will have, and, and duly noted, also, I respect to the following, you know, to the speaker that, that was gonna speak next, uh, the past practice has been, and I understand we're not in the chambers, sometimes the administration will pull those residents to the side to address their concern, uh, but we still want to address their concern, and I just hope, Madam Clerk, that you're taking their information down, right?
Yes, we are.
Phone number down, so, the administration could also follow up with them, um, and they also have our phone numbers, so they can find it on our website, we could, you know, give it to them now, uh, they can reach out to us anytime also, uh, do we have any other speakers, Madam Clerk, because I, I announced it, I announced her an hour ago, and I know we're giving them a little bit more time to, um, you know, to, uh, in the meantime, um,
There's no one answer.
Okay, so in the meantime, could we, public portion, and we're gonna let, uh, Councilwoman Cotton speak at this time, and then Councilwoman Velez.
Got me off, okay, um, I, um, I want to, um, answer the lady with the handicap, my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, I have Corporation Counsel here, but if you have a regular handicap, and someone else with a placard has one, they can park, now, if you have a, a handicap with a specialized license plate, no, they can't not park, and I understand that they can tow it then, now, I think that maybe we need to change some of our laws that we have on the books, I'm not sure, if someone throws a handicap placard up in the window, and the regular handicap is there, they're saying they have the right to tow it, so legal, you're here to be able to tell us, um, Corporation Counsel, if you've got a specialized, yes, because I get plenty of calls with the specialized plate, that they can actually tow it, and I've seen them tow it with the specialized license plate on the handicap sticker, so, I think Corporation Counsel needs to answer us on how this can be done.
She will, but before she does, uh, Councilwoman, uh, that is, that is a, a, an area that was designated for residents only of that neighborhood, so that should also apply, according to what the, the speaker, uh, stated, that whoever was parked there was even from out of state, so, that should apply to the handicap, uh, you know, holder also, ho- hold on, I'll unmute you real quick. Go ahead, Councilwoman Cotton.
For the residency plates, I mean, residency permits, that it was from the weekend, from Friday to Sunday, it wasn't during the week, now, that's my understanding of how this permit went, but it was from Friday to Sunday.
We need to revisit it, but I'll let, um, as, as you requested, I'll let Corporation Counsel speak on this matter, thank you.
Thank you, Council President, so, it's the, what the caller was referring to, that handicap parking is particularly for that person in front of that home, it usually lists either their license plate, or their handicap placard number, that space is only for that person, so that is what that caller was referring to, I will reach out to the police to determine what they're doing to make sure that it's enforced properly.
Thank you, um, thank you, Corporation Counsel, um, what's also concerning is, the, the resident stated that they were issued some, but the, the vehicle was not towed, so we have to, uh, look into that also, thank you, um, Councilwoman Davila.
Corporation Counsel, I think you said something that, so, the handicap, when you apply for that special placard, you have the actual plaque number, and that is connected to your car, when you have a regular handicap, that number, and you get a handicap in front of your house, it does not have, it's not, can be anyone who's handicapped.
Correct, so is-
The one that's personalized is the one you pay for, you said-
Number, even with- The one that come, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, it's the one that, so when it comes to court counsel, it says, I live at Thirty-two XYZ Street, and the council approves me to have the handicap space there, because for whatever reason, I don't have a driveway, my landlord uses a parking lot, whatever it is, if that's, if the council approves the space specifically for me on XYZ Street, then I'm the only one who can park in that space, because the handicap, if you look at the sign, the sign will say, this parking designated for placard number two, three, four, five, so it's designated specifically for that, and those with the sign, but, those are what the signs should say, and that's what we're seeing in municipal court, the sign saying it's designated for that, again, I will reach out to the court to make sure that we're enforcing that properly, I'll also reach out to public safety to make sure the tickets are being issued properly, and that the signs are correct, so we'll make sure we have the proper approach and making sure they're all done.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Right, um, Corporation Counsel just stated, what Councilwoman Davila was trying to express was that the council approves all handicaps signs, when, whether a resident, um, puts in a request for a handicap sign in front of their house or not, if they do not pay the additional fifty dollars to have a personalized placard, then it is not a personalized, personalized space for them, all handicap signs that, that's approved by this council, that is requested by residents, if it's just a regular handicap sign, in which no one asked the, the, the young lady who was on the, on the call, did she have a personalized placard, if she did not pay the additional fifty dollars, it won't be designated, whether it was, whether she put the application in, and the council approved it for her or not, she must pay the additional fifty dollars, and I think that, um, uh, and I, the, the, the business owner at, at the, uh, bonfire is a very reasonable person, I think, I'm sure that he'll be willing to work something out for the resident to make sure that she's not, um, uh, uh, inconvenienced such as this, and I, and again, to Corporation's Counsel's point, we also need to make sure that these, these items are being enforced, the issue is, when residents are calling for a response, it's still, they're still receiving two, three-hour, possible six-hour, I had a resident the other day in Brooksville, they waited six hours and no one ever showed up, so, um, just for a point of clarity on that matter, Council President.
Thank you, Council. Any other? Councilman Velez?
Uh, thank you, Council President, I just want to bring in, uh, to, in play that every handicap in the City of Patterson has an applicant name and address, and a person requesting it, so, um, if, if somebody put it in front of my house, uh, it has an application, so I believe it belongs to that, to that particular house, now, if a person has a handicap placard, and, um, came and parked there, and probably parked temporary and leave, but it, it designated to that property, it has the address and everything, have a placard or not, designated, it still belongs to that house, and it has an application behind it, and a person approving documents that is handicapped, because that's why the city council honor it, um, no matter is the, uh, the personalized plaque or not, the personalized plaque came across when somebody was ca-, um, in the council about ten, nine years ago, saying that they was requesting, they was requesting a handicap, and their neighbor was taking the parking, so Councilman Morris came up with, um, the strategy of designating handicap parking for that individual to extra the application, but it belongs to a house, a patient, an actress, so nobody should be taking a handicap if they did not solicit the handicap.
Councilman Jackson?
Sorry to prolong this, Council President, Councilman Velez, that's absolutely incorrect, council does not have any authority to regulate mandate and put in place, that's the state guidelines, state regulations, this is put in place by the state, handicap provisions, an all road, everything that's done on the road is not done by the council, we do have the ability to enact it based on state statute, but if you do not have a personalized paid for placard tag that's along the, the place, you could have put the request in for the handicap, uh, parking space, we know that, in order for a handicap space to be put on the block, someone has to request it, but if they don't pay the extra fifty dollars and have a personalized license, license plate number on that sign, anyone with a handicap placard can park there, it is not unlawful, they could park there overnight, they could park there for two days, they could park there as long as they want to, because it is a handicap parking space for anyone with a handicap provision, in order for them to personalize it, they must pay the additional money to receive a placard where it has their license plate on it, that is the only way around it, there is no other if ands or buts about it, they can't go out, start a fight, because look, that's my space, I put in a request for it, no, they must pay the fifty dollars and get the license plate, I thi- I just wanted to reiterate that, Council President, because it's very important for us to disseminate proper information, uh, Corporation Counsel just made a comment that was incorrect, and now Councilman Velez reiterated the same comment, and it misleads the public, so that everybody's confused, we should be ma- we should make sure that we have the proper information being disseminated.
Thank you, thank you, Council.
Thank you, Councilman Mims, has her hand up, Council President?
I recognize her already, thank you.
Okay, very good.
Council President, I, I'm, I don't have any questions, I'll go by there tomorrow, I don't have any questions or concerns, I was, I just have my hand up to move to close the public portion.
Thank you. Want to close, uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mister President, there's no more speaker for the public portion, and Councilman Mims motion to close, they are second?
Second.
By Councilwoman Mims, second by Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mister President, roll call to close the public portion of a workshop session of September first, twenty twenty, Councilman Abdallah Lee?
We have an issue, but, hold on, hold on, Madam Clerk. Hold on a minute, hold on a minute. Um, you guys, uh, council members, you're able to unmute yourself right now, so you can take the vote. So proceed, uh, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir, roll call to close the public portion, Councilman Abdallah Lee?
Proceed.
Okay, Councilman Chaheri?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila? Okay. Councilman Jackson?
Councilman Jackson, you're able to unmute yourself, there you go.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just a word to the public and to the council members. Um, this is probably one of the most unprofessional childish, uh, scenarios that I've ever been a part of. "No, let me mute you because I don't like what you say. Let me mute you because you're not saying and agreeing with me." And now we have to run this meeting that becomes more cumbersome and more childish because we can't conduct ourselves as professionals. I shouldn't have to sit here and have to request to be unmuted so I can vote to close out a public portion of a meeting. It just prolongs what we have to do and it just, you know, highlights the fact that what we're doing is playing with the public's best interest. But on that note, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Mim?
Yes, Ms. Fleming. I got your request. I'll reach out to you. I'll stop by tomorrow. Um, and also the other woman that called in, I'll make sure I reach out to you tomorrow as well. Thank you, Madam Clerk. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Velez?
Move on, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President?
Before I vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
If you notice, we went from WebEx to Zoom. In past meetings, uh, due to the pandemic, we've been doing all the meetings through WebEx, which is another, you know, another software that we're using. And myself, the president, was having a hard time having control because we were not behaving in a professional manner. So now we changed to Zoom, which gives me the ability, not when you vote. I just clicked on a feature. I just want to let everyone, the public made aware that I clicked on a feature that I would let all the council members have the ability to unmute themselves whenever they want, when it's time to take the vote. But it was necessary to move because you would have council members interrupting all the council members, not following proper protocol. And I leave it at that, but just don't allow some council members to misinform you of why certain things were being done. Uh, my vote is yes at this time, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. The vote is five in favor, three absent. And the record reflect that third ward is vacant. Therefore, the public portion is now closed.
Madam Clerk, let's take, at this time, let's take the economic development items that we have here, number 15.
Number 15, yes, sir. I do. Number 15 is a resolution, amended Resolution 20063, authorizing the release of deed restrictions. And this is against 204-206 Graham Avenue, Block 3501, Lot 19.
Let me ask my council colleagues. We have a few resolutions here removing deed restrictions. I feel, I want your opinion. I feel that, you know, we can put them on the set, but some council members might have an issue, might want to discuss certain...
I don't require a public hearing.
You could just move them to the next meeting.
No, I don't want them moved.
I have a question. I have an explanation. Seventeen and eighteen requires public hearing. These items were published by the department and they informed the clerk, they gave me a copy of the publication, that these items require a public hearing. That is sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, not fifteen. Just sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. That those three has to be definitely on the record.
Council President? Why not fifteen? Um, why not fifteen?
Well, they did not give me any, um, I don't know what was the reason for that. I have the frame of economic development, why that did not require a public hearing.
Uh, Councilwoman Mim, do you know the answer?
For number fifteen, we didn't need to do a public hearing on this. The sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, the reason why these are JCM investor properties and there was, um, an issue inside of the, um, language in the deed and that's why they have to be public hearings for the community. The other one didn't have that same concern, which is not JCM. But I believe sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen are JCM investors. They were carried over from before. So I would not, um, want them to be removed. We definitely need to move forward on these so that the, uh, the developer that's looking to move and to do business, that they can take care and handle what they need to do.
So could we put all of those on regular?
Fifteen through eighteen, Mr. President? Eighty is regular, right?
Yes.
Okay, fifty. Okay, I do have.
Put fifteen also. It's also a restriction removal.
Right. The other three are definitely regular. So fifteen, you go. Thank you, Ragana.
Yeah, I agree, Council President.
So let's do the finance items, Madam Clerk.
Next number, next item is item number nineteen is a resolution authorizing partial purge of demolition lien. And this is against 67 Market Street to reduce the amount owed to the amount owed to the amount of the property value. That's number nineteen.
Any, um, discussion on this one? All right. Put that one on consent.
Exchange for number nineteen?
Council President?
Councilman Velez?
Uh, that number is seventeen, you say?
No, we're number nineteen, Council.
Number nineteen? And you say this remove of restriction, now it's the Market Street one, right? Okay, it's not the fifth ward, but it's, uh, I was just looking at the, where's the amount that was going to be reduced, from eighty-eight thousand?
Number nineteen?
Uh-huh. From ninety-two to eighty-eight?
Uh, the redemption total was $273,000.
Now, that was lien imposed by, and given that five hun... Okay, this is, it was a demolition lien that they put on it, right? Now, who did the demolition?
Director Powell? Uh, Madam BA?
Who's the owner of this?
So this is, yes, I was going to say this is for CFO, has some more details here.
Okay. I'm trying to un...
You're there. We hear you, Marge.
Okay, there. Um, this demolition was done many years ago. It was a building that had collapsed partially. So the city owners, um, kept the taxes current all these years since the demolition. And in order to, um, sell the property, they have to, the city had to vacate.
Correct. Now, my question is because I believe... I, can I ask a question? Yeah. I believe, I believe, uh, I believe that it was demolished because of fire?
I believe it was a fire, yes.
Okay. So there was a structure there before and it was a fire. It got demolished because it was a safe, uh, safe, uh, structure after the fire. Um, then, then probably the, uh, the owner has insurance. He got paid for that demolition and he never paid the city the demolition? Did they investigate that?
No, that would not have happened because there would have been a, if there was a recovery, the insurance check would have been payable also to the city of Patterson. And the insured would not be able to cash that check themselves. So there was no recovery.
Based on some cases that have taken care of the city...
This was all metted through the law department, too.
I, I know, but just, just, just in case, because I had some cases that came in front of me. Uh, one particular that, um, the Rose Street, you remember the Rose Street fire? The one in the fifth ward that three houses got burned? Uh, one of the constituents, uh, got the money for demolition, okay? And, um, finally, you know, they got the check. They never paid the city for demolition. And, um, and they went to sell the property. They tried to get the lien out of the city, but the guy had the check in his account because they issued the check, the insurance company issued the check to the insurer and he was not that responsible individual to deliver that check to, to the city. So I want to make sure that this is one of those particular case that the insurer gets the money and he's responsible to cancel any debt or bills out there regarding the fire. So, you know, I just want to make sure that, that, that's not the case.
So from now, from now until, if we decide to keep it on, from now until the next meeting, all these questions, Marge, please note them. Uh, Councilman Jackson and then Councilman Abdelaziz and Councilwoman Khan.
Thank you, Council President. So I can lend a point of clarity to this matter. Um, the woman who is the owner is a lifelong Patersonian, so was her parents. Her dad had since passed away sometime a while ago, around the time of the fire. And as Madam Sharon has expressed, the taxes, although the property, which was owned by her father, was demolished and it was a decision that was made by the city, it was no structural, um, or, um, or imminent hazard complaint that was filed, but there was a decision made by the city, former administration, and they took away this property from this, uh, this family. So they, they continued to pay the full taxation. And I, I haven't, I haven't checked in on the item in quite some time, but after speaking to Mr. Ben Segelman of the Law Department, what was explained to me was that what is being done, Councilman Velez, by law is that the only, um, um, item portion of the taxes that we're purging is what the expenses that the city incurred did not incur. So that's the interest. The fee that is, that was assessed for the demolition is still going to be required to be paid. But the, the reason that, um, I actually was helping this, uh, uh, property owner for some time, I don't know, uh, I'm assuming someone from the administration had taken it, taken the baton and moved it forward. But the reason I was in support of it, um, not only because she's in the first ward, is because without, um, this provision and without us, the council, giving the concession of a purge, the property would be underwater and the land would not be worth what the bill is associated with it. And our, um, job is to help our taxpayers. She's been a faithful taxpayer in spite of the fact that the building was gone. But she can't, um, sell the property, which and then would only, um, push her to lose it. So it's inevitable, the property is going to be sold. Someone else is going to get captured. She does not have the means to, um, to, to bring forward an additional project. But I think it's best, in the best instance of the council, the community, and the young lady as well. Any interest that was accumulated?
Four of my early items, now I have my four controversial. Now, I mean, some of that page, I could take like an hour and a half. It's possible that I might...
Director Powell, your voice on. Director Powell?
Yeah, hang on.
All right. Thank you. Council President may have the floor? Cap? You're on mute. Got it, yes, yes. All right, thank you. So I have a few questions for, um, Madam CFO and, um... So the verbiage on this right now, I understand that the property could be underwater, but we also got to be mindful. So for instance, for example, Madam CFO, if the property was assessed at $70,000, would this person have to pay us $70,000 or pay us the amount for the demolition?
The remainder sum of the lien is, is what's, um, what's being owed. They, we wrote off the accrued interest.
All right, so this is why... So, so right now, the principal's $88,000. The total lien was 273. So according to... Here's my concern with something like this, right? So you have a dilapidated building. You're a property owner. The building's abandoned, building is bad. And not this particular case, because I know the councilman from the first ward is advocating first, because if you're, but take an added towner that owns a property that's dilapidated, right? They say, "You know what? Let it sit there." We fight as council people and advocate to demo, right? Costs us $88,000. We did it 10 years ago. And then they come back to us 10 years ago, "I'm about to sell the property" and we're taking out the interest. So guess what you did for me as a property owner? You gave me an $88,000, pretty close, zero interest loan to knock down my property. And when you knocked down my property, it brings down the taxes because now you're only getting assessed on the land. This property only pays $3,800 in taxes. And now we're 10 years down the line. It's been abandoned. We put up $88,000 from the city that we didn't pick up, right? Now we're going to waive the interest, which is almost like a 0% interest loan. Just think about you taking a loan for something and someone says, "Take my college loans." They say, "We're going to waive the interest for you." Thank you. Now the owner don't know what the plans in this particular case are, could sell the property for a profit, right? We don't know what the plan is. We don't know what the plan, if they're under contract for sale for $300,000. So then, instead of them walking away with $27,000 profit, they walk away with a $200,000 profit. But the city of Patterson, that upfront the money, uh, for the $88,000, is waiving the interest. This could send a message to many property owners that have dilapidated buildings. Let the city knock them down and say, "You know what? I'm not going to pay. Um, they may waive my interest, right? We, we could waive it like this, this here." I would like to know, uh, Madam CFO, or anyone, Councilman Jackson, if you could tell me what the plans are for this property? Is it, is it under contract for sale? Is there a development idea? It is in the heart of Market Street and downtown. Uh, it is, I think, a piece of property. I'm not no economic or, or, or real estate guru, but I think it is in a very, uh, in an area that is, is booming, Peru Square. Uh, so what's, that's the only thing I'm concerned with. We're going to knock down buildings and instead of telling people, "Fix it because we're going to hit you with interest", now we waive it. You know, we're giving people 0% interest to demo the buildings. Thank you, Council President. Councilman Jackson?
Council President, um, first, I think, I have to acknowledge, Councilman Abdelaziz is absolutely correct. I think under normal circumstances, um, you know, that, that would be foolish of the council. But traditionally and customarily over the past several decades, it's exactly what the council does. If there's a property that does not sell, for whatever reason, it accumulates an excessive amount of taxes, we go to what's called a tax lien assignment sale and we reduce the debt because we are doing it in order to offload the property. But we do it for developers who are extremely well off, who come here and make 18% interest and who, you know, um, become, um, you know, who turn it into an extremely lucrative business. On those rare occasions where we have members of our community who have suffered a hardship... I, 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 I think I agree with, I agree with you coheartedly, but I also see another side. Do we want to watch this property owner lose the property in a tax sale? And furthermore, they can't lose it in a tax lien sale because this demo lien can't be sold in an assignment sale. So what happens is now they say, "Well, you know what? I can't do anything with the property, so let me, let it become delinquent." And then the new property, the new investor comes in and they purchase the $3,500 or $3,200, $3,800, whatever the amount is. They purchase that lien. It goes delinquent for two years. They foreclose on... Eighty-eight and helping a, a lifelong resident of the community. What we do is, we, um, we watch our residents, as we traditionally do, be, um, hit over the head and not help them in, in, in times like this. So there is a necessity for the council to use its discernment to look at circumstance by circumstance. And yes, I do think personally that residents, lifelong residents, should get preferential treatment, different kinds of treatment over developers. That's my personal opinion. I think that, you know, I'm not doing anything out of the ordinary for this resident. I think that we, she's looking to move on. We should allow her an opportunity to do so.
Thank you. So I have a concern and before some of Councilman Abdelaziz's questions get answered. So I'm sure when the, the structure was there, this, the owner back in 2008 had insurance in this property. Probably got a payout from the insurance company for the loss.
Um, you know what? Let me let me answer you. Let me let you answer this question, um Director Powell.
Ah, hey. Council President. What's the question?
No, so we just had a discussion on this item for a while. There was many concerns that that were brought up. But I just I just stated something and and maybe you didn't hear me. What I what I said is, back in two thousand and eight, or whenever this this fire took place, the 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 structure, didn't this owner got a payout from maybe the insurance company?
Oh, I don't I don't know the details on whether or not, according to Marge, she was saying that it would be difficult for them to utilize an insurance payment without reconciling the demo lien that was placed on the property.
Yeah, but the demo, from my understanding, maybe.
I remember when it collapsed.
Listen, I understand, but maybe we 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 decided to do the demo lien because, yes, Councilman Jackson probably, you know, knows more because he has looked into this matter probably, according to, you know, his statement. Um, but if they got a payout at the time when this structure, you know, burned, and 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 I'm sure the insurance gave them, you know, made a payment to them for the loss. Uh, do we have something in place to to make sure that this things like this don't happen again? Because it it just doesn't make sense to me. Well, they got the benefit. All right.
All I know is I I was in.
You don't know, you don't have the answer right now? Marge, can you please elaborate a little more? Marge?
I'm sorry, Council President. When there is an insurance recovery uh payment to a property owner, the check is payable to the municipality. Uh, I believe the tax collector, I'm not sure who the um the individual is paid paid to, but my recollection of the law is that the tax collector gets a is assigned the check as well as the um the owner of the property. And that's because if there's any liens that have to be recovered from that payment, the city has the custody of that check.
No, I I understand, Marge, but I'm saying is, if let's say there was a property there in good standing, back in two thousand and eight, the property burned down, right? They had insurance in the property. You want to ask something?
What one say is that legal did did vet this resolution and found nothing of the sort. Otherwise, there would be some some description of that somewhere, whether it was in a memo to us or or in the actual resolution. So there is no record of a an insurance uh proceed check to the city or to the owner that we have.
It's two thousand and eight. So but let me let me ask Corporation Council. Maybe you have something to add.
I have nothing to add other than what Marge just said. This did go through legal, then did it through insurance to ensure there was no payout. And Marge is also correct in that if there was a payout, the city is named on the check as well. The city can remove any liens, and then it is necessary to return whatever funds back to the homeowner. So in this case, that's not present in this case. There wasn't insurance. There was nothing further. Otherwise, Marge is correct. It would have been noted somewhere.
This property was, that's what I don't understand, and I don't want to prolong it. But what I'm saying is, probably before. It was a structure there is what I'm saying. And he was probably in good condition. Something must have happened to the structure. If it was a fire, all I'm saying is, most likely, they won't have insurance. That's what I'm saying, at the time. Right now, it might not be relevant to this discussion, but I just want to make sure that that we don't compensate people for having properties in 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 that type of condition for a long time. Then we we incur the expense, you know, to 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 remove the structure. And then, you know, we don't get anything in return. But I understand that this property needs to be addressed. No one is going to buy it. I understand a hundred percent. We all have a lot of concerns. This property, this needed to be done. If we if we leave this lien in there, no one is going to acquire this property because of the the, you know, the amount of the lien. So I understand. We need to, you know, continue to push for economic development, and no one is going to develop there. A hundred percent, a hundred percent. Thank you.
I can't hear you, Council President.
Oh, I'm muted. I just spoke that long. I didn't say anything.
Yeah, you sure did.
Oh, man, I was muted the whole time. All right.
I just wanted to say something. Um, if we go into that property, even though the interest is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that the city is not going to get, but my understanding of of being on the city council here, that if a property, if if the fire department deems for it to be demolished, it has to be demolished, insurance companies knows if they had insurance, I believe this property did not, was not insured, for 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 them not to have, because that's the first thing they'll do, is they'll pay the demolition cost for a piece of property. Uh, then, if someone wants to, they're not going to issue you money all up front that you will then have to rebuild, or you're going to have to stake, stake that you got to rebuild. But if this property had insurance, we wouldn't be sitting here now because they would have gotten paid. The city of Patterson would have gotten their money for demolition.
So council members, I'm just going to ask you one thing. We all have made a lot of comments and statements. In the interest of moving this agenda and moving. Do you have any questions that would facilitate, you know, continuing with this with this item or or removing it? Do you have a question or a statement? If it's a statement, please, uh, make a real break. Councilman Velez? And then Councilman Jackson? All right, Councilman Jackson, uh, you can speak now.
So my question to the council, Council President, and I appreciate the opportunity, is I'm trying to find some clarity in why we we spent this much time on an item where we're saving a property owner, a resident, less than two hundred thousand, but we rushed through agreements that give direct developers nine million dollars in developer's fees. I mean, the the Madam Sharon stated it clearly. Corporation Council also reinforced it. It is impossible for there to have been an insurance policy. The family did not get paid because if there was a policy that paid out, Patterson would have been an equal beneficiary. It would be impossible for them to cash the check because we would, it would have been a dual sign check. So no, there wasn't a payout. The property owner lost their family member who was the owner. They inherited the property. It then had a lien that accumulated interest. They were responsible. They still paid the taxes. Council President, I ask you, move this item forward. They've been trying to get this done for more than ten years. It's not that they've been, they haven't been trying to get it done. They've been trying to get it done, and for some reason, we find it difficult to give a resident less than some pennies when we're giving away millions on a daily basis.
Councilman, uh, I agree with you. And in the interest of, you know, getting this this property redeveloped, no one is going to, no one's going to acquire this property and build on it if we don't remove this this lien. And that was part of the discussion we had before. Let's just, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Let's put that on on.
Consent?
No, no, non-consent.
Take it on non-consent?
Yes, non-consent.
Okay. Should we move on to twenty-one?
Uh, yes.
And twenty-one, a resolution to purge property taxes, for block twenty-one, fourteen, lot seventeen, also known as two sixty-two east nineteen street, and authorizing a refund.
Number twenty, Madam Clerk.
That's number twenty.
Yeah.
I just read twenty. It's a purge property taxes for east and for two sixty-two east nineteen street, and they're authorizing a refund. Number three.
So so. Marge, what happened with this one?
A woman that owns the property um was uh disabled a hundred percent and favorably discharged from some service in the U.S. government. And um so he was a hundred percent tax exempt. So for the period of his disability, the taxes are being purged.
Good enough. The reason I'm asking the question is that we we always have to ask because sometimes we discussed some other items in finance today, and there were some some mistakes that are done. And I remember even former Councilman McFoy always asking, how is it that we have all those mistakes and, you know, uh, take place? So that's why I'm asking the question, to make sure we get more and more and more information. Um, can we move this one to consent?
Number twenty, consent. Yes, sir, I have.
Health and Human Services?
Number twenty-one, resolution authorizing the exception of New Jersey Association of County and City Health Officials um for COVID-nineteen response grant.
Consent, Council President.
Twenty-one consent?
Yes.
Okay, move one to twenty-two, Mr. President.
Well, hold on, hold on. I'll see Councilman Velez before we put it on some snap. And Councilman Velez wants to say something, and.
For twenty-one?
Yeah, it's it's Council President, I don't know, but I don't know if you are muting only by yourself or you have mute on some people.
Everybody, everybody has it on. Uh, from time to time, you know, I would constantly take it off. I just don't want people jumping in when other people are speaking, Councilman.
No, that we're not going to do that because we will adult in this situation.
We'll take it off. We'll take it off for now, and hopefully we all uh act intentionally, and I don't have to go there. So I'm going to take it off right now. I'm going to allow everyone to unmute themselves. The minute that we get out of control, I'm going to have to do it again, like it or not. So, Councilman Velez?
Uh, Councilman, um, um, Council President, you know, that's okay.
This never used to happen in the chambers, let me say.
I I know. This never happened in the chambers.
Ever since, and let me talk to you now, Councilman, but ever since we've been doing this WebEx, uh, a lot of people have reached out to me, and I'm going to leave it at that, because some people seem that think that this is, you know, intentional, some of the things that are done. Um, I don't think so, but the public thinks so. So all I'm saying is, just like you guys, I would love the day that we go back to the council chambers, because in twelve years, watching council meetings and being at the council meetings, I never seen the disrespect that take place through through WebEx and and through holding the meetings. So let me, you continue now, Councilman Velez.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate that. If you have to address the council or reprimand the council, don't do it when I'm asking you. Everybody could think that you reprimanded me. Perception is a lot, you know what I'm saying? But um I I the the reason I I ask because I noticed I was trying to to unmute myself by Ken since uh since way before the discussion of the insurance company. But um uh we can move forward. That's okay. The mood is conducting the right way. Thank you.
Councilman Jackson?
Council President, um, I would request a full report from the administration on what the COVID spending looks like. We have yet to get the report on the money that was supposed to have been allocated to the city from the county. Now, we're receiving additional funding for COVID. And um honestly, I have no idea um what that. Before we vote on this item, we can put it on uh regular. And please um have the administration attach, you know, a full outline and descriptive description of how money was um uh disseminated or dispersed throughout the community from COVID.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman. So just for the council to to get a picture, and Councilman Jackson has every right to ask for that request of the administration. Um, if if the request is, this is a grant for eighty-eight um eighty-eight thousand dollars. So I just don't want this grant, as from our committee, we discussed it. We have attached the letter of agreement between the organization and the city. If uh the request is for the eighty-eight thousand dollars, this is separate from the millions of dollars that that the city received. Um, if you want the expenditures for this, it's only going to be eighty-eight thousand dollars. And I don't want it to be wrapped up on what the city is doing. I'm sure the the director could provide that for the eighty-eight thousand dollars. This is a grant that they're giving us, uh, and their agreement is there, and everything for the use of it is attached to this ordinance. So I just want to let that clear. If this is only eighty-eight thousand dollars and it has no attachment to the CARES Act. Thank you, and that's why I recommend consent, Councilman.
Councilman Velez?
Uh, this is number twenty-six, correct?
No, this is number twenty-one.
What, Councilman Velez?
Okay, yeah. The uh, Council President, regarding the twenty-one, uh, um, uh, this is for testing or what is it for?
Can I be in?
Oh, the oh. I'm playing with my camera a little bit. I didn't want, I wouldn't want it work at the beginning. Um, but this is a reimbursement grant from the state. Um, so the state gave these funds to the Public Health Officers Association. So each municipality got, obviously, we got received the largest amount because of our population. Um, so this is going to be used, or the guidelines given is for technology, um, overtime, fringe benefits, um, MiFi, mobile phones. So we did get a new version of the surveillance system, which is a tracking system for COVID. So in order to get that, that'll be something that we can, uh, software that we can now um establish and get new technology for the health division.
Uh, so so in other words, I admit to, I admit to Chairman, if this is, I'm sorry, uh, um, I know that she answering based on what she reading, but I got to read here, keeping a communicated disease reporting in a civilian system. If that is uh based on the on the phaser, the people that goes out there making sure that whoever come positive, they follow up and isn't it?
Correct. Yeah, so the surveillance system is that tracking software that the state uses, and that by default, all health divisions and hospitals must use it up.
Now, saying that, why, why when it comes Friday, they don't update the dashboard? And they updated on Monday?
Say that one more time, Councilman. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I've been following the dashboard of every case. Um, and and Friday, they reported eleven or twelve cases. Saturday and Sunday, they didn't report no one. And then Monday, today, uh, yesterday, they came up and reported nineteen. So why they not recording like before every day?
So I I would have to double check that. We do get the numbers in every day. Um, I would have to check if maybe there was some issue as they were uploading, but we definitely provide the numbers on a daily basis. So I will double check why this weekend it wasn't updated.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, so Director, uh, Councilman Jackson, take a minute. I have a quick, one quick question or suggestion. I know that you mentioned purchasing cell phones and Wi-Fi, MiFi. Um, I also recommend you keep track of those because the minute this grant is over, we're not holding them. We're not paying for them out of the, you know, taxpayers' money from the city of Patterson. Uh, that's a concern that I have, so just make sure.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Everyone is aware that if we do get this, it's only for a temporary basis. Um, these are guidelines, so it's not a hundred percent of where it's going. Um, but everyone knows it's temporary, and after that, the COVID and this process is done, uh, they will no longer be able to use cell phones because they'll be back in the office and they won't have to make weekend or evening calls.
Councilman Jackson?
Um, thank you, Council President. So Director, does that include this surveillance system that we're purchasing as well? Is this surveillance system going to have to be returned once COVID is uh designed and placed?
So the surveillance system is a is a state. Uh, what this would do would be allow us to update the software to be used in our technology. Um, some of the computers in the health division are very old. Um, in in order to update it, it's almost an impossible task. But the surveillance system stays, um, because if there is any other uh type of disease or anything else that needs to be tracked, it should be tracked on the surveillance system. But something that the health department will have access to continuously.
Okay, so it would be, it would be, I guess, advantageous if we can get a list of items that will be required to be returned and items that will not. Also, Director, if you can, please, I know the CDC, just today, on the CDC site, they printed, they posted the the numbers. And um uh according to the CDC site, the the mortality rate was at six percent, which is which is an extremely low number. And uh agreeing with Councilman Velez, we got updates frequently. So um and and Council President, just want to make a note that the reason I know this item does not is, I know it's only eighty-eight thousand dollars, and I know it does not directly have an impact on the money that we allotted to the. Okay, so it would be it would be I guess advantageous if we can get a list of items that will be required to be returned and items that will not. Also, Director, if you can, please, I know the C uh just today on the CDC site, they print they they posted the the numbers and um uh according to the CDC site, the the um mortality rate was at six percent, which is which is is an extremely low number. And uh agreeing with Councilman Velez, we got updates frequently. So um and and Council President, just want to make a note that the reason I know this item does not is I know it's only eighty eight thousand dollars and I know it does not directly have an impact on the money that we allotted to the city from the county, which is disseminated by the federal government, but it's COVID related and I think that we have a responsibility to the public, not only to show the fiscal responsible the the responsiveness that has been, you know, carried out, but also the the ongoing ramifications of this virus. We haven't been posting numbers. We haven't been posting the results. We talked about doing, you know, the results of contact tracing. I haven't heard them out, Director. I don't know if you posted them. Um we haven't gotten any reports. And um I we just don't know how the community has been overall impacted by COVID. You know, for something that has shut, you know, our economic, our local economic uh system systems down, it stopped our schools, it stopped, you know, general business on a day to day. I think, you know, the public is entitled to know what the impact is at this current moment. We haven't done an update since uh several months ago. So that's my point that I was trying to bring to the to the table.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. And uh
Council President.
Hold on a minute. Um Madam CFO, uh you probably have access to the system. While we continue the meeting, is there any way that you could go in the system basically, check out the grant where we have uh where we have the allocations for the COVID and give us a report. Uh we shouldn't have to put in a request. We should at least get an idea of how much money we have spent and then so that we should have an idea of how much we have spent so far. Uh it's just by looking at end, you'd be able to tell how much we have spent so far.
Yep. Um that would be for other expenses, not payroll. However, I believe as
to break it back to the line, don't
Attached to the um bill list tonight is the year-to-date um overtime paid under COVID.
But you could give us a report again for the public to also to know. This might how much we have paid uh in salaries. That includes overtime, salary reimbursements, uh how much we have paid in salaries and how much we have spent uh spent in in other expenses. When you get a chance to be working on this. I'm sure you have access to a system from your home. Uh Madam B A?
I
Hold on a
Council President, I just wanted to note that there are some things that um that might not be captured necessarily in Edmonds. Like for example, when Marge just noted that the um overtime, that is going to be. So, um, you know, like as we're talking about it, it it just might be easier for me to provide a report to everybody after the fact.
Madam B A, Madam B A, I don't know how behind the administration is. For example, I understand what you're saying. Those expenses for salaries need to be reclassified. Some of them might go into FEMA. Some of them might go into the CARES Act. I just hope that we haven't gone months without recording the expenses in the appropriate account. Because the other day, the city was holding an eleven thousand dollar check because they were saying that, well, I wouldn't say the CFO never said this, but a staff member stated that we didn't have adequate cash flow. Very large city, holding a check for eleven thousand dollars. That's not a good look. So I just want to make sure that we're staying up to date with the uh reclassification of expenses and then we're submitting billing to the county and every other entity on a timely basis in order to have the cash flow uh in the best possible uh in that, you know, best possible uh situation. Uh
Yes, it and just a note on that, we have been working with the county and the county's consultants on this and we are, um, you know, we've kind of had to wait for them on some of this, um, about the classification, uh, for some of the payroll issues. And, um, we are, we are working our way through it.
Well, I'm glad I'm glad we have this discussion. Um, we need to have a conversation when we're paying them. They need to be, they need to stay in happy.
No, I'm sorry. I don't mean our consultants. I mean, there was a conversation and I explained this a little bit in finance committee, that there was, we worked, actually, we were the first town to work with the county's consultants on submitting all of our benefits information along with our payroll. It was really too complicated. They were trying to streamline the process. We've been waiting for them to finalize how they were going to streamline, and then we'll be ready to submit. On our end, all of that information has been classified or coded properly, and that we're ready to make those submissions.
So so is it safe to say, hold on, Councilman Velez, is it safe to say that March, by looking at the grants that we have stood up in, to give us an idea of, let's say, as of, let's say, July thirtieth, this is all the expenses that we have incurred as of July thirtieth? I don't know how far back she's gonna go, but let's let her work on it. She'll give us an idea later where we at. Uh Councilman Velez?
Yeah, Council President, um I think the the request uh that I want to make it will be uh it will be fair to ask to the Chair Council President that this council uh meets again as a board of health, okay? And uh you could designate Councilman Jackson with the agenda, submit the agenda for discussion before the Board of Health meeting come forward, and then we could meet again and bring those topic forward, where we at, where we what we have accomplished since the pandemic started, because I know the last time we meet met, it was on the middle of March, in the middle of the pandemic. So it will be requesting a another meeting as the board of health that we are uh to meet and have the agenda, and they get ready for answer.
Thank
Uh and then we could have a lengthy conversation on it because it will be important. Councilman Jackson stated, we want to know where we at. We want to know how much we have spent and everything is related to COVID nineteen and is related attached to the board of health. It will be helpful to have another meeting urging with the board of health uh uh and and everybody on board for this discussion.
That's a good idea. And all the council requests that I've written down, uh this is another another one. So we have like three requests here. Uh can we continue, please? This one, um can we put this one on consent?
Yes, number twenty one, Mister President, twenty one, consent.
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Before we move on, because I don't want to stare till two AM, number twenty six is related to COVID. I don't know why it's on the administration. It did not come to committee and to save us some valuable time and questions, it needs to be thrown back to committee. It has not been discussed. It is incomplete. I spoke to the director. I don't know why the administration put it forward. If you may, please remove it to save us another hour about COVID. Thank you.
So, Madam uh Clerk, will you pull number twenty six?
I read twenty six is being oh taken removed. I I do have.
Uh, Council President, before
So for the for the public, Councilman, you have to put up that committee and this resolution will not go to that committee. That's why we're no taking his recommendation and he's pulling. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. I I know, Council President, just just to give you a a heads up, I think
Velez, do you do you at least have to floor please?
Yes, I did.
But I did an analogy, please. Go ahead.
Council President, I believe the administration came towards us announcing that St. Joseph was going to be also part of the COVID nineteen testing site. So this that that
There's a uh Councilman, there is a process of counseling that we follow, um and you didn't go through committing. There there's a process. The reason might be for I'm sure they have a a good reason, but it needs to go through committee. So
Yeah, I Uh, Councilman Velez, read the resolution. St. Joseph does not get any of the money. So believe me, there's a lot of questions that need to be asked if you read the resolution. Yep.
Thank you. All right. Uh let's continue.
Mr. President, continue, sir.
Well, council members, twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, all of those, all of those are, you know, appeals that were, we just approving them, the settlement. Uh those are gonna go into non-consent in case any council members don't, you know, not agree with.
We in twenty two, twenty three, and twenty four, non-consent?
Alright.
Twenty two, twenty three, twenty four.
Councilman uh uh Men?
I don't have a a concern with twenty two, twenty three, twenty four because they went through the process um through the uh count the sheriff's department to do their disbursement. So I really don't have an issue with these items. I just have a a question. On item twenty two, when it came to the resolution and the scanning of documents, on the last maybe three or four pages, some of the dollar amounts and the um calculations are um they're they're blank. You can't really see what it says, but we want to make sure. The other items is fine. It's just that one is
Actually, no, I I I would I would I have a question about twenty four to Marshall. So so March, in finance, we've been talking for now almost a year and a half regarding an outstanding lien that the Brownstone uh had for forever, almost for four hundred thousand dollars. What are we doing here? I know we're doing uh, they want this appeal. What have we done with the four hundred thousand dollars that we've been questioning forever?
So as far as I know, the um the lien that was attached to the brownstone property, building itself, um is is still is still on the books. We have not foreclosed upon it. I believe it was going to be included in the foreclosed property, the list for in rent foreclosure proceedings.
So so how are we doing a refund? I know they're not related. How are we doing a refund of seventy nine thousand dollars? But they still have, according to our book, and I've been asking questions for a past year and a half, they still have a lien of about four hundred thousand dollars. How is that possible?
Separate properties, lots and lots.
It is a separate property. It's not the same one? I thought it was a asset. Now, can we look into that?
Uh, I didn't believe. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll check the property. Hold on one second. Let me check.
Because the the question we often had in in finance was, how is it that if the law says you have to take care of your any outstanding obligations when it comes to taxes, how is it that they were able to pay your current taxes throughout the years when they had a a a lien of about four hundred thousand dollars? And we can never get an answer. Straight answer. So We 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 need to discuss number twenty four further to be honest. Um for for instance,
Yeah, this may be um this may be the main building.
The lien
This this particular lot, seven oh one lot two.
So is the same is the same property?
I believe it is. I'm I'm going to check on uh Google Maps now.
Can can we pause this for a minute? And this
Wait, can and I'll get a some and if Marge and I can get together, we'll figure out and give you some further detail.
So we're gonna pull this. We might as well. I got to take my
Ready. Is that twenty four?
Yes, number twenty four, we're gonna pull. We need to look into it a little more.
Okay. I have.
But nothing against this particular property, but we 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 often have discussions like this in finance and a year and a half later, we still, you know, haven't addressed that incident. So I need to know what we're at. All right, let's continue.
Okay, number twenty two and twenty three, non-consent. I have. Uh we're moving on to twenty six and four. Then we continue with twenty seven, and these are under administration.
Uh
Is it number twenty seven, if authorized is um contracted certain upstate contract vendors of various departments and dividends.
Yeah, I was gonna I was gonna ask the council, if we could just put all this three percent, what about four, the four in percent?
Twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, and thirty?
Yes, this are contracts that are mostly state contracts that go up.
Twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, thirty.
Council President?
Yes.
I don't mind it being the consent. I spoke to Marge earlier today just to make sure that this is uh for item twenty nine is a GRAC um grant that they're doing, which I think is great, the ten thousand dollar grant, which is with a fifty percent match of five thousand of half and cash and half in kind. I just wanted to make sure if it was needed to have a certification of fund. So Marge is fully aware. I'm I'm fine with it and it's not as fine, but if we if we don't, then it's fine as well.
B A?
Yes, just one note on this uh Councilwoman. Um it's actually, even though it says um cash and in kind, they actually can both be in kind. The staff time of city employees will count as the cash match and then the volunteer time um of the members of PACs would would count as the in kind match. So we actually don't need to put up any uh funds for that one.
So Madam B A, the 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 difference between this, I've been working with grants now for almost fifteen years. Anytime grant one, if their grant that they given us is ten thousand and they ask for a cash match of five, the grant ends up being fifteen. But the question, hold on a minute, you're stating that if you're gonna use stolen salaries that you already gained out of, let's say, the city's budget, that's actually comes into that in kind match, I think.
We, Council President, we clarified this with the organization who is providing it. Um it's the difference is called a quantifiable staff time. That does count as the cash match. Um again, this is through the Passaic County Cultural and Heritage Council, their Passaic County Community College uh room. So this is something that they they have clarified that for us.
From the college?
Correct.
All right. Uh listen, I don't want to argue with that. That's just, you know, whatever you guys do. But I'm just making you aware that this is the first time in fifteen years and I oversee all the grants to the county, which have maybe four times or three times the amount of grants the city has. And every talk about a cash match, it is what it is. And Marge is right there. Marge has been doing it for thirty years. Uh we we don't have to get into this right now.
I know, and Council President, this was my career as well before the city. It was fundraising and grants. So I do know that sometimes there's distinction, but you always can check and make sure that what you want to propose is, you know, allowable.
And my only concern is not to be right or wrong, is because when we have to do the chapter one fifty nine with the state, I just want to make sure that they don't require that we put in the math. And we just want to make sure that we have it in our budget. That's that's the point. We want to let let the public uh know and feel that is not
Absolutely. Yep.
decided to prove right or wrong. It's just to make sure that works.
No, absolutely. And and actually, anytime we have to have a cash match, we actually have to have a waiver signed by DCA as well. So this is something that we're very alert to so that we follow the the proper procedures there, too.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Council President. Just for a point of clarity, I want to bring you to the table amongst the full council. And I I'm pleased that you raised this concern, Council President, because I have to be honest with you. My my measure of of uh of faith and trust within this administration on being correct on items like this has is is nonexistent. Our the the general public is paying astronomical fees based on the sewer assessment that was poorly calculated. We we are paying tremendous, we we got sued by the uh the the uh the union for the police department because we were in we were assured that this is what would be and asked by the state and we wasn't gonna have any ramifications on it. And clearly, under thirty million dollar upcoming expenditure that the public is gonna have to pay for, we're still we're paying a tab on that. And I want to bring into everyone's attention, including the public, because I sat through a meeting this afternoon where the CFO, the president, were making sure that the city is fiscally uh uh being responsible, was completely disrespected by the DA. A document that requires her signature by by law was completely undermined it and heard someone else was had signed signed the document in her foot in in place. And when she raised concern of this signature being on this document, she was scolded as if she was a child. So, Council President, I would urge that we lean forward with all levels of precaution and we utilize the utmost scrutiny when it comes to approving items such as this, that the that the residents are gonna ultimately wind up paying uh down the line. There's a number of different items that we've that the residents are gonna have to pay for, including the fact, let me not forget to remind everyone that when the measure first came forward for the stadium project, we were insured that there was not going to be a pilot requested. And then we're now we're being told that without the pilot, the project can't happen. So there's so many items that the public has been misled on. And I want to urge you to to stand in in solidarity as a council to holding the administration accountable so that we don't have residents uh having to um take on these expenditures because of poor job being done, and particularly by the the cabinet members of this administration.
Thank you. Uh Councilman Velez, you have your hands up. If you want to speak, and Madam B A, you can speak.
Uh Mr. President, can I um Mr. President, can I, um, just clarify something here, please, sir?
Yes, uh.
Okay, Councilwoman Min, you had a question in number 30, correct? About the certification.
29?
Oh, not true.
Yeah, it was item 29.
29, okay, right, that's, okay, thank you, I thought you said 30.
Councilwoman Velez?
Okay, we did get the, the certification of fund today for number 30.
Yeah, we have that one, but 29.
You have, okay, 29, okay, thank you.
Um, yeah, my question is, uh, go align with, uh, the question of the cash. Uh, even though they, they certified the fund, who's giving the cash? If it's the city, if it's Juan Patterson, if who has it? Who's giving the cash to make sure that it's, the cash comes from a legit source? We don't want, you know, I, 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 you know, I'm a little bit confused here. Somebody give me a highlight. If you say that the city Patterson had to have provided 2,500 cash match, where that cash is coming? If our petty cash is managed different ways?
So, so Councilman, the BA, BA already stated that although it says cash match, they're allowing her to use employee salaries that are already on the books as part of the match, because they will be working on the grant. So for example, well, I don't have to be, I don't have to explain it, I already, I'll tell you everything. Your prime, your grant.
Uh, you ready to explain it?
No, no, I, I didn't want to undermine, or I didn't want to state that you, you didn't understand what I said. What I basically said is, right now you already have employees in the book. This grant is brand new. The grant is allowing the administration to use some of the salaries of those employees that are already, you know, incurring in the city to offset, you know, some of the, the expense from the grant. So we're gonna use it as a match, basically. They're gonna be working for the grant fund, just people who live. Councilwoman Min, hold on a minute, because Madam BA has been, uh, answering to you, uh, with, 10 years.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, I, I just wanted to clarify that point again, that, yes, that the staff time does count. It's not actual cash, but that counts as the cash match, that the city was putting out cash to pay these employees who are supporting this grant. Um, and I, Council President, I'd just like to put on the record that, um, that, that at no point in time did the city or myself ever force anybody to do something or do anything illegal. I am, uh, tired of Councilman Jackson putting statements out that are factually inaccurate. And so all the, what we talked about today in our personnel committee meeting was about a form, an approval form from DCA, which was approved by DCA. If there was anything wrong with it, it would not have been approved.
Point, point order, Council President. The reason I want to put this point order.
Uh, Council President, I have my.
Point order, point order. Councilwoman Velez? Uh, Councilwoman Min?
Um, this, um, Madam BA, I know that it's not in the resolution, because that's why we have to get the clarity. But in the future, can we have, if that's going to be an explanation, if not just for this, for others, then we won't have to go through that type of dialogue. Maybe a footnote or something to say that we will be using hours or time or salary, whatever it is, to compensate. So maybe a footnote, or maybe, uh, parentheses to say what that is, that we won't have to question.
So, so Ca- Councilwoman, I understand your request, but remember, that's why, that's why we, we discuss items like this in, in public, I mean, in, in committee. And the minute you put something like this in the resolution, it limits the administration from doing any budget amendments or anything like that with the grant. Let's say, for example, if this, this grantor tells the administration, "Look, we have additional funding that has come up. Uh, we need you guys to, you know, apply for more, or we're gonna give you more for you guys to spend." Now you have all these limitations, so I think it, it was suffice to have those discussions in, in committee, not to undermine your company, we just want more transparency. I understand. But I just wanna, don't, don't wanna have, put that limitation on, on all the grants. Because they have.
Yeah, not, yeah, not, not for limitations, but even if it's a document that's attached, we're questioning, you know, just for clarity's sake. I mean, I'm not sure if anyone else would have, would have.
I, I don't have a problem providing a, um, certification of funds that reveals what, how we're using the in-kind.
That was good enough.
Council President? Council President?
Councilwoman Velez?
The reason I, I called the point order, uh, it lent discussion today at the committee of personnel. Uh, we asked Councilman Jackson, Councilman Jackson, you, you step out of the meeting after, after I make a positive, I say that this, that meeting was gonna stay confidential into all the facts, uh, um, it's come aboard and it's getting investigated. Uh, let's refrain ourselves to bring it into this platform, uh, to not, uh, fall into no legality, uh, uh, on, on, on the matter, so. Um, I just wanna keep it like that, though.
Councilwoman Velez, uh, I'm not, you know, I don't have to say if he was proper enough, but Councilman Jackson didn't state any specifics. Uh, and I'm sure, you know, Corporation of Council and myself, uh, we would have stepped in and maybe advised, you know, the councilmen. Uh, whatever he stated, he just stated any specifics, so.
Well, this is Madam, Madam BA that wanted to state it, so that's why I want to make it clear that this is go to everyone that was in the meeting, that I said it was, you know.
Council. The more, the more we, you're encouraging to continue the discussion, but you're like, so, uh, can we continue with the agenda, please, uh?
Yeah, yes, Mr. President. Um, Mr. President, if I may, um, Councilwoman Min, item number 22, with the attachment that you were unable to read, Joan just emailed that attachment to you. We have a clearer copy here. Hopefully that will.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President, we continue with 31 for City Clerk. Um, there's a raffle and that could be consent?
Yes, uh, can we put 32 through 35, if no council members have a question?
32 through, okay. 32 through 34?
35.
35 is a resolution for Hispanic Heritage Month. Did you want that to be on consent?
Uh, if no one has any objections, we can just, Councilwoman Cotton?
And you want me to open? Council, I just wanna know what happened with 27 through 30? They all on consent?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't hear.
Yes, ma'am.
Council President?
32 through 35?
Oh, but thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Velez?
Uh, you said about, uh, 35?
Yes.
Uh, this is only, only to commemorate this month, and do we have any program, uh, schedule for it, knowing that we are COVID-19?
No, we don't.
You don't? Alright. Uh, because in the past, our council presidents have done this in conjunction with a committee, uh, to celebrate Heritage Month. I don't know if he was, he plans to do that.
This is a difficult time, Councilman, and I just don't see myself holding this meeting, uh, to, uh, to zoom, and then having, you know, an event with council members.
No, we, we're going, we, we're not going to have an event at council chambers. We go honor people for that.
And there's, uh, the, the, we have other meetings that are going to be played. If you wanna, you know, meet councilmen, feel free. Councilman David. I took the computer already off. So you couldn't mute yourself?
Um, just, Council President, just quickly, um, I know that, um, Madam Clerk mentioned 22. Um, 22. Fabian Alexandria LLC. Did you put that, what did you do with that? Did you put that?
No, all those items are, uh, non-consent.
Okay, okay.
Alright. Um, so, we're at, we're doing 36?
Uh. Council President?
Councilwoman Cotton, I mean, Councilwoman Min.
I was just saying, number 70, um, 76 is a constable as well.
I don't know why we put, um.
Yeah, yeah.
It came on very late, so that's, it was added last on the agenda?
But I don't know if we can add that to consent, just to group it up, and we need to change it.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, you can change it later.
So we can put that in consent, Mr. President, if it's a consensual point?
Let's group it with the other ones for a regular meeting.
Yes, so on consent, that's Councilwoman Cotton.
Yes, I have, thank you.
Thank you, Lou Velez.
Yes, if you go on consent.
And Madam Clerk, 36?
36, Mr. President, this is Economic Development, 36 through 39. And 36 is authorized in the city to submit application to NJDEP for grant funds from the hazardous destroyed fight mediation. And to accept grant funds for, and this is for 63-9. Known as Clinton Street Park.
Yes. Council President? This can, hold on, consent, this is a part of the project for the Habitat for Humanity, who's doing, uh, the revitalization of Clinton Street Park. Uh, and this is to get the, uh, soil tested. Can you do consent?
For number 36?
Well, we could act, well, 36 is for, uh, sole testing consent. 37 is a grant, uh, where they're doing a study for Paseo County Cultural Heritage Funds. 38 is another grant to identify African-American history in Patterson.
You're on the law, Councilwoman.
And then 39 is for the ATP. It's another one that is a grant as well. Um, I asked the clerk's office, because there is a, um, there is a $16,700, $16,700 match, which is a part of a previous bond that we've already approved by this council due 24, 2008. Um, so all of those items, um, Council President, if they can go on consent, our council, uh, our committee met, um, and we have all the items, everything is attached, to make sure that there will be no additional concerns for any of the items.
Councilwoman Jackson and Councilwoman Velez, I don't know if you, I forgot to lower the, the hand. Do you want to speak on this matter? Councilwoman Jackson?
Council President, I was trying to get your attention while you were on the city council items. I, I can wait until after you adjust these items with, um, the council.
Suggestions on this item?
The one that she says 36 through 39 on, right?
Yes, that's what you said, yes.
Okay, no, I don't have nothing. She did a good job.
Let's put those on consent, and then.
I have, thank you.
And I have two more for Economic Development, Council President.
Where are they?
Uh, 74 and 75. Um, and previous, uh, back in 2019, this is for Argus, um, Argus Ellison Associates. It is for the, uh, grandparents helping grandchildren. This is a project that is coming forward. We previously approved in 2019 for 94 units, where, um, amending it, they're going down to 74 units. Um, so, um, can we do 74 consent, but 75, can we do that regularly?
Can, can, uh, questions?
Any, any, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Um, so this went to, to, um.
The committee.
What, and that committee was the Committee of Development, right?
But you, you, you were not, you didn't come to the meeting. You were absent.
So how, how, how this meeting is, is getting done without invitations?
Well, Council, um, I'm sure, um, everyone on the committee can vouch. The invitation is sent out, it sends out via email, um, letterhead, as well as a text message. None of the three you responded to. We met for an hour and a half. We had full discussion on all of our items, and I have minutes that were taken.
I was.
Well, well, let me, let me, let me, um.
Hi, Councilwoman Velez. Uh, what time was this meeting, uh, Councilwoman?
It was at 12 o'clock.
Oh.
Who, who are the members, who are the members at that meeting?
Uh, yourself, uh, and myself, and Council, Council President. And now newly, um, appointed to the committee is now Councilman Chalde.
Alright, uh, do you have any chance, uh, uh, to speak to this Angus Ellison Associate, um, um, Madam Chair? Have you had a conversation with them?
Why would I need to speak to them?
Because you, you, you elaborate, you elaborated so, uh, persisted how many units and isn't that, you know?
Well, Council.
And I, I, I'm trying to figure out where they say, where they say that. Hold on, Council, Council.
When you give documents, Councilwoman Velez, you will see that yourself. I don't need.
Pass, pass.
Developers, when, when you have the documents that were sent to, oh, my.
Madam, 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 madam Chair, please, why everybody has to be in the defensive with, I just asking some questions?
Because you're being antagonistic.
Yes.
You're not asking, you're being antagonistic. Your question.
Oh, so, so, so I was not in the meeting.
Oh, please, it, and I'm, Councilwoman.
See, that's disrespectful. That is really disrespectful.
Report you just gave, uh, you do your homework, you ask all the questions that needed to be asked, you review all information. You should not be questioned because you do your homework on this item.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
So, continue please with, with this, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, Council President. So I just want to ma, add a, a measure to the, uh, just for public, uh, for the public consumption. I wanted to make, let it be clearly known that this project that is, um, that is completely 100% Patterson Native, uh, residents, so Native They're also providing a lifelong, um, um, concession to the grandparents who've been rendering a great deal of, of support to our community, and particularly the most in, the most impacted community, the African-American community. And I want to talk about how, you know, even one of the individuals, well, uh, you know, played in the state, the, the only state championship football team in the city of Patterson. And the reason behind their reduction from 90 to 74, which is the detriment, in my opinion, is because the city, this, this administration is neglecting to provide the additional support, um, the, the, there's the least amount supported through the, uh, the, uh, the, the tax credit, the IRG tax, tax credits, and because of that, the, uh, the community is going to have to, you know, settle for a, a bit less. When you look at the, the other projects that have been in recipients of $40 million, $30 million, $50 million in excess, this, uh, this group is, is, is receiving a considerable amount less. And for a small portion of only $6 million that they're short, they have to now come before this council and request a reduction. And in my opinion, it's a travesty. And once again, the African-American community gets shorted in Patterson. And, you know, when these individuals who are lifelong Patterson residents, coming back to make sure that they, they provide, do their part to provide opportunities for the entire community, because it's not a segregated population that they're providing services for, but they're providing this opportunity for the grandparents, and they are not being fully supported by this administration, which is yet once again a disappointment. So, Council President, I hope that, in urge that you give the BA an opportunity to try again to dispel the facts that I'm bringing to the table, that, uh, once again, because this project again is being shorted $6 million, so they have to put forward this request in order to make the, uh, the deadline, and I'm gonna bring forward a prediction. They're gonna, this is gonna be the only project with the IRG credits that, that, that meet, that reaches finalization.
Alright, fully noted. So, so, could we put this under consent? That way, in case any council members have any questions on this item, let's just put it on non-consent.
Right.
Well, you could put it on consent. It was good.
And for 75, be regular. 74 is just, um, um, changing the, uh, 94 unit, 94 to 74. So 74 can it be consent, and 75 be regular?
I disagree, Council President. I think both of them are not consent.
So there you go. So, no consent for both.
Good.
Alright, let's continue. So we do a number, uh, let's get 40, let's get, let's go straight to 43.
43.
43, that's prior.
Let me see if I could participate in this meeting.
For the, is a word of contract for packet talk, um, and these are terminal temperature cameras, this accessory installation, and meant for the prior department.
If, if my colleagues don't have an issue, can we put 43 through 47 in consent?
For the 3.
Yeah, so good. You could do it, you could do that.
79.
Yes, you could do that.
And consent, okay, I got it in spread.
Uh, Madam.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Council President.
So, the, um, Carol, the Human Services, uh, Councilwoman.
Yeah, Council President, you're, you're honorable. I would say consent for 48, 49, and 50.
6, right, yep.
Yeah, the red, we should all speak for themselves. If they have read them, you'll see the grants that we, we keep for many years.
Yes.
Thank you.
What, what did Council President?
48, 49, and 50, consent?
Council President?
Councilwoman Velez?
You're on the ball. I wish my committee will be treated the same when I say that everything was discussed in committee to move forward the items. Thank you. You're on the ball, you're on the ball. You're on the ball, Councilman.
It's a grant, uh, it's like, received on a unit base.
You're on the ball. You're on the ball.
It's, it's a raw, raw, raw.
Oh, whatever you say. I got a Puerto Rican accent, Councilman Adeluzi. The one that you came through. Oh, whatever you say. I got a Puerto Rican accent, Councilman Adeluzi. The one that you came through, Puerto Rico.
Let's leave it at that. Councilwoman, go.
I just wanted to know, uh is forty to forty two, is that consent? Uh forty, forty one, forty two, are those, those all three are consent?
No, 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 no.
And do those guys?
Oh, that's all. Uh what about thirty six through thirty nine? Are they consent?
Those are consent.
Okay, there we go.
I'm sorry, I was just ahead of myself. Thank you.
All right, low, um low department.
You put no.
So Mr. Privilege, forty fifty one through fifty seven, so low, these are extension, uh contract extension.
What's that, Sam? Did you mean, did you?
For fair, all, all of them present?
Yes.
Fifty one, fifty two, fifty three, fifty four, fifty five.
Uh question.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Uh Madam, um if you leave the chair to uh, where is uh our corporate counsel?
Right here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Corporate counsel, any, uh uh co- corporate counsel, sorry, before they they correct me that I'm missing your, your. Have any of this um, uh law firms on new, on new contracts or no?
No, so these are just extensions of our current contracts because for new funds will be going out to bid at the end of this year for January. So it's just extensions of, of all of our existing firms. I do want to note though that our outside council budget has been significantly reduced. We are bringing a lot of the outside council work back in-house. So you will see less firms in January once we fully restructure my department.
All right, thank you, Madam.
Right. Will we do, can we put the fifty eight to sixty two? We don't have a decision on those. Can we put them on consent?
No.
Before we move, Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Before we move forward, item fifty one through fifty seven, I made a request in the past and I'm gonna put it back on record again. I think anything that we do that builds a contract or a bidding, the bidding process, we should put in place a performance evaluation system. So we can um present my um index measurements in place to identify if they're on path. That way it makes it easier for us to evaluate how successful and effective they have been throughout the course of the year.
So, so, so Councilwoman, when it comes to professional contract reviews, the administration is supposed to have a team, uh a committee set up to evaluate contracts, to to evaluate requests for proposals. Then they submit their recommendations to us. I don't think we could start evaluating, and I don't want to get into that also, of evaluating any vendors. I don't think legally we could do that.
Well, it's not for us to do. The, that's something the administration should be doing. And if there is a process with the committee on none of these items, there, there are no comments regarding that.
They don't do it with committee. They, they're supposed to have their own uh evaluation team, just like you do with some other grant.
That's why I'm asking, because attached to none of these items, that information is attached. There's no information regarding being done by that team.
And.
So I'm just putting it on record again. Is it something they should be doing and is not being done? Then we make, we need to um take full note of that because we do ourselves um a disservice when we don't allow that to be a part of this process.
No, I'm sure they, they should have uh evaluation, uh she told us about, that's.
Well, well, Council President, particularly with these contracts, these are contract extensions. So we did not go back out to bid again because of the shortened contract year. We did not want, I didn't feel it was appropriate for me to issue contracts in July. That usually would go year and then unfortunately we'd be stuck with some folks in a new fiscal year who we may or may not want. So we are going to do a full eva- full evaluation process. We probably go out to bid somewhere in November, so we can have the council um with our recommendations in, in either late December, early January. That way we're gonna do a full evaluation again because we will be decreasing the amount of firms. We're gonna do a full-on evaluation of every firm. We're gonna do some cost analysis as well and determine what has been effective for the city and what has not.
Can I ask you a question though? Are you guys planning to add staff to your, to your department?
So we are, we, we will be adding two additional attorneys that are already in the budget. I, I already need to replace one attorney who um, Judge Stampaugh, because obviously he came out of my department. So we need to replace Judge Stampaugh and we're gonna be replacing another attorney as well. So those two additions will allow us to bring stuff, bring the most of the outside council work in-house.
The, the reason I bring this up is because we often approve contracts with amount not to speed, uh in years that we don't have that many cases. Then we will, we don't have to spend the money. But once you put them in your path, even if we don't have the work, you say, and I'm not saying that that's gonna happen, but I hope you're taking that into account and evaluating if that truly was most beneficial to the city. Uh.
Well, I'm actually not increasing the staff at all. I'm reallocating work. So we're not changing the configuration, it's just changing who does what.
Councilwoman Davila and Councilman Jackson and Councilwoman.
So, uh Council President and to all the council members, uh as uh Councilwoman Velez stated earlier, we had a Interesting meeting. And you know, we were addressing, we were going to continue to address that question you just asked about, you know, what, what changes are coming? You know, what increases are coming, what waivers are coming. So we had a meeting with the B A, with our C F O, with Corporation Counsel, uh the uh acting director, uh Deborah Hannibal, and that was it. Oh, and uh Kathy Long, Assistant B A Jennifer, all right. And so I'll be giving you a report, um specifically to you, being that, you know, there's some personnel, um um, I would say some sensitive things that I don't think should be put out in public, but I do want to make you and the council aware. Um I think it's important that we are aware of when, you know, the, the plan to hire new people or make changes or increases that, you know, we are aware.
All right, thank you very much. Councilman Jackson and then Councilwoman.
Thank you, Council President. So, um I'm looking forward to that report, this meeting gonna be provided by a special counsel, I would have to say, who would be at first. Um I'm definitely going to um follow the lead with Councilmen and Councilwomen because, you know, we were promised uh performance evaluations across the board. We have yet to receive any performance evaluations. We've done, we've, we've gotten, we haven't even gotten requests. There have just been increases that have been given. So you have, you know, within the, the administration itself, a number of different uh uh pay increases that have been issued without any performance evaluation. I mean, overall, my, I mean, I'm not, I'll refrain from giving my grade, but the public's perception is, you know, it is major failure. So when we bring in on third-party vendors, and I'll just speak, you know, be very clear and be blunt about what I'm talking about, for example, the garbage uh companies. Clearly failing to provide the services that we're paying for and we yet receive um a, a performance evaluation across the board. So I think that, you know, at the council at some point in time, maybe under your leadership, Councilman, Council President, you can see this happen, where there's a level of accountability. If there is no performance evaluation provided, then we should not be continuously rendering the support, the economic support that this administration needs to continue to move forward. And, you know, quite frankly, you know, there's a, a number of different areas that have been deficient, that have been just clearly fa- clear failures and no performance uh evaluation. And um so I was looking at the least of those vendors that have been asked uh within the law department because uh this is a service that the public deserves and shouldn't be getting provided across the board.
So, so thank you. But Councilwoman, you, uh, many of you are in chair of committees. Any of these contracts that are coming to you, the, this guy, you can say to, uh, to your point, Councilwoman Jackson, consent. As for whatever information we need to uh ask regarding the process, let us do the, you know, the full evaluation. That's, that's all I'm saying. Now put in blame on anyone. I'm not saying it, don't let them get to this, to this point of really get the documentation that you requested.
Not the chair.
No, no, just saying, whoever the chair of, any committee. Um and if you're a member, you could demand it from the chair and then let us know in the public, just like you're doing today. Let us know. And then the, the public will know who's, you know, supportive of wrongdoing or not. But that's, that's, thank you. Um, I think, Councilwoman Velez.
Yeah, um, thank you, um, Mr. Chair, President. Um I, I just want to clarify something if I misunderstood what you were saying.
Councilwoman Velez, can I interrupt one second, please?
Oh, every time, that's okay.
Mr. President, if I may, I think we're having a bit of problems with audio when the public not hearing us.
It's back on, Madam clerk.
It's back on? Okay, all right. Phones are ringing off in the clerk's office.
Wait, that just happened now? How, how long ago did this happen?
Uh maybe a couple seconds. I, I am thinking.
It was very quick, it was quick.
It was very quick, but I just wanted to make sure we were back on ear before we continue with Congress.
Slammy covers, we can start.
But thank you, I thank you, Councilwoman.
No, but thank you.
I got a, I got a text, Council President, that says just about the whole meeting, you couldn't hear anything. They're talking down, I can't hear absolutely nothing, and there's some type of static. So I don't know if it's corrected or not, but someone just texted me and said they cannot hear.
Okay, Ryan is here and he's working on the, the, the.
Okay, Councilwoman Velez, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank, thank you. I leave, they didn't saw, they didn't hear me, I'm interrupting a lot, but that's okay. Um, um, Madam, Madam, um, Madam Legal. She, is she serious?
I'm legal.
Yeah, you stated that um one of the personnel uh was transferred from Judge, Judge uh Stampaugh. But I believe, I believe Judge Stampaugh Vincent was a prosecutor and he was not in attorney uh capacity. Um, um, and you say you could hire more attorney because uh Judge Stampaugh was moved from your office as an attorney or as a, as a prosecutor?
So Judge Stampaugh wasn't, was a prosecutor. However, when Judge Stampaugh became a judge, I had to shift one of the attorneys into the prosecutorial role because we need, because of the busyness of the court, we need more than two prosecutors.
Who, who is he, who is he?
What's the, what's on the attorney's there?
And who is the, the person that you shift to be a prosecutor?
I, I can give you a report offline. I don't like to put prosecutor's information out if I can avoid that.
Okay, yeah, correct. But it's not a conflict, right?
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Um.
I think we're at sixty eight through sixty two, Mr. President?
Uh, correct.
Um, I can I just make a statement here? At the last meeting, we had all these recombining one resolution and they come to add that they be listed separately. So we have each individual um appointment, reappointment we stayed on the agenda.
Yeah, Council President?
So, yeah, I was suggesting we put those on the, uh, not the staff. Councilwoman.
Yeah, Ca- Council President, the reason, and, and I don't have no problem with the appointment, uh but the reason I just asked him to put it separate because some, some judge party want to hold this as a memo, memory, you know, and and the name is individual and the resolution, they could put in a frame or whatever. So it's good. Thank you.
All right.
On fifty eight through sixty two, I put those on regular?
No, consent.
No, no consent.
No, Mr. President.
No?
No.
Oh, that consent?
Okay. We're gonna vote on each one of the individuals.
Individuals, yeah.
Okay, all right, okay.
Um, very, very. Mr. President, we're adding on, we're going on to sixty six for public works.
All right.
Seventy three, sixty six through seventy three.
What is the number?
Sixty six through seventy three for the Department of Public Works.
Uh, Council President?
Yes, uh.
Um, is number sixty three two, you say?
Sixty six.
Six, sixty, sixty, forty.
I know we already did pause the session.
Seventy three.
Yeah. Council Pres- Council President, the only one, the only one, the only one out of this bunch of uh resolution D P W, I want to put only uh the one on, on regular is sixty se- um sixty seven because uh I, I will recuse myself out of it. You cannot put it in consent. And um, and the remaining could go, if there's no, no questions out of the council, they could go all on consent.
Actually, I, I have a question.
I agree with Councilwoman Velez's consent.
I just have a question. Number seventy three.
Seventy three?
Yeah.
Okay, what's the question?
Uh. Are we, uh?
Why are we paying the maintenance for the vehicles, truck repair?
Uh, this is, this is, they're also, all right?
Actually, uh Director could explain it because uh there was a um, a switch, there was a cancel and there was a, and before they go over, they needed to uh make this statement. But Director is here, he could elaborate a little bit more.
Council President, if I may?
Go ahead.
Uh seventy three is the ratification of contract or the drive and payment for truck repairs and maintenance for public works. Um, when this happened, we uh, we sat down with Harry Sabala, the purchasing agent, the instructor, um, where we have a contract for, um, our then current vendor, um, had ran out and we were fixing uh multiple vehicles that we couldn't do in-house, diesel trucks, um bigger truck that we couldn't do. Um, the total vendor, uh we used it, uh we didn't go over the, the, the forty grand and, but.
Well, so ju- just so you know. I'm gonna ask the administration, and I've asked it before, I need the purchasing agent here, just like a lot of the department heads are here, I need the purchasing agent here because I just don't see how a purchasing agent is tell a director, so you suspended, we got a contract. I just don't see that. That is not legal at all.
Well, that's, that's what happened to, um, Council President.
So, the thing is, we, listen, it already happened. We had this discussion in the past many times. Technically, this is a confirming order. We're using services with a vendor that was not approved by the council. We need to plan ahead. We need to have basically a calendar of when the contracts are up and we need three months in advance to look into what we're gonna do. We cannot we have trucks broken down. You know, it's unacceptable. Um, I'm.
Uh, Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Uh, uh, I guess you, I guess you got a crystal ball because um that's what I stated in the meeting of, of my committee. I will not accept anything that happened under my chair to happen the way it was in the before. Director told notes on it. Councilwoman, um, Ruby Kind was present covering meeting two because we didn't have enough people in the meeting, but uh, and Councilman Jackson was present. So um, that's one of the things that uh we need to catch up since uh I became the chair on it. Uh making sure that this department works under the right curfew of the council and also the, the curfew of the law.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Council President. If I'm not mistaken, Council President, and if I remember clearly from committee meeting, it wasn't a matter of the contract expiring. It was a matter of the vendor uh resigning. The vendor, there, there was a change in vendor, it was a change in vendor because the vendor that were, that they were using pulled out of the contract midway. So i- in order to get the apparatus repaired, they, they made an emergency. And I could be wrong, um, if this is not the same item, but Director.
Yeah, it is.
If I'm wrong, it's.
That's, that's a different item. Um, Councilman, this is the one that, uh, the contract had ended in Human Services.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Excuse me, Council President.
No, no, thank, thank you, Councilman. Uh, yeah, so, so, listen, I don't need to pull, I don't need to have a crystal ball. This is something that has happened for, for a while now, since I've been on the council. Happens from time to time. We just need better planning. Now here kicking the director, all I'm asking is, you know, use the staff. We just need better planning. Now here kicking the director, all I'm asking is, you know, using staff to, you know, sign a staff to keep track of all these contracts and for things like this not to happen because if the order is one, they could write us up. This is actually a confirming order, it's actually in the first line of the resolution. A second line, it says municipal council approval was not obtained prior to receiving the aforementioned service. It's right there, second line of the resolution. We have to pay, we incur the expense, I believe this should go, out of all the items there, this should go in the non-consent.
Council President? Council President?
Yes?
We discussed sixty-six yesterday, are you pulling that for next meeting or are we going to put that out of consent?
Actually, that wasn't supposed to be here because we're...
Correct.
Some information, so we got to pull sixty-six. Thank you, Director, for reminding me.
Sixty-six?
Sixty-six.
Yeah, we're supposed to have a discussion with the whole council.
The Director actually requested to have the company present the SOS plan, but we have seventy-six items, we'll throw them, leave it for the next meeting. So we're going to pull sixty-six, the rest on consent, except seventy-three, seventy-three non-consent. Councilman Adelaziz?
Sixty-seven, sixty-seven, sixty-seven has to be out of consent.
Yes, Councilman Velez has requested that sixty-six be on non-consent.
So sixty-seven and seventy-three.
And seventy-three, those two are non, okay, and the other others, sixty-six?
RFP, so I could do a cost benefit analysis to enhance the services for recycling in the city of Patterson. This doesn't mean anything, this allows us to do our due diligence. Madam BA, since I'm not a committee to discuss this, have you guys, I brought it up a couple of weeks ago, have you guys started the process? We have till January, but please, I just want the Director to reflect that we should be going out for an RFP to see for recycling in the services that recycling would render. This question's to Madam BA, Council President? Thank you.
Do it, do it.
Council President?
Madam BA, can you answer the question, please?
We have not, I did take note of your request at the last, the previous council meeting. We have not started that process yet, only because we were really focused on trying to get a couple of people hired for the immediate needs. We do want to have a, an analysis done that examines this and I believe we, you know, I don't know if the Director agrees with this, but we do have that resource in the consultant who helps with also looking at our solid waste to have him share with us just some of the research and the knowledge that he has about statewide recycling contracts. So we are going to, that is on our to-do list.
Council President?
Council President?
Councilman Velez, is there a recording? Any other items on the agenda?
Yes, actually, my colleague from the sixth ward brought up some valid requests. Me as the Chair of DPW, I will request formally a letter of resignation of this committee from Councilman Adelaziz to the committee chair and to...
Thank you, Council President, Council President.
Go entertainer, please.
Thank you. You know why, you're right, I shouldn't have baited it, thank you.
We don't have to have to, you don't have to put in a resignation, you put in your request and it is what it is, alright? I make the decision, you already made your decision, so...
Council President?
Continue, please. We continue with the...
This is another question, Council President, I asked you another question. Madam BA, you say...
You see why I put the feature and then, and then, it, this is ridiculous, I'm telling you, you're going to continue with the agenda.
Council President, I'm directing your question to you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. You know, this is not a...
Feel mine.
Let me, let me, let me tell you something, Council President, please, this is not a dictator, uh, meeting. You acting, you acting, we live in a third world. We just asking the same procedure that you asked us to do. You asked her, instead of going directly to the administration to ask question offline, to doing a memo, to do a memo, to go to the committee, now he's requesting something, he's requesting something to the BA that had to come, that had to come to the committee, no matter what, had to come to the committee.
Any council member can request information from the administration, it's when?
But any, but any decision made to make moving forward has to come to be discussed in the committee. And then we discuss in the committee and they will move forward to discuss in the, in the whole council. Mr. Adelaziz could bring his analysis, analysis up.
Alright, council members, can we please continue, listen?
Council President?
We're discussing something right now that's not even on the agenda, we already spent over ten minutes on it. Can we at least proceed with the city business that we advertise to handle now? Councilman Jackson, please.
With all due respect, Council President, first and foremost, I think we got to figure out what's going on with these meetings, the public, I'm getting text messages, they cannot hear on the YouTube channel, that's the first thing.
But just so you know, Councilman, I have, I have in my list here, I'm going to have to analyze, actually, I'm going to have to look into maybe the meetings going back, the suggestion about the Borough Health and there was another suggestion regarding DPW committee, which Councilman Adelaziz request.
So, so, Council President, with all due respect, and I got to be completely honest. Well, I could care less about commentary and what people say, but it doesn't matter if the Councilman requests the floor and he has his moment to speak and he's talking about the sky being purple, I mean, it's his perspective, there's a lot of things that we all don't agree upon. Maybe some council people talk about something that's way off the mark, that's inaccurate, but just in analyzing what just took place, you cut Councilman Velez off in the middle of this conversation, whether he was going to say anything derogatory or not, which I don't, he wasn't, he was making a statement in regards to the Councilman of the sixth and you cut him off and said, oh no, that's not relevant. It's not, I mean, many council members talk about things that's not relevant to the discussion, they're not, they're not cut off mid-speech. It seems as if, you know, obviously there's a collaboration and/or specific items that you in particularly don't want to allow people to speak upon and it's very alarming. And lastly, I just want to say this because there's some racial overtones, undertones would have you with the request. We have a garbage company that has failed, proven failed, to provide a service. We have not asked for a cross benefit, cross benefit analysis for the garbage company to do a publicization, to bring it back to the public, to take care. But now we're talking about privatizing and/or outsourcing for more potential, more misappropriation of public dollars to put them in private hands, to take jobs from, you know, people of the Department of Public Works. Now, I get it, if there's a request because maybe, you know, the public has been crying out and we haven't done our part, you know, in providing that service, but I don't want to talk, I don't want to, you know, point the finger at the members of DPW who work extremely hard and particularly the recycling division, who is grossly understaffed, who is being forced to work overtime for quite some time. We're painting a picture that the men and women of DPW aren't providing appropriate services when they are in fact not being provided with the tools necessary to provide the job by this administration. So I take offense to Councilman Adelaziz's consistent prodding on the Department of Public Works and particularly with the recycling division, in particularly because the majority of those workers who live in this community who are grossly underpaid, who are always overlooked, are being disparagingly treated by this administration again. So if we're going to do analysis such as this, let's do it across the board, let's do an analysis personnel, people within the police and fire departments that's failing to do the evaluations of the residency policy. Let's do an evaluation of the administration that completely continues to neglect the residency policy overall. So please don't target segments of our community because we know that they're the majority that's being employed by this department, that's very bad.
So Councilman, we started something good by Councilman Adelaziz suggesting we do this. We could do this all the time. I've been on the council now for two years. The first year, recycling was not being done because we, the administration decided not to hire staff and instead give them overtime. You know what? The services were not provided, you know. This year, we also, you know, who should be offended? The taxpayers should be offended also, Councilman. We're billing them every year in their taxes, in their tax levy, we're budgeting for the administration to provide the services and they're not being provided. I don't want any of the Patterson residents to lose the, you know, their job and I agree with you a hundred percent. I need, you know, we need to pay them better wages, but you know what? The residents also deserve to get the services that they are paying for, so we have issues, you know, you had a...
Council President?
You had a great point. We need to not just check, you know, check recycling, we need to check solid waste. We need to check all those areas that I'm not going to repeat what you just did. The bottom line is, we got to stop being, accepting everything that is going on because a lot of us didn't sign up to be council members to see what is going on with our services in the city. That's all I have to say, I agree with you, Councilman, I'm not reverting what you said. All I'm saying is that Councilman Adelaziz, Councilman Velez, you know, we got to stop being selfish. It is funny though, but we got to cut that out, come on.
Thank you, Council President, to the public and the people that are watching. So this is what you call government one-on-one, right? An RFP does not need to go to a committee, an RFP is a request from a councilperson, giving a recommendation to the administration. Councilman Jackson, I don't know what city you live in, maybe in the first ward, the recycling services are great, but I can tell you my ward and numerous other wards, the recycling services has not been, it's been a complete failure. And I will go on public to say that and I will let the public know because they'll stand behind me. If you want me to bring, and I guarantee you, I'll probably bring fifty people from the first ward if I went and knocked on doors and said, how's your recycling going? It's a citywide issue. Now, government one-on-one. You ask for a proposal, I've only been on this council for two years. Some of my colleagues have been on here longer than I have. If you have an issue with the private sanitation, maybe you should put that request to do an analysis of how much it would cost to bring it in-house. That's the job of a councilperson. I sat for two years and saw a service that my constituents, regardless of race, have an issue recycling being picked up and I'm going to stand there and I'm going to fight to try to correct it. That means if I look at the analysis and I feel hiring more Pattersonians to get the job done, I have that choice to support that budget. But I have the fiscal responsibility to look at Plan A and Plan B and do the right thing. That's my job as a councilperson. If I had trouble with the sanitation department in my ward, I would do the same thing. But right now, and every councilperson should evaluate their priorities in their ward and put their recommendations in. Once again, government, government one-on-one, an RFP comes to committee, you discuss a committee and then a council could vote it up or down, or it cannot even come at a committee, but you said it perfectly. You see a problem, you analyze the problem and you look for solutions. Right now, we have one option. What's the second option? We analyze, maybe hiring more people is the right thing, but we owe it to the taxpayers to do the right thing and look at it. And you know what? I would support your, 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 your analyzation or your request. Let me see, I would love to see an analysis, Director, of how much it would cost to bring the public sanitation into a public. Not saying I support it, but you want, you know what, Councilman Jackson wants to see the cost benefit analysis and that? That's something I would have put on, I don't have an issue with it, but that's government one-on-one. And I don't know what Councilman Velez is doing, I think it's the due diligence that we could do, it's to look at things because continuously, day in and day out, I receive calls about recycling not being picked up and it's late at all times. Thank you.
But Councilman Adelaziz, to Councilman Jackson's point, the privatization also is not working, so we got to look at both. Two years recycling haven't been working properly for the last two years, now solid waste picked up, you know, been better than recycling, but we also have to look at it. Who else? Councilman Jackson? I have to put this thing back on, Councilman.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'll make this extremely brief. So if Councilman Adelaziz, who's been a learned student, I'm sure, I know he's followed closely being a student of the Democratic Party, I presented this plan a long time ago. I gave an analysis on how much garbage trucks cost because as we go down to the local municipalities you can get assessments on how much the garbage trucks would cost to buy ten of them and stretch it out over a ten-year period. I did that full analysis and I'm not going to sit here and do it again. So, yes, to present that, from, to have this administration present that, it will be feasible, but my point is being that when we look at and target the just particular spaces, if we have, we're going to do a cross-board analysis and I could knock on doors on any ward and I'm going to get displeasure from many multiple services. From policing that people have to wait four or five hours, from garbage collection that's all over the streets, from, there's so many services that we're deficient in. So if we're going to do it in one department, Council President, it deserves to be done across the board and we need to do that analysis to not only to provide a better service, but also to provide the community with a better service and providing jobs and keeping revenue within the city. So I'm all for it, I'm just saying do it fairly across the board and from my perspective and hearing it repeatedly from Councilman Adelaziz, yes, I take offense to it because it feels as if it's being targeted towards a segment of our community that are clearly the dominant, predominant employees of that, of that department, of that particular division. So I take offense in that and I'm still going to be that, feel that way and I'm sure there's a lot of members in our community that feel the same way as well. So I'll let it rest here, Council President, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much. So alright, let's continue.
Council President, I think, I don't want to speak, the Director has been trying to speak, DPW Director, did he leave? He left. He kept going like this to you that he wanted to speak.
What do you mean he left?
He left the meeting.
Madam BA?
He was trying to get your attention to speak.
That doesn't justify him leaving the meeting, I understand. Remember, there was council members also that wanted to speak, I was leaving him for last so he could address every council member himself.
Okay, so, so, Council President, just, it doesn't mean that he left because it was purpose, I'm just saying, my computer almost turned off on me, so I went to plug it in. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, thank you. Madam BA, I hope, I hope that action wasn't purposely because you know what, if he can't take the heat, he shouldn't be in that seat. We get all the calls all the time about recycling, I'm getting sick of it and I'm sorry to express myself this way, it's just very frustrating and it's been two years. You have articles back and forth, going back to two years now, concerning recycling. I don't see that many articles. Now, we get calls all the time and something's got to be done. Out of respect to the residents, we have to do something. If it is to give better equipment, more employees, better pay, bring up the morale, something's got to be done, but it's unacceptable to continue to receive the services that we're receiving, it's frustrating. We leave it at that, but, Madam Clerk, can we continue, please?
Yes, Mr. President, item eleven and twelve, we didn't cover that, forty, forty-one and forty-two.
Yes, those are all finance. So let's do, let's do forty, forty-one and forty-two.
So forty is the, has to be on regular? So 40 is the, um, has to be on regular because that's the downtown Patterson special improvement district budget.
I want you to read them for the record.
Oh, you want me to read the entire title?
Yes.
Resolution addressing downtown Patterson special improvement district, authorizing reading by title only, authorizing budget introduction, directing the clerk to advertise it and schedule a public hearing, directing the assessment to prepare an assessment role of properties within the district.
So, so Madam Clerk, uh-
Yes, sir.
For almost multiple years now, since she's been on the council. She wanted to know, and I know Councilman Jackson's have made a lot of requests in the past himself, but all I'm asking is, all she's asking, and I agree with her, why can't we get a comparison, even if it's a separate report, a comparison of the last two years' budget plus this one? The last three years' budget?
Three years for this one? Okay.
So this is, this is things that, that causes discussions that maybe if we could just listen to the council, you know, you should know the council by now. You know what each of us, what our tendencies are, what drives us, what things that we're looking for. I remember from watching council meetings, I knew how, I could almost tell what questions all the councilmembers were asking. And, uh, I just don't understand why, you know, we don't get the stuff that we asked for these years. Councilman Velez?
Council President, I think the most, the most, you hear me? The most suitable person to speak on this is, uh, is Councilman Jackson. He'd been here almost six years, asking for the same questions, not two years, regarding the, uh, the, uh, the budget from the first ward regarding the SID. But, but you just stated something before and I think I asked corporate counsel to address it. Last week, and it's not fair that you, that you, uh, stated what you stated against the director, when last week, when last week, uh, two councilmembers decided to break quarrel and we had to brutal, close the meeting and nobody say nothing. So now you have a director, okay, that's postulating that he haven't, can't have the chance to speak and, um, and you don't know he got disconnected because connection of Wi-Fi or whatever. And then you made, you made your, your assumption that he didn't want to take the heat. He been taking heat left and right from this council, from the administration and from the constituent out there, and he didn't have the rights to, to talk about it. Now you make your assumption that he didn't want to take the heat. Meanwhile, we still, we still have, we still have answers why two councilmembers out of the meeting broke the quarrel and you don't tell them that he-
Is that a question for me or are you just making a comment?
No, it's a question and also a comment because it's not fair, it's not fair, Council, it's not fair, Council President, that you attack the director, uh, on that faction on the public meeting.
So, so once again, it's just, Councilman Velez just can't control himself. I just passed one comment about the way that the director left, got disconnected. I'm not accusing him of anything. I'm just wondering why, it's just a coincidence, he was asking for the floor, he left. And I know that, you know, things like this have happened in the past. Now, to Councilman Velez's point, I was not here last week. I was not at the meeting last week. I don't know what took place last week. And councilmembers, we're all grown up. We know what we need to do. The public is watching the meetings. If people left in a professional manner, then there's election time. But at least the councilman, I mean, the, the, the director, I just act the BA for, if, if, if the action of the director is adequate. Why would he do such a thing? Assuming that he locked out, assuming that he locked out. Just like I asked Director Powell in a previous meeting to stop his antics also at one time. This is, you know, this is, this is very disrespectful to everybody. Councilwoman?
And so, and so let me just bring clarity. And I financed me and I made the recommendation or the comment because over the few, past few years, there has been recommendations through Councilman Jackson, myself and others. And so I said today for the SID that we should ensure when it's presented that everything that it took to get it approved last time, that it should be attached. Councilman Velez, you're acting like a very immature child by putting up notes while people are talking. You talk about respect and then you don't give it yourself. You need to grow up. So at the end of the day, when these items are being presented, it does not matter if you've been on the council for two months, five years, 10 years. We are a collaborative body of legislators and if something is mentioned by a councilmember and we're able to speak to it, then we should do just that. Councilman Velez, I saw your comment. You're being disrespectful, very disrespectful by putting up a note saying I should go back to church. You should grow up. You should learn how to respect people. It's very disrespectful. We sit on every council meeting and you go on and you jabber on through gibberish, stuff that has no, nothing to do with what we're speaking on. We listened to you for hours and you prolonged these meetings. Very disrespectful, Councilman Velez. Grow up. Council President, I just wanted to put that on record that for the SID item, there were things that were requested in the past through Councilman Jackson and myself and other councilmembers, that it will be a completed packet presented to the council so that we would not have an elongated discussion because it has been asked previously and every- Thank you, Council President.
All right now, can we continue with city business, please? Councilman Jackson, you want to speak? Go ahead. Then Councilman Abdelaziz, no? All right. So let me take down to your hands, all right.
So, Mr. President, number 40 has to be on regular?
Yes, number 40 has to be regular.
Right, yes, sir.
Council President, I would just like to note that CFO Sharon has prepared between the Finance Committee and here, she's run a report and I just shared it with the council that has the three-year analysis and it is something that we will make sure that our partner in the downtown SID is aware of this again, that they should be providing us, you know, not necessarily fall on March to do this, even though she was able to do it, but that we can make sure that we do have that each year going forward. Thank you.
So 41, um, I'm clerk.
Yes, 40. Mission reserves, that has to be on regular because it needs six affirmative votes?
Yes, those are regular.
Hard one to have any, yeah, so we definitely will. Are we moving on to 42?
42, I have two.
42 is a renewal of a junkyard license for Remigio, Remigio, Rinco, Remy American Auto and Repair and they are located at 42-44 Franklin Street. That's fourth ward.
It's okay, it could be consent.
It could be consent?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Mr. President, if we move back to item 11 and 12. I list, is it okay, Ms. Rowan? Yes, 11 and 12, I will set it up on the agenda for next week. It's the, we will have a public hearing, which I did announce at the last meeting on, I think it was August 11th. Yes, so we'll have a public hearing on the approved introduced budget that was already approved on the 11th. And also we'll have the, um, the resolution is included in the, in that budget to approve the transitional year 2020 municipal budget.
So I have one question for Madam BA. Madam BA, I understand this budget is basically a continuation of the other budget, it's half of the other budget, but what that we've been complaining about? Because basically we're going to go a year and a half billing the taxpayers and I'm not saying to fix it in six months, but what are we doing to improve some of these issues that some of the councilmembers have brought up? Like what change are you guys making, the administration?
Well, Council President, in particular, if we want to talk about recycling, because I know this, this is something that it's, it's, it has taken some time for us to get here. We have already posted six positions for hire. These were some replacements. These were some vacancies that we included in the budget. This is one of the only areas where we were able to include vacancies in the budget as we were preparing the transition year budget this year. Because again, we were really concerned, we wanted to be conservative, not knowing how the pandemic was going to be affecting our tax revenue, our store revenue. So, but we did prioritize especially recycling because it is such a necessary service. And so that has already, those job postings went up. The director has already done interviews. We're in the process of people going for, to fill in out their personnel paperwork and doing the procedure to, to be hired on staff. That will exponentially help us get a couple of trucks out. Our chief of staff has been working with our directors, our director and his team, as well as our corporation counsel, they've been intimately involved. They're using the concept of human-centered design, as our innovation team would say, going around, following trucks, thinking about ways, talking with everybody, not just director level, but everybody within the recycling team to try to see how we can make improvements even just in process so that leads to a better, a better outcome. The final piece is that we're really having continued conversations with DCA about additional changes, whether that, that ends up being something that we're able to move a lot more of the part-time people into full-time positions. That's the next step that we're looking at. So that's some of the service improvements that are present in this budget.
So Madam BA, but you have those, you have the same budget in the past. We budgeted money in the past. I know we can go through the past and it takes things. I just want to make sure that, we put the money in previous budgets also to hire the staff. One year, according to the newspaper, administration decided not to hire, instead allow, you know, those employees to work overtime. The services, you know, was not, were not provided to the level that we needed. So that didn't work. Now we're into the second year and still not working, whatever was going on.
And that's why we're making changes. That, that is why we're making changes. It does take a little bit of time unfortunately, but it is why we're making changes.
What I'm saying is, if we approve a budget, those positions there, why is it that two years later, we still haven't hired the staff needed to perform the, the function? That's the only question I'm asking.
Not, not all of these positions were in, in previous budgets. So we are adding staff members.
How much did the budget increase in recycling?
I can look at what that was.
Marge, can you look into that while we continue, Marge? Is Marge around?
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute. For what period was that? I'm sorry.
Year after year, that's, let's say last year compared to this year. Fiscal to fiscal, because technically this is half of what the budget was going to be. If we would have stayed-
More or less, okay.
Same thing. We took half of it.
Just recycling?
Recycling, just curers.
Okay. And-
So, so that's just addressing recycling, right? There's a lot of other issues that we need to address, but I guess that's a conversation for another time. Any other question by Councilman, Councilman Jackson and Councilman Velez?
Thank you, Council President. So obviously, listen, I, I want to be clear to the public and my council colleagues. My purpose is never to be combative. If you actually pay close attention to my demeanor through the course of all the meetings, never disrespectful, but I'm just always being clear and stating the facts. And I have to, I have to say, Council President, my job to keep the public informed is imperative. When we talk about these evaluations of various departments and positions, and you, Council President, as the Chair of Public of Finance and now the Council President, who has, from my perspective, have been very lenient in, in working with this administration to grant them pretty much anything that they've asked for, I have to point this out because again, my obligation is to those who vote me in. And this again is another example of the disparaging treatment. So as, uh, the position was refilled for, uh, the confidential aide to the mayor, I have to point out with the, with the growth salary reduction and just now with the BA stating clearly that the current holder of that position has gone out with DPW, followed behind trucks, had done various evaluations in which the previous seat holder did not do, but there was a justification that there was a reduction in the salary because asked upon, but I never recall the former person who held that position riding-
Council President, what-
Council, Council President, I'm speaking. I've never recalled someone riding street side, but yet there's a disparaging treatment in this administration when you talk about the reduction of certain people getting certain salaries. And I gotta say, for me, it feels like the black representation again is being shorted. So for this, for Ms. Fisher to hold the same position with additional duties, but yet be asked to do it for a lesser price is-
You're getting in an area, listen, Councilman, don't say your point's not valid.
My objective is to inform the community, is not to inform you guys. You guys should already know this.
I understand salaries are public information, but just making you aware, just be careful, you know, where we go with this discussion. Corporate counsel? Sorry, I muted you by mistake, sorry.
Sorry, salaries are indeed public information. So those indeed can be discussed. So salaries are quality. However, when we get into job duties and anything that may touch or concern somebody's employment, it's a very fine line. So I would just caution the council to be careful.
Councilman Jackson, I'm sorry, man, just wanted to make sure you could come through.
No, I, I, listen, Council President, I'm always careful. I'm very precise in which, in the manner in which I proceed in advocating, clearly, which I've been doing for the past several years, it doesn't matter who was in that chair. When the senator was in that chair, I was the same person. And I'm going to continue to advocate for those who bust their humps for this community and are asked to do it at a lesser rate. So when you, when I hear a situation that we have people with boots on the ground throughout the community where other people will never venture to, to, to explore, that's an insult, not only to the community, but to me. And to, and it should be to some of, to, to some of you who also put sweat and tears on the streets of this community, who watch our, our members be fed disparaging treatment. So I take offense to it and I'm making it known. No one on this council has to answer to it, neither this administration, because I answer to the public. I don't answer to any of you or any person in this administration. Very good. I appreciate that commentary as well. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. So Councilwoman Davila, just give me a minute and then Councilman Velez. Councilman Jackson, to your point, you know what? We often complain about some of our residents having the low-end jobs, low pay. Well, at the same time, if you analyze those departments, right? There was a lot of overtime being incurred. How about we talk to the administration and see if they could bring the salaries of those employees so we could improve the morale of all those employees and maybe they become more productive? And at the same time, we hold them accountable, but you know what? They should be better paid. We should be having that conversation often because I see people in the city working over 20 years and they still don't make $40,000, which is disturbing, disturbing. So-
Council President, to your point?
Yeah.
To your point, I've been saying that forever. What was disappointing is when members of the cabinet get pay increases and certain members, and it was the purpose of our meeting this afternoon, when certain members are privy to advance paid increases and members, and particularly the women in the tax office who've been working for this community for 30 years, who've never seen increases, but very small incremental increases. So people at DPW, there's various members throughout this entire city. And we talked about fair and equitable treatment. I'm only asking that it be dispersed fair and equitably. All the questions I've asked, in fact, I've asked, was there a comment made in, in a cabinet meeting? And guess what? Everyone who works for this, for this, this administration answers to the public. So all of this, I want to have a conversation behind closed doors? You should be answering to the public. If someone made a comment in a cabinet meeting saying, "If I don't get a- If someone made a comment in a cabinet meeting saying, if I don't get a raise to this, I'm leaving, that should be a, a answer that's provided to the public. But we neglect to do that. And in the, in the interim, the members of our, of the community who live and work here are treated unfairly. So I'll let it rest there, Council President. I truly appreciate the opportunity.
I'm glad those discussions are being had in personnel. That's the reason why we created that committee. Actually, uh, Councilwoman Davila was president, that committee was created. Uh, Councilwoman Davila.
Actually, what I wanted to say to you is I would love for you to be at our next meeting. A council president, since there's only three of us, okay? Um, very importantly, there was some stuff that was discussed today that was really disturbing. And, um, I'm going to leave it at that. I don't want to elongate this meeting. But Councilman Jackson did bring up some stuff today that, that really, when, when you look across the board, um, this administration is being very unfair. Thank you.
All right. But we continue now. If no one else, uh, was, actually, Councilwoman Velez. Go ahead.
Thank you. So we, we, we talking about number 12, resolution authorized adoption of TY 2020 municipal budget?
Yeah, we were talking about 11 and, and number 12. They're, they're tied together.
Okay, so, so the, I recall, and I don't know if you're going to recall the same thing that I recall. On number 11, uh, the, um, transition year 2022, uh, that, that, that we were, we're going to be positioned in the budget. And, um, moving for calendar, uh, sorry, from fiscal year to calendar and that we're not going to raise taxes, let's do this, let's do that. And one of the pitches, uh, one of the, the statement that the administration do is that it was going to avoid, uh, a layoff and, or, or, um, or kind of, uh, how you call it, um, the other word, I forgot right now.
Furlough.
Furlough. And now we are in the, in the, in the midst that they say that they're going to do a furlough um, into, into the city of Patterson. Not, not only that, I don't think the city of Patterson is aware that I am a elected official, that I receive certified mail, that I will be terminated or get furlough on, on, on the city of Patterson. I don't know if that's part of the, um, and I receive a certified. I receive it regular mail, okay? That Louis Velez is going to be falling on the furlough position. And it was sent by, uh, Catherine Long Business Administrator, signed by her, saying the days I go to be furlough as a councilman. I don't know, uh, this is a mistake or is that the city don't know I'm a councilman? And they, they send it this as I was an employee of the city Patterson, as you noticed. Uh, any council member received this also certified? You do? So you're going to be furloughed, Councilwoman Rubikai?
I think yes.
Uh, uh, yeah, nobody, only, only the individual that works here. You got it, Councilman? You too? So everybody that works here is getting furlough? Um, um, and all, I just want to know if that is custom or is, is, is a mistake from the system? Or, 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 or that's something to let us know what the city want to do when they say we are in financial, in good financial position right now, that we are surplus and that the state has treated us so good in the state aid? And, um, and now we talking about furlough? And last, last but not least, uh, um, I know I'm going to be cut off in a minute, but I saw the director of DPW tune in again. I don't know if Council President would like to give him a chance to answer why he brutally came, when came off out of the meeting, but, um.
There's no, there's no need for that.
Okay.
Need for that, Councilman.
So this budget, this budget, adoption budget represent any tax increase?
Uh, Madam, Madam BA?
Our auditorium, he was when he was here. This budget keeps the rate the same, the last two quarters of four quarters of, um, the two quarters of this transition year and the first two quarters of the calendar year. It involves the for a moment, just to the, the furlough idea. When we first started talking about that, it was because we had two situations where we had no idea how the tax revenue was going to play out and tax and sewer revenue, I should say, our August collections and in our November. We had to make a decision about starting the process with civil service early enough in order to have a financial impact in our budget in case we needed it. As we contend, and as we said to all the unions, we had, we had to have conversations with all of our employee unions before we submitted the plan to civil service. The plan was submitted in July. We had to have conversations with the unions and we said to them, we will be analyzing our revenue collections throughout, after we even submit this plan, in the hopes that we will not have to implement it. And that's because we do that, the calendar year, we didn't even have the conversations about the calendar year reversion until July. So that wasn't even passed at this point in time. The fact that, that the council took the action to, to vote and support the calendar year reversion does give us some of that buffer zone. We will, that will help protect us, insulate the city from, you know, even if we don't get this, the same sort of revenue as we were expecting before. So at this, as we said to the unions, as when we emailed the notice to our employees, it is not a definite to start that furlough on October 1st. And as, you know, the, the CFO can speak to how our revenues are looking, but at this point in time, our tax revenues in particular for August are looking really strong. So it's even less likely that we'll have to implement a furlough.
Madam BA, can I ask, before you continue, Councilwoman Velez, if you don't mind, can I ask Madam CFO a question? Marge, was this actually a recommendation from the CFO? That you were looking to see how much revenue would come in in order to decide if we needed a furlough or not? How, since when we, we, we look at revenues that are coming into the side?
So, um, one of the objectives of the, um, reversion to a calendar year with the implementation of six-month budget year, um, July 1st, December 31st, 20, was to achieve the objective of getting some surplus in the, uh, budget for fiscal, for the year ended 12/31/20. We would not know those results until we saw the first, the third quarter collections that came in. The due date, I believe, was August 18th, so that was roughly two weeks ago. What we're seeing trending is about 86% collection for this, uh, six-month period, meaning that, um, we won't have as strong a finish in the calendar year with respect to a surplus. However, we will have a surplus, just a smaller one. Why is that? We are not, another objective of changing back to a calendar year is to eliminate, uh, the performance of an annual accelerated tax sale. So from this point forward, we are anticipating doing a regular tax sale each year in the first quarter of the subsequent year. So for example, we won't be having an accelerated tax sale this December of the third and fourth quarter tax bills that are delinquent. Instead, we'll have a regular tax sale in late eight, late March or early April of 2021. We expect to have that delinquency in the air, in the area of about $13 million at year end. So that revenue will be realized in this calendar year 21. What does that mean? We're projecting, instead of having a large surplus of eight or nine million dollars for the fiscal period, we're probably going to come in around two million, two to three million max. So, but we weren't sure of how it was going to come in the third quarter.
How was the surplus last year?
Oh, um, you mean for June 30th was about 1.3 million.
And the year before, I don't think we anticipated any surplus.
Um, the year before, we had maybe half a million.
So, so my point is, is that my question to you, Marge, was if it was a recommendation coming from you for the administration to consider this furlough?
No, this was an overall plan of what we, which we started at the, pretty much at the beginning of the pandemic, not knowing how calendar, uh, fiscal year 20 was going to end. And, you know, at that time when we were planning, we were strategizing, we didn't know what we were going to do in terms of a cash deficit. So we were talking about TANs. If you recall, we had the council approve a resolution to allow us to borrow money in, in the form of TANs, because that would give us the cash we needed to close out June 30th and pay our bills.
Yeah, but that, that wouldn't, that wouldn't, that wouldn't, actually, that wouldn't benefit the budget at all. That's just for tax anticipation.
No, no, it has not, it's not about benefiting the budget.
I'd like to record reflect on my colleagues that us contemplating borrowing money with the ta- tax anticipation notes don't have anything to do with supporting the budget. That's just.
No, no, it's all about planning.
Want to make sure.
Both cash and, and, uh, budget, uh, gaps. So we, we were also talking about furloughing, um, earlier. You know, starting the process of authorizing a furlough and possibly a RIF or the layoff.
But you know what, what gets to me the most, Marge, that's why I'm asking the question, Madam BA? I'm the finance chair. And I know one time you wanted to bring the topic up and I said that it wasn't the right time. People were struggling out there. Uh, at the time you wanted to bring it up, I think it was, uh, maybe at the beginning of this COVID, uh, situation, pandemic. And I said, you know, we're not discussing that right now, uh, in the city. And, but then it was rolled out. In your defense, we didn't give you the opportunity at that time to discuss it with us. But the thing is, it was never discussed, even if it wasn't your fault. That, that action was never discussed with the council at all, just so you know. Just want to put it on the record.
Um, I think Kathleen may be better to speak to that, but this is all part of the planning. Now, as far as the timing of, you know, issuing these notices, it's, it's no different than a layoff. It's part of a, a reduction in force plan. And so a furlough requires the same amount of, of required notice.
I could appreciate that, the, the administration doing something that we've been talking a long time. Because I remember during the time that we had the previous CFO, every time, that's what we had, sometimes we had like a 29% increase. We had all these huge increases because the year will end and you still needed to give the unions a 45-day notice. So I understand the intent by the administration. Not saying that they were wrong in, 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 in the thought process, but a discussion at least make the council aware that that was going to go out. When people called me, I was like, I don't know what you're talking about. Uh, and you know, I was the finance chair and there's people in my committee and I wasn't even aware that those letters would go out. Um, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, Council President. With all due respect, the amount of disrespect that's going on to, that has happened to this council has been continuing for the past couple of years. And I've been saying it over and over. But Council President, as well as Madam Sharon, both of you with your finance background, how odd and particular, particularly, um, um, strong of an, of a message are we sending to the, uh, and when you talk about morale, Council President, we're sending to the entire, um, um, population, the employees of the city, when we are issuing letters for furloughs at the same time, hiring a substantial amount of new hires, as well as giving pay increases? I mean, the new hires, I understand because especially when there's deficiencies in certain departments. But how do you give pay increases to the top, the most, the highest paid employees of the administration? And then ask that the entire lower portion of the, uh, employee base is going to be expected, potentially expected to take on furloughs? I mean, I don't, I've never seen that before. In my entire tenure here, Madam, um, Sharon, and maybe you have, you've been here 30 years or, or longer. Maybe you've seen it in a time, but is that something that's, that would be considered a common practice?
Um, I guess you're talking, asking me about the, um, giving of raises or promotional raises, et cetera, things of that nature?
During the process, during the time when you believe that there's a necessity for furloughs?
Um, I don't think that it's uncommon. It's, you know, because it's business as usual, things are continuing, the processes are being employed and, um, the actions are taking place. It's not as if there, it's a hiring freeze or promotional freeze during, during a RIF. Um, it, that does precede it, so there shouldn't be really, other than essential replacements of employees when you're, when you're conducting a reduction in force.
Well, essential replacement employees, but pay increases?
Again, I said it's not uncommon.
Okay, very good.
It's not, it's not typical, but it's not uncommon because business continues. So, um.
Stayed clear the first time, business as usual. Very good.
So, so, Council President? Council President? Uh, you unmute yourself.
Still not, he's still, um, muted.
Yeah, you mute yourself, Council President.
Mr. President, we're not here. You're still muted.
I don't want to unmute you, please, unmute yourself.
I was asking, wait, I was talking for a while. I was asking Madam BA, she was asking for the floor, but I also was asking Councilwoman Mims, if she was there. I need to run for a minute, uh, so she could, uh, run the meeting while I get back. Oh, there she is. But Councilman Jackson still has the floor, Councilwoman Mims. If he finished then, uh, please allow Madam BA, she's been asking for the floor, and Councilman Velez, and then you take it from there, I'll be back, all right? Let me. Go ahead, you go unmute yourself, whatever. All right. Go ahead, Councilwoman Mims.
She's still muted.
No, she couldn't mute herself. Okay, Councilman Jackson, were you finished? Anyone else? Madam Clerk, um, do we have?
Yeah, uh, um, I was, I, I request the floor, sorry, there's a delay in this, um, new system that we. Thank you, Council President. Uh, so my question was directly to the administration, and especially to the BA, about the furlough. And I know that it's common and it's not common to give raises in the middle of, of that. We're going to, we already discussed and we still, I got to respect that we have a lot of conversation on that in the committee. But, you know, can you tell me with a straight answer? All right, because the idea of the furlough came in the middle of the pandemic. Everybody was, uh, not aware what was going to happen. The, the COVID-19 was absorbing the budget. We was nowhere to know if the care acts, how much they was going to give us. And applying FEMA now is a new method to recover what we have spent or what we are spending. And I, when the furlough came aboard in the conversation, now recall the mayor saying, Councilman Velez, I need your support to transition the city from calendar year, uh, sorry, from fiscal year to calendar, because it will avoid furlough. It will avoid that we will be in a financial stress, a city, you know, financial position in the city. Now we are moving forward to a calendar year and still they came up talking about furlough. And I feel, okay, now you got what you wanted. Now you don't want to take out of the table the furlough. Can you tell me, because there's a lot of employees out there, trust me, that cannot afford one day out of their work without pay. You know, they got the rent on their shoulder, they got bills to pay. Uh, some of them have lost, the husband have lost a job or the wife have lost a job. Some of them don't receive the benefit of unemployment. A lot of them did not receive the $600, uh, that they, 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 uh, a lot of people got. So there's a lot of things that, right now, you have employees that still waiting for getting compensated from their contract from the past and they still are empty pocket. And we talking about furlough. Can you give us a hope that, uh, we have more in this side to say we are 90%, 95% that we're not going to do furlough, that moving forward say that we are 75% going to furlough? Can you guarantee that to the people that are out there watching this meeting?
Councilman Velez, I, I can, I can speak comfortably saying that we are leaning much, we are, if I had to make a guess, 75 to 80 to 90%, sure. Um, but there still is that, uh, concern. And I think, uh, Councilman. And I think Councilman, Council President noted this earlier. Uh, we're trying to find that balance between uh, not having to burden the taxpayers with, you know, if we're, we're not planning properly and having to raise taxes and, you know, with a huge increase with, you know, not wanting to hurt our employees. Um, and so we're, we're judiciously watching those tax revenues. Where we have that benefit of a potential tax lien sale in October, which I think is this extra piece of information that will allow us to, to gain some income for this. Really pointing to yes. I think we have to just wait a little bit longer to make a final decision, to make an analysis, um, and to sort of do those projections. But even in conversations with the CFO, with the comptroller, you know, looking at these revenues every week, they are very positive.
So I would recommend, Madam BA, if you want a fair, balanced analysis, that instead of going to furlough, let's look at the whole, the hiring, not essential employees that this administration have give position the city, balance them. Uh, give them the pink notice and tell them, hey, I hired you when we were supposed to in 2018, 2019, 2020, even the one that got hired from January middle of the COVID-19 pandemic. And say, you know what, let's not, let's not sacrifice the, the hardworking man and woman that have been here for many, many years in the city. And let's cut those employees that have come in this administration that are not essential, I'm not talking about police or fire. And, um, and, and, and start cutting from there to balance and not make the, uh, the city of Patterson taxpayer or going after them. I think that if you want to be balanced and fair, uh, uh, there's a lot of position that came in 2018 and now that probably could be higher when this city are real financial, uh, better positioned. You know, we cannot take 1 million or 2 million surplus and start hiring and giving raises and then talk about furlough. It's not fair for those that being in the city.
Councilman, I would like to, to just note that you, as you could see from our notice today and from our information that we provided today, there is very limited hiring uh, throughout this, this period because of exactly this, that we were um, really sort of tightening our belts. Wanting to, you know, we didn't want to hire people who, and then have to either lay them off because as part of a furlough plan, you know, your provisional hires have to go first. Um, so we are, we were being very judicious about this. And I would like to note earlier too, about the salary increases and these huge increases for people at the top of the scale. None of that happens. You know, I know we talked about this in terms of the salary ordinance earlier, um, much earlier. And the council, you know, voted not to proceed with that. None of that, there hasn't been any salary increases. Um, yeah, so I, I, I'm not really quite sure what people are talking about. A lot of the, if you see things on that, that note from earlier, whether it's things that were.
I'm not talking that, no.
From earlier in the year.
No, no, early in the year, I recalled in transition that if the former mayor put a freeze, hiring freeze, the mayor spoke about hiring freeze all this year that we're not hiring, that we're not in, in a, in a position to hire because we are budget stranded, you know, and, and meaning we need to balance. And we've got friends and threaten to help with the budget. But now we're going to do a, a sewer bill that's going to put in better place. Meanwhile, we are jeopardizing the taxpayer, but at the same time, we're not giving back them something. And we keep on hiring people, hiring people. And now we're talking about late, uh, uh, um, uh, the, um.
Right, furlough.
The furlough.
Yeah, I would just like to note that, that this is what every municipality, county, state is struggling with. As you might know, the state actually implemented a furlough. They didn't just talk about it. They didn't just plan for it, look at it. They had to implement one. We are hopefully not going to have to follow suit in part because of the, some of the strategies that were put in place, that the stopping and spending, um, the temporary freeze and hiring, which we did put in, the calendar year reversion, which the action that this council took. Um, all of these things are really going to help prevent what that state had to do. We, we are fairly confident.
Do the county, did the county is talking about furlough too?
I don't believe the county, they, they are in a different financial position than the, the city and the state for sure.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So I'm back. Marge, I, I have a question, Marge. And again, uh, you know, we already discussed all the items on this agenda. And did we make the final payment to that company that, that was doing the, the assessment for the city? Don't want to meet with us or anything. Because no wonder why it's hard to get any, any meetings with them or anything, because there was a lady, and I'll give you the, the, the personal location.
Council President? We, we wanted to present, make a presentation many times.
Correct.
To the finance committee as well as the full, and we're unable to do so. Both with the company at first and then with the assessors.
Yes, at the time, and, and some, you know, Councilwoman Davila was in finance. And the same standard Councilman Morris had, the same view regarding his company, I, I wasn't even aware that he had it until someone told me, uh, I had it. But then something got even worse. There was a lady uh, on the corner, she works in a, in a, in Lewis, uh, Councilman Velez, you probably know this person, they probably told you about this already. The corner of Madison Avenue and Marcus Street. She has a list of about 12 people that actually tried to pursue the American dream and it has turned into a nightmare. This person, I'm not going to get into the other ones because she actually texted me today to give her the website, the website where she could look at the assessment. And I received some information that I'm supposed to review also from the assessor, I haven't gotten a chance. But her alone, she has 12 people and I know other people that have reached out to me. Now, her situation was a little different. She bought a property, that property was improved and, you know, the taxes went up because it was improved. But on top of that, she got another increase. So her mortgage went from 2,200 something to 4,000 something. Because the way the mortgage companies calculate the estimate. There is a large outcry. I asked every Realtor that I know, what is their experience when they sell a house in other municipalities? And they say that the, 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 the amount that the house is sold for does not causes their assessment to increase. But because we hire a company to do a reassessment, every, I, I, I'm going to be careful the words that I use, I was going to say everyone. A lot of people that purchase, uh, purchase homes, homes in the last, uh, I think this company used information through the end of, uh, beginning of October. So anyone that bought their houses from in 2019, before October of 2019, they probably saw it's a tremendous increase because the market is high. Um, and it's hard to get this, you know, I called the, the, the tax assessor from the county. Uh, I talked to different people. And it is just ridiculous how a company, because someone bought a house when the market is up, they will raise that properties, uh, or those properties, um, assessment tremendously. And everybody else is around the neighborhood raised it minimally. So Councilman Velez, you're all day in the street talking to the people? I have not talked to you about this. I assume that you know about this because you're out there all the time?
Correct. And, and I was going to give you more information about that quickly. Uh, and this is what the problem, the reality say that sell the house based on the tax year, that tax year. And they say, hey, you got a $10,000 of tax bill for this house, right? And when they sell the house, the assessor, the, 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 uh, the company goes back and assess them again as the new owner and increase the assessment of the property. And the taxes go high less than a year. Now.
And how much, Councilman Velez, and you know for a fact, you can throw me under the bus right now, you and I have not discussed this matter. So you tell how much your experience with some of these people, how much the tax increase have been?
Like right in the back, 5,000, 12, uh, 3,000, right in the back.
Councilwoman Mims.
From, from 12 to, to 15, from 15 to 18.
Feel about it. So if you know of anyone that this has happened.
Say something about it too. Now that we don't have this contract, I know that it was, it was two years assessment in the past. And, and, and if I, if I go to vote to any assessment in the city of property, I want to get rid of that one year assessment and put it every two year or three years because it's impossible that, and every year they're going to get assessment on the property and the property is going to go higher and higher. I got individuals that have not made no improvement in their property. And somehow they put a sticker in the wall, they came and assessed it and they say, here. And then not only that, they give a phone number when, um, when the people don't answer.
This company is not even showing up in some of their houses.
And not only that, they have interns, kids 19, 20 years old going to people's houses to assess property that don't even have a background in real estate and even as appraisal.
Councilman, thank you, Councilman Velez. Councilman Adelaziz.
Council President, I could tell you that's also happening in the sixth ward. Uh, I'm not talking about $5,000. I know an individual that bought a two family house. His taxes went from $12,000 and they got a bill for $41,000. Forty-one for a two family house.
So you know what they, you know, Councilman, you know what the worst part is? They tell you, oh, you have to go appeal it. But the problem is, once they, once they, once they apply the assessment, right? If you look, I went to, uh, Madam CFO, I don't mean to interrupt you. I went to Madam CFO and I asked her, Marge, what is the average assessed residential property? She told me it's about less than 200,000. But once they apply, so you buying houses for 350 right now. If they increase your assessment, let's say 80,000 and you go to appeal it, it's going to be hard to find comparables to lower that. But now, your, your American dream has turned into a nightmare. It's hard to decrease those.
So Council President, just to tell you about this one, I've, I've got a couple, but this is a two family house. And as you stated, you know, thankfully in the sixth ward, the property values are really going high. But that's what the market is now. And the house was a two family forever and the family's been there forever. They sold it for a high price. But right away, like the councilman from the fifth ward said, they, they thought the taxes were this. And it's, it went up to 40 something thousand dollars for her two family. And, and, and I, I don't have the answers. I don't know how that, like, you know, if you're going to reassess, bring it down to the same level of what's in their area, not what you're buying. People pay, like this person paid a lot of money for this because they had, you know, it's, it was a bidding war.
Selling now, Councilman. They bought it because they probably looked at the tax history. And they noticed that in 15, we had a, a whole citywide reassessment, right, or assessment. Um, rebound, a rebound, the word. And they thought, you know what, I buy the property, my taxes is going to remain the same. All of a sudden, they increased just the property of, not the ones surrounding. Those are increased minimally, right? A fraction. But everyone else's that purchased the property get killed. I'm sorry, Council. Go ahead.
So my question is to the BA, if the market crashes, do the taxes go lower? So say if I bought a house and it's assessed at 200,000 and someone buys it for 100,000, do we reassess it and cut their taxes?
No.
So it's only, it's only one, it's only one way up?
They only go up.
So the, the formula is skewed.
Well, the worst part is, Councilman, if you have 10 properties, identical properties in the neighborhood, let's say all those 10 owners owned them for 10 years. And let's just say in the perfect world, they're all paying the same amount of money because they're identical, right? Same everything. Same developer building, they're, they're the same. Now, all of a sudden, one of those houses are sold for, let's say, 450,000. Let's say they were all assessed at 200, right? All those properties? All of a sudden, this company will put in a formula without going to this property, will put in a formula in the system and say, you know what? That property should be assessed at 300, right? Instead of 200. So now you have the same identical home paying five, six, $7,000 less than their neighbors for the same services that the city is providing.
That, that, that's why Council President is, is recommended, and this is a learning, a learning process to those that want to run for office. To make sure to not put in a platform that they go to lower their taxes. Because it's not, it's not going to happen. It's not going to happen.
So I'm going to start working to identify a lot of these people. And I'm going to get signatures, whatever I need to do. I, I wish my council colleagues helped me out on this. And we're going to submit this to the administration and see how we could address this issue.
Well, we had to amend, we had to amend the ordinance that, uh, bring this contract in and set it, put in every year assessment to put it to two years or three years back where it was. And, and they get a relief on it.
We could, we could have a conversation, Council. Councilman Jackson.
Oh, thank you, Council President. So with, with that being said, um, uh, to Councilman Adelaziz's part, uh, a point. If any resident is paying $40,000 in taxes based on the formula, because it's a 4.7% tax rate, that means the two family house that he's talking about referencing in the sixth ward sold for 850 plus thousand.
769, 769.
Good job, Councilman Jackson. You're close. 769.
Well, it, it, so it's probably assessed at 800,000, 850,000. The assessment is not the sales is the assessment, but it has to be somewhere equivalent in sale. So with that being said, what's more alarming, because Councilman, Council President, if you're going to do an assessment for a few, it's realistically has to be done across the board. I have so many residents, in particular, you know, a Dominican family on North Fourth Street that's been complaining since the, 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 uh, assessment of the sewer, new, the new sewer charge went into effect. So everybody's being impacted by this. But what's more alarming, was more alarming, the fact that this administration and particularly the mayor, the mayor promised not to raise taxes. He raised taxes on the sewer end, on the municipal side. But as well as fail, the, this administration is failing to go after, you know, those entities that they promised this council that the purpose for putting this sewer assessment in place was for. So the, the hospital still hasn't got to pay, they're paying 700,000 when they owe approximately $7 million a year. And all the list of nonprofits that have yet to make the, any, any equitable contribution into the tax base, which would one prevent furloughs? Which would one be able to provide opportunities for pay increases to those uh, being asked to work these astronomical hours? I mean, there's so many different things, but again, can't pick and choose one specific points. You know, um, uh, Councilman Adelaziz, the, the property values in the first ward are extremely high. And, um, they're mirrored across the board. When you talk about most of the commercial properties down there, you know, my taxes is over, uh, close to 40,000 as well. So, um, you know, this, this assessment needs to be done, Council President. And I agree even with Councilman Velez with regard to these young kids. Um, 17, 18 years old, they, we know they're not walking through these various parts of our community. I have yet to see them in the streets. And, um, uh, you know, it, it, something needs to be done. This administration needs to stand up and do what it promised or at least make an attempt at doing it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We're going to, we're going to be said there's ordinance, uh, Councilmen. Uh, or, you know, uh, the ordinance, uh, assessment of the property that was before, I believe two years, they changed it back for a year assessment. So we could put it back.
So, so Councilman, what happened is they decided to do a four year program where this company was supposed to visit 25% of the homes. Physically visit, 25. So this year was the fourth year, right? They're done, the four year. They, you know, Moody's actually thought it was a great program, right? Moody's, the rating agency, Better Rating Agency. But I, I told whoever brought this up to me, I said, yeah, Moody's is not here, taking the phone calls from the, it might be a good program in other towns where the company was not practicing this. I, I spoke to some of my, you know, some colleagues of mine that have this program in other places. And the companies that they were using did not engage in this practice of basically bumping assessment based on property values, just targeting those properties, which doesn't make sense.
I, I recall that, um, um, the former mayor, uh, uh, not the one before this one now, uh, uh, James Warren, the, the one before James Warren, uh, implemented a, an assessment because, uh, other municipality has sued the city of Patterson because we was not making the right assessment on the property. But the, 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 um, the method that they use now is only four years that we could come back and say, you know what, we don't want one year assessment. It's not giving a tax break to our residents. We could push it back to two years or three years assessment. Let the city start or the administration, whoever come forward to start looking for real revenues in the city instead of going to our taxpayers, our, our property owners and our. our, our property owners, and our business owner. Because this is only, and we talking about the business, house, or property owner. We only have twenty-two thousand properties in the city of Patterson that pay taxes, you know? Uh, uh, and, and, and a, a lot of them are also commercials. But have you, have you thought about those commercial also values in every year having gone up? And now, the, the revenue of their property and the income that they're bringing in through their sales that they're doing is low. Look at that mall. That mall is empty. Look at our stores, uh, uh, are empty. You don't have shoppers going to it. They're not getting revenue to pay even the lease. A lot of businesses are going out of business in the city of Patterson. I find out that there's a store, even Walgreens, is looking empty. So you imagine all the stores going out of business, and they, and we have empties, empty buildings in the city of Patterson. How are we gonna get the revenues in? And the city's gonna go still after the small houses, you know, the, the mom and pops and family houses. And, and where we gonna go with this? And this, this assessment is gonna throw us more, unless there is the sign on it, environmental design. Let's kill the small one for the big corporation who manage the city, and that's a big problem that we have, if that happens. Right now, look at the businesses. The small businesses are hurting. The administration have not having good relief for those individuals that are behind in those rents, even in their loans and this and that, and they still have to pay their taxes. They still have to pay the sewer taxes, you know, bills, you know? Today, I have a constituent that received three different amount of sewer charges bill. And they are using the same water, and still the administration haven't come with an explanation. What is that?
They actually take the administration right now. Someone possibly sent me a bill, uh, someone's getting billed twice also for sewer.
I know.
No, no, no. Yeah. So there, listen, it's a big city. There's gonna be some issues, but it, it is our job to address them because we, we're messing with people's lives here.
Listen, but let's do this, uh, councilman. It's good, it's good.
Pay two thousand, think three hundred, two thousand, four hundred a month to paying over four thousand. So now she have to wait until she could probably do an appeal a year later. In the meantime, how is this lady, especially if she's on a budget? How is she gonna pay over four thousand dollars a month, uh, for a mortgage? When she bought the house, she thought she was gonna pay twenty-four hundred dollars. Now, she told, she calls her insurance, uh, mortgage company all the time, and they don't wanna hear it because they're looking at the bill, how much the bill went up at one shop.
And, and let me tell you, Council President, I believe we are one of the municipalities that still are collecting for the, the sewer and, and the water commission. There's other municipalities say, you know what? You deal with the bill, you deal with the rate, you collect them, don't come to us to be the collector. Why the city don't do that? What is behind that? Are they using this just to balance budget? And then at the end, looking for money, uh, to pay our sewer bill? So, you know, why they don't throw this responsibility of collecting the sewer to the, uh, the, uh, the water commission or the sewer division to make that decision, to get the bill and, 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 and take us out of that, and nobody had to come to us saying that we doing this and doing that? Let the, the water commission and, and the sewer division do that billing process. Let them collect like PC and G do, like, uh, the cable do, any service, they do it themselves. Let them do it.
So thank you, councilman. Uh, we, we're gonna continue the discussion. Set up. Any other comments? I think we're done with the agenda. So any other comments?
Motion closed.
Thank you. From Lady Report. Just kidding.
By, uh, Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilman Jackson.
Roll call, Mr. President?
Roll call, Madam clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call to close the municipal workshop session of September first, twenty twenty. Councilman Abdallah Ziz, close.
Before we close, Council President, I just wanna commend you. Seventy-six items. Again, this meeting done at eleven-thirty via Zoom. That, as much as you think that, um, that this program was much better, and it was, uh, you know, I know you hear a lot of criticism, but this, you, this meeting ran much smoother with the new software that you put in place. So I wanna commend you. Um, I know it's hard, but, you know, the job gets done. We're not the only people using this, and, you know, the city, the government must continue. So good job, Council President. Um, my vote is yes.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Chaheri?
I'd also take this moment to thank, uh, the IT department, including Mr. Ryan, uh, the council secretaries and the madam clerk's office for all the hard work they're doing and making sure that these meetings run smooth. Thank you. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As everyone know, last time, I couldn't say nothing because we didn't have a quorum to close out. And I was gonna ask the, the Corporation Council, do we gotta go back into that meeting and close out again? Because we did not have our five people that we needed to. But she can answer me later because we can do it at another time. But I just wanna say out there to the community that, um, the meeting that we had on August eleventh really went, went too long. And I just wanna apologize to everyone. People woke up, they went to sleep, they woke up, they went to sleep, and we were still meeting at three forty in the morning. And I can say that that's unacceptable for, and people, actually, you'll be surprised, as many people watching our council meeting, and I mean little children, and I got to say that I went to school sixth one day, and that's what made me kinda be cautious of what I do. Um, the little boy came up to me inside of grammar school, probably sixth grade, and said, "Councilwoman, you were really mad last night." So I know some of these children are sitting down with their mothers and their fathers, their grandmothers, and they're watching our meetings, and I can tell you they're watching it. But I just wanna say to, to everyone who came, uh, we had our kickoff for my husband's foundation, Ed Caton Foundation at Barbara Park, and what we wanted to do was family. Because it's not just children, but families. When you, when you bring families together, that helps the whole community. It helps. So it was very successful. And we wanna, we, we're gonna get ready to launch it worldwide. But there's a lot of things that our young people out here can do, and I can tell you one thing, my husband did it all. But one of the main things I think he would like for our young people is to get into the boxing industry, where there's really money to be made. But besides that, there's so much other things our young people, our young men, that can do in the community, whether it's refereeing games, whether they do a football game, basketball game, there's so many things out there. But they just needed to be touched and explained on how they can go about it. And also, I would like to just to say that, um, I'm having our twenty-fifth annual days of the babies. We, we we can't have the crowd. We normally have three, four hundred kids, but we cannot do that. But we still gonna have a twenty-fifth annual at Montgomery Park, uh, Sunday, September sixth. It's gonna be from two to five. It's gonna be more like a grab and go where we're gonna fix their, a meal for them, and then they're gonna get a book bag that they can take with you or school supply or something. So we're gonna, we're gonna be able to do that. And I would just like to say, it is, you know, people don't think that we as councilpeople feel people's pain, and we actually feel your pain. You feel it all the time. I know I do. And last weekend, at three thirty, my phone started ringing about Godwin Avenue. And I wanna say to, to, to all the families out there who have lost someone, a loved one, their children to violence, uh, and even to all those out there who have lost someone to COVID, um, don't think that you're out there by yourself. Just call or reach out to someone, and someone there. But I just wanna say to my good friend Sharonda Roberts, where her son was one of the victims, and he is doing so much better. So God is so good that he's, he's improving. So with that being said, to you all out there, I wanna wish everyone a good night. God bless you all. Uh, there's just a lot of things that need to get done. It will get done. With, with council members, we gotta understand. No matter how we vote and whatever, you don't hold grudges up to each other because we don't vote the same. You know, you don't stay mad. You know, you get out of here and you say good night, at least say good night when you finished, you know? There's nothing wrong with that. So we're never gonna agree with some of us, but some of us will agree so. With that being said, Council President, Madam Clerk, I just wanna apologize to you, Madam Clerk, because no one knew what you went through on August eleventh, when we left out of here at four o'clock in the morning, and they expected you to be back here the next morning at eight-thirty. And that was almost impossible to be able to do that. So my secretaries out there, as they say, my madam clerk, and all of you out there, uh, Corporation Council BA, it's a lot, it's a lot. So, you know, let's just be mindful of what we do and what we say to each other. So with that being said, Council President, uh, Madam Clerk, I mean, my vote is yes.
Thank you, um, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll be as brief as possible. Um, I think, uh, Councilwoman Cotton said, said, uh, you hit the nail on the head. Madam Clerk, you often asked to do, um, to, to, uh, to compete, complete some daunting tasks, and you always come through, you always, uh, pull through with, uh, with flying colors. You know, I think it's just one thing to give flowers while people can smell them and give, uh, pats on the back and say congratulations and things of that nature. But, but ultimately, we all come to work to be compensated and take, to be able to take care of our families and live well. So for those, um, members of our, uh, uh, of employment base, employee base who work diligently every day, I stay committed to making sure, just like I did several years back, to making sure that members of your office, Madam Clerk, was get granted those, those pay increases that still have not brought them up to, you know, a fair level of wage. And I stay diligent on my fight and my struggle to make sure that there's no disparaging treatments, um, you know, to, to our employees. And that's why I'm gonna continue to advocate for, uh, a young man, Mr. Kahim Hunt. I'm asking that this administration do the right thing to bring Mr. Hunt back to work. Um, you know, it was unfortunate circumstance that he was, uh, 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 he happened to be, um, in the area, area of. And the fact that this administration is not bringing him back to work is, is an absolute travesty. And it speaks volumes when we hire, we have so many illegal, uh, hires that are non-residents to this community. So with that being said, Council President, I need to ask you for a favor, please, sir. I know we're in workshop and we were on a summer break. There is a, a tremendous person from our community, um, Ms. Georgia Scott, who lost her life, um, last week. She was the first African-American female, um, freeholder. Uh, she owned a, 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 uh, daycare that was in the first ward. I'm going to be bringing forward a proposal to rename a street in the first ward in, on her behalf. Her name is Georgia Scott. And, uh, Council President, if you so, will be so gracious as to allow for a resolution to be placed on the agenda for the next public meeting, so we can, you know, just acknowledge and recognize her hard work and labor. Um, I know it's, uh, it didn't have an opportunity to make it to this workshop agenda, but I think that all the council members can, can weigh in on that. Um, you was gonna say something, Council?
Well, I'm gonna interject. I know you're in the middle of voting, uh, Madam, uh, Madam Clerk. I hope I'm not breaking rules or any laws. Uh, just bring it to committee, councilman.
Absolutely.
Try to get the, the street naming committee. There's other two items that have been pending for a while. Uh, if there's a, not to, to take anything away from your request. Uh, but there's also two items that have been brought up for months now. Uh, I believe, uh, Arrow Carr has put in a request for a while.
Well, I'll, I'll let, I'll let the street naming committee play its part, but I'm, I'm talking about a resolution just of an, of an acknowledgement, um, uh, uh, you know, above and beyond a citation that we can. I know we couldn't provide the family for the services, but at least we can say, I can send something to the family special for her. And, uh, lastly, Councilwoman Cotton, um, you know, your husband has done a tremendous job with lifting so many young people, including myself and so many other people through, you know, the troubled times in our community. He did it through, um, the, uh, the, the allure of sports and boxing in particular, as he did it on many levels, including the professional level, and being able to referee a fight with Mike Tyson. So I think that the fact that, you know, we as a community, we as, uh, community service are dropping the ball when in the, in those areas to provide those outlets. Um, you know, there's, there's, there, there used to be such a large boxing community where young people could go off and let off stress and, you know, get some things off their chest without having to, to resort to violence. Now we have diminished, uh, you know, those outlets. And in fact, Madam BA, one of the things that I'm, that I've been meaning to bring to the attention of the administration is the fact that the parks are locked. And in, in, in during these times of, uh, you know, and particularly with COVID, where there's no outlets, I think that, you know, that's another disappointment. The parks should not be locked. Um, there should not be a, a im- im- impression of imprisonment or locking people out of things. We fence everything, and we're not allowing these young people outlets to, um, to, you know, get rid of some of this, this energy. So, uh, with that being said, um, you know, just uh, our first, uh, deputy mayor, former councilman, and all the work that he's done, Mr. Ed Cotton, I think that we need to make sure that we're providing those vehicles through recreation. With that being said, Council President, I appreciate the opportunity. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bean?
Um, and so there's a lot of stuff that's been said. I want to, um, commend the newly formed Ed Caton Foundation. They had a great event on yesterday. I wanna commend all those that were involved with the Black Lives Matter mural that is now painted on Broadway. So many different events. I want to give condolences to the family of Wayne Witherspoon. Council President, I know we spoke about it. I'm going to be working on, um, his bio and a resolution um, to bring forward to the council so that we can present, um, something, um, whenever the funeral services are planned. Um, the, uh, other thing too, I would ask the community, uh, two things. One, I have an event that is taking place this Saturday. It's called Women Boss Up for Patterson. It is by invitation only. Um, we have some amazing speakers. We have our prosecutor, Ms. Camelia Valdez. I'm super excited. Um, we have, uh, Dawn Blakely Harper will be one of the speakers. Uh, we also have Khalifa Shabazz Charles, who will be one of the speaker, and Paula Alfred. Um, there's so many great things that will take place at this event. It is by invitation only. Of course, our Councilwoman Cotton will be speaking. Uh, we have, uh, so many great things that will take place at this event. But if you are not registered by tomorrow, unfortunately, you cannot come into the event. We are practicing social distancing. Also, please keep my family, our church, all the churches that are under my bishop's covering. Uh, my spiritual mom passed away last Thursday. It's very heart-wrenching for, for us as a church and as, uh, for my bishop and his only son. Um, she was here all the time, and I was there all the time with her. We were very close. So please, it is a very difficult time. Please keep us in prayer. I totally agree with what Councilwoman Cotton said. We're better together. We have to learn how to respect each other. And Council President, I'm, I'm gonna say it, and I'm gonna put it on record. If we cannot form an alliance where disrespect crosses the line to almost discrimination, that I'm gonna be putting forward a motion to censor individuals. Because I think it's, it's just unfortunate that we make statements or we have comments made, and we think that it's okay to talk to each other in those manners, and it's not. We have to learn how to respect each other. We may not ever go to everyone's house for dinner. You may not go on vacation or whatever, but we have to learn how to respect each other. Women have been through a lot of stuff in life. We are now celebrating this year alone the Centennial Year of a Woman, where it was ratified, the Nineteenth Amendment was ratified, where women earned the right to vote. It was a hundred years to this year, and we still are being disrespected. I will not tolerate it. I'm not gonna allow it by any means. I'm gonna call it out. I'm not gonna be silent about it. Rosa Parks wasn't silent. Kamala Harris is not being silent, and so many other women are not gonna be silent. And Council President, I'm putting it on notice. I am not gonna tolerate it any further. It is disrespectful. It is discriminatory, and it's just unacceptable. It should not take place on this council or anywhere, and I am not gonna allow it. So I'm putting it on notice. The next time, I will be bringing for a lawsuit. Thank you so much. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Vilas?
Let me, uh, say thank you, Council President. A great meeting today. Uh, you tried to do your best. You tried to do your best. Some, you hear me?
I can, I can hear you.
Oh, okay. I think I heard something in the background. Yes. You know, somebody, I follow some comments on Facebook here, not on Facebook, actually, on YouTube. And I could say that everybody had the right to express itself, but when you look at the comments, I could put, I could put names behind it. But it's not my, it's not my responsibility to be judging anybody's comment. That's a free will, freedom of speech. People say I'm a joker. People say I don't know things. People say a lot of things on social media and YouTube. Meanwhile, this meeting I'm going through, people get texts and say, say this because I cannot say it in live. They text their crew, they text their people, and they, it's a plan. It's always a plan out there. But you know what? It is what it is. We all decide to follow a live of politics. It's a public, a public platform. I think everybody knows their borders and they know where to go, not to go. I was going to say this, you know, politicians have different masks. I only have one. Politician carries a lot of masks, and I only have one. Wolves sometimes have different clothes, and they dress like cheaps. I dress with a tie, a shirt, humbly use jeans. Probably I got a broken accent that people make fun of me, but I try to be true and real. I try to be honest. I try to be fair with my comments. I try to not disrespect no one. But there's some politicians that they could offend anyone with their actions and the way they look and the way they walk and the way they point. And when you bring something forward with a truth, then they say, I'm disrespectful, or they disrespecting me. You know, this is, like everybody said, don't take it personal. This is business when it's them. But when they are doing it, oh, I'm the disrespectful person. I speak out of order. I'm doing this. And everybody pointing a little bit less that the person this is out of line and out of order and all that stuff. So you know what? I could sleep in peace. Because saying last but not least, I could sleep in peace because everything that I do, I don't do it with second intention. I do it because the people elected me. They want answers. They got questions. And I try to bring it humbly forward to this professional council that we have, that some people, one individual, one director said, and I think he's right. Some people disamazing me. Some people thinks I'm stupid. Some people thinks I'm not educated. Some people thinks that I didn't went to college. I don't brag what I learned, but I put in practice what I live. Last but not least, please do not point a finger at my fault or my defects when you have four fingers pointing at you, pointing your back at your defect and your wrongdoing too. So once again, I got to say humbly, if you think that I disrespect you, it's not my form and action, and it's not my intention to do it that way. But when everybody is in business, we are grown up people, and we finished meeting, and I could go back home, and that's why I took this meeting out on the sofa of my house, to not bring to my house any kind of misunderstanding that happens in this meeting. So saying that, my heart goes to the families of Wayne Witherspoon, our friend, and it's going to be the friend of everyone. We all got memories each other. We're not going to say that we was raised together, that we was this, and just because he passed away. I know that he was a great person, and I know he made a difference in the city of Patterson and everything that he touched. He always touched it with a smile, and everybody could attest that. So I'm not going to say that I'm going to sue anyone. I think that everybody is responsible and accountable of their actions. But one thing I got to say is that, please, don't take me for granted. Because probably I could stand by myself here, but everything that I do and everything that I got to say, I got to make sure that is aligned with the heart of God and aligned with the goodwill of my family. Thank you. God bless you. Good night, Patterson. And before I finish, a constitution call me, text me, sorry, not call me, text me that the two signs of autistic zone in school thirty was removed. And I want to know why they removed these two signs. One was put by Councilwoman Lisa Miss, and I applaud you, Councilwoman Lisa Miss, for putting this forward. But this advocated from the fifth ward noticed this morning that the sign was removed, the one on Twenty Avenue, Twenty Avenue and East Twenty Nine, and the one on, sorry, Twenty Eight, and the one on East Twenty Eight. Two sign that you probably last year erected and make this quite good for the area to abide that there was autistic kid in the area. Those sign was removed. I know the director probably is not, but the BA is on still. Please find out to replace back those signs where there was erected and put it back in place. And I want to answer before twelve noon tomorrow, if it's possible. Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you, Council President. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. President?
Evening, everyone. I want to thank my council colleagues for at least conducting this business, and we actually improved in previous meetings. And I'm actually anxious to move back to the chamber myself, but I still have some concerns. You know, we're going to spend over five hours in the chambers. And I have asked the administration, Madam BA, hopefully you have an answer. What have we done to improve the air circulation there? You know, we're going to be there for a long amount of hours. I don't want to put any of my colleagues and myself in any, you know, jeopardy of contracting this virus or members of the public. Have we used, and I know I'm in the middle of local voting, have we used any of the funding that has been provided by the county for COVID, to prevent COVID from spreading? Have we used any of the funding to improve the air circulation in the council chamber?
We have not. Part of it is because it's not as easy as kind of your standard HVAC filters that we have been able to do in some of the buildings that have been COVID specific. It's not kind of the same. We even had our fire department looking at ways that we could do UV lighting. I think some of the public health experts have talked about just the fact that it's kind of across the board.
You're telling me you have looked into it? A company, do you at least hire a company to look to see how they could improve air circulation in here?
No, we have not. We explored it. A lot of the challenges were that it was a lot of the answers are much more connected to kind of HVAC systems or kind of unproven methods for those who don't have HVAC systems.
Do we have any ventilation in here? I'm sorry.
I can, you know, I would have to go into some further detail with our facilities people, you know, about what exactly they sort of looked into. And we can talk offline about, you know, to help you make a better decision about coming back.
Well, it's not about me making a better decision to come back. It's about what are we doing with the eight million dollars, and we could get more from the county. We could get up to like twenty-nine, I think it is. Twenty-something million from the county. You know, if we spend eight million, we could apply for more. What I'm saying is, this is not going to go away right away. They might come up with a vaccine, but we still want to have this around. If we have the resources and we could find a way to utilize those resources, why can't we continue to explore the possibility of improving the ventilation system in the council chambers? That's all I ask.
Yep, I will go back to the team and see if we can continue to explore this. What, you know, when we first looked at it, I'm just giving you the answer, you know, in terms of some of the recent improvements.
Madam BA, all the recent, if your team already exposed this, this started back probably in March. If your team have been exploring this.
Yep.
We're not in Amazon. You know, I don't know how much we need to explore. And they cannot find a solution, but we hire someone to come in and actually do an assessment of what could be done in there. That's what I ask.
Council President, can I just say something? It's been six months, Council President.
What did I say?
I said, I, you said, no, I just mentioned, it's been six months.
I thought I said less. If I wasn't counting, I thought I said less. All right.
No, no, it's six months. But what I did want to say to you is this, and I will say it again. The administration has planned for reopening and everyone coming back to work. But I know that you say, oh, you're concerned about five-hour meetings, but we can, we don't have to have five-hour meetings, okay? But our employees will be there eight hours, longer settings, okay? So, so, and, and, you know, I've been back at work. I work at the college, right? I've been back at work, and we're doing that transition as well, and there's a plan in place as well. Still with concerns and all, but the plan is there. So I really think that we need to consider, and obviously, I think that the portion maybe, the public portion, we can still have them call in, you know, or have them wait and come one, you know, two people at a time. But we have to, if the city is ready to reopen on Tuesday, we should be doing the same thing.
Understood, but again, they still, the administration still should not just improve in the council chambers, but see what they could do to improve the situation in other offices also, to do the council chambers. At least we have the option of having our meetings through here, that employees don't. But I just don't want our DPW director and our team just look to what we could do where they're not expert.
A part of this was the research of OEM was work, was sort of tasked at looking at it, and that's, that's, you know, within their kind of valley of... No, I will follow up with them. This was, we had conversations about this, but I will follow up with, you know, some of their recent. I know one of the main options that they looked into that a lot of old facilities were doing was this idea of UV lighting, you know, in sort of in spaces where you don't have the benefit of the HVAC in the same way.
With Council President, the governor ordered that you could be in a restaurant twenty-five percent and all that stuff. So what's the difference?
With social distancing still in place.
I know. We could have social distancing.
We're sitting two, one foot or two away from one another.
Well, we got a glass.
Understood, but when I hear debating that, all I'm saying is, the administration's duty is, they're getting all these millions of dollars. Let's at least look into utilizing those funds to improve this equation in the city.
Good night, Council President. Good night, everyone.
So this time, Madam BA, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is eight in favor. For the record, reflect that the third ward is vacant. Therefore, the municipal council workshop session on September first, twenty twenty, hereby adjourned. And good night, everyone. Thank you very, very much.
Good night.
Good night.